We are recording. Thank you for the notice.
Thanks, Steve. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hopkinton School Board meeting for, I can't believe it's Thursday, December 10th, 2020, but that is the date on my computer screen. Want to thank everybody for joining us here tonight. We have a full board with Rob Nato, Norm Gupel, Andrea Folsom, Seth Afram, and myself, Jim O'Brien, and we're joined by our student rep, Mia Richter, and I believe Juliette Shahadi will be joining us soon enough. And then also with us is Michelle Clark, our business administrator, and Steve Chamberlain, our superintendent of schools. So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Steve, do you have a flag with for us tonight? Oh, look at that. More progress made. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you, everyone. And I apologize this evening if I'm more scatterbrained than normal. I've had a very, very fun, long day of Zoom meetings, and so trying to get my bearings under me. But we're meeting tonight as we have been meeting since, since March. We're meeting completely virtually, and that is because of the emergency declaration and emergency orders issued by the governor, which allows for public bodies such as the Hopkinton School Board to meet completely remotely. So there is no physical location for this meeting tonight, but the board has posted and has made available methods by which members of the public can observe and participate in tonight's meeting. And so if you found your way here via Zoom link, then you made it. And we also have telephone access for this meeting as well. And all other provisions of RSA 91A are going to be followed. So we, we do keep minutes and record minutes, and those will be available as per statute. The only additional change to a school board meeting you'll notice tonight is that when we take votes, they'll all be roll call votes, and that is per the governor's emergency orders. And this meeting is also being recorded, and so those recordings are available on the district website. So you can go back and review all the exciting moments of tonight's meeting if you so desire. With that said, Steve, are there any additions or deletions from the agenda this night?
The agenda is pretty fun. The only, we're going to move it around a little bit as you spoke to, and when we get to the nominations, Jean Eaton at Harold Martin School is known as an office manager, not administrative assistant, so we'll have to just finish on that, but not any significant changes to the agenda.
Perfect. And as Steve mentioned, I'm going to switch around the agenda just a little bit tonight. And I think we'll start the conversation with the section on overview and learning in the global pandemic. And then we will have a conversation on the audit, and then we'll go into our budget discussion. So a little bit of, a little bit of steering, but we'll get through all the topics just a little bit of a different order. And then, Steve, any correspondence this evening?
Yes, there are a number of correspondence in the folder. I also wanted to notice the board that the second round of CARES, SPSRF, that's the second application. And we've been noticed that where the Hopkinton School District will receive about $134,000 from that. That was the $10 million that we, if we talked about that at the public hearing. So thank you to Ms. Clark and everybody, but I think that's a really nice thing for the Hopkinton School District.
That's great. All right. And we have one set of minutes that was in our packet, and so I would ask if there is a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the minutes of our regular school board meeting held on December 3rd, 2020.
I'm moved. Second.
Is there any discussion on those minutes? All right, seeing none. Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth Afram, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is yes. So those minutes are approved. And I should have said this off the top, but I didn't. I apologize. During the meeting, we have two, we have two opportunities for public comment. We're about to get to one now, and then we'll have one towards the end of the meeting. And so to provide public comments, if you're an attendee and you move your mouse or cursor towards the bottom of your screen, there's a raise your hand button, and if you click on that, that will alert us that you would like to make a public comment. And I would just ask that when you, when you start your comment, just, excuse me, when you start to state your name and your address, just so we can record that, and then try to keep the comments around three minutes. And so with that, we'll open public comment, and our first hand that is up is Maureen Bland. Hello, Maureen. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi. It's actually my granddaughter, Ryan, who is gonna, she's got something to say.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Hello, Ryan.
Um, and I'm from Maple Street School, and I'm in sixth grade. I'm from California, and I'm here to talk to you guys about Zoom School. I'm new to this school system and have been here for a month or so. And in California, we were full-time online school. Let me tell you something. I think out of the month I've been here, I have learned more than I did in online school during this week. While at home school, you're not really getting the whole learning experience, and it's a lot more frustrating because you're really not told what you need to do. In school, your teacher talks to you and tells you what you need to fix and how. You also lose a lot more social, that social element of school. I actually have not talked to any of my friends while we've been out of school. I've also not, not the only kid that feels this way, but, but a lot of the kids like online school, but also there are kids like me who need a little bit more help. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you so much, Ryan, for sharing that with us. It's very brave. I know that go on to a meeting and a call like this, and so I want to congratulate you, and thank you so much for taking the time and sharing your thoughts with us. There's no other hands raised, but now there is. And so the next hand that went up is Sarah Matson Dustin.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Sarah Matson Dustin, 517 Dustin Road. I just wanted to hop on and say that the remote learning at Harold Martin School this week that my kids have experienced has been really, really strong. And I think that there's been just wonderful improvement compared to when it had to be done on an emergency basis last spring. And even since when we had to go remote for a couple of weeks this fall, I just think there's this wonderful forward trajectory. My kids have had lots of live time in Google meets, both instructional and just opportunities to spend time more socially with their teachers and with their peers. So third grade Mrs. Follinsby and kindergarten Mrs. Duval, they're just doing an awesome, awesome job. I do, you know, very much look forward to when we can get back to the hybrid being more reliable. And with that in mind, I'd like to ask you to consider extending the winter break by a week, a week and a half, two weeks, and replacing those days with days in June, when I think it's relatively likely that we will be able to have a reliable hybrid. And there is perhaps even some slim chance that we will be able to have the all-in, every day in person that all of us are really looking forward to getting back to at some point. So I know there's a pretty short decision horizon on that, but, you know, 10 days in COVID times is like a year in normal time. So I hope if that's something that's feasible in terms of, you know, our contractual obligations and state law, I hope you'll solicit some input, see if that would work better for families. I don't know what everyone's life is like. But I'd rather take some in-person days in June than some emergency remote days in January. So thanks for listening.
Thanks, Sarah. Any other, any other public comments? I see no other hands. And so at this point, I will close public comment, and we'll move on to comments from the Hopkinton School Board. So if anybody wants to kick us off. This is normally not a shy bunch.
I don't want to, I don't want to steal Seth's thunder, but I would just like to thank everybody who was participating in the superintendent screening committee. We had a really productive evening on Tuesday. So for all those community folks and faculty members and administrators who took part, thank you very much. It's very helpful.
So he did steal my thunder, so I'll go next. And I want to say a little bit more about it, which is, so we brought together intentionally a diverse cross-section of our community. We had different ages. We had what I believe to be different views on other topics I've seen debated amongst this board over the months I've been on it. So I really had no idea how it was going to go. And this is an important decision. And what I learned from the meeting was when you empower people and in a community, they really rise to the occasion. It was, in my view, incredible in the sense of the preparation of the people, the open-mindedness of the people who participated, the thoughtfulness of the comments, and ultimately it led to consensus of a group, of a large group of people. And so I look often today, these days with disdain as I look at leaders, as I look at how people interact over matters, over important matters. And I guess I felt some hope that when you bring together a group of people and ask them to take on an important task, they really do it well. And so I really want to thank everybody who participated in that. You actually have something I think to really be proud of, and you really helped the school district move forward. So thank you.
That's outstanding. Thank you. Thanks to both Rob and Seth. You guys have enough thunder between the two of you. You don't have to steal it. Norm or Andrea?
I'll go. I just want to echo a little bit what Sarah said. I thought the school district did great, getting everybody organized in such a short notice. You know, when we shut down schools at Maple Street and Harold Martin, they were prepared, got everything ready, devices ready for the kids who needed it. And, you know, it was great to see the schedule in advance for my, for my children to log on. I was instructed, don't walk in front of the camera, and you're PJ's daddy. But, you know, it was, it was a really good organized plan. And Steve, it's been a roller coaster. We're going to discuss it in a few minutes, but thank you to you and your leadership team for well-executed plan. And, you know, to all our teachers, thank you for going above and beyond during a global pandemic. It's been a lot of work for this board, and I just wanted to echo a thank you to the well-organized plan. Last thing I'll say, last night was budget committee. We didn't have to present. It went well over there for the town. We're next. So I'm ready to get excited to work with you guys on this budget. Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, thanks, Norm. Your daughter gives good advice about hopping in front of cameras. Andrea, do you have anything tonight?
You know, I don't, I don't have anything further to add except for similar. My daughter, who went from hybrid to full remote today, she had an all-Zoom day and, and really enjoyed it. But I know that this week has also been, you know, really tricky for our teachers and really tricky for our community members. And so I do want to just extend my gratitude as well to everyone because we're all on actually sides, like we're all in this together. So, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Mia, I don't know if you have any comments or anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
Yes, actually, I wanted to just quickly mention to the board that the National Honor Society is talking about plans to do the annual blood drive. And it would be in March as usual. So obviously, we don't know a lot about what the pandemic situation will be at that point, but we've talked to Mr. Kelly about it, and he's in support of it. So in case anybody has any concerns with that, I wanted to let you know.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. And the only, I would just sort of echo everybody else's comments. Just do it quickly. Just thanking everybody for the transition to remote. And I think it was Norm. I think having the schedule, I mean, it's such a huge improvement over the spring. And my daughter, who I think was, was pretty nervous about, about, you know, entering classroom in a, in a online environment, had big smiles on her face at the end of the first day and was very excited to go back on. So I think it was successful. She definitely says it's not a replacement for in-person, but it's, it definitely wasn't as scary as she was thinking it might be learning in front of a computer. So bravo to everybody switching so quickly and being so accommodating. Thank you. So as mentioned, we're going to switch up our agenda a little bit. So if you're following along on the agenda posted, bear with us. So we're going to start what would be under items for board discussion way down under B, operating and learning in a global pandemic. And so Steve, I don't know if you want to, if you want to kick us off with some review of the remote learning decisions?
Sure. I appreciated the board's discussion about how to implement the decision-making matrix last week, providing some direction that with small numbers, with consultation with lots of people, we could manage it in a way. But if we got to the further right of the matrix, let's try and stick to the matrix. Friday, I think early, we were noticed with additional positive cases at Harold Martin. We closed for three days Friday night, and then Sunday, more positive cases came through with some concern about some, some crossing with Maple Street School. After lots of conversations with lots of people, we felt because of the numbers, closing Maple Street School. And then, you know, it is a small district, and we were up to about seven or eight at the high school, noticed that let's, Monday, they were, the middle high school was remote on Monday. Let's take that day to look and see where we are. We had another positive case Monday and felt the best thing to do. At that point, we were in pretty heavy red, and we were looking at 13, 14 cases district-wide. But I felt that that was, the direction was to follow the matrix. We closed for the week, allowing for this meeting to happen. I did call, contact all the nurses today about noon to get an update. Where at the middle high school, we have eight positive cases. That's two dropped off and two new ones. And so after a certain number of days, the case is no longer active. Maple Street School, we were holding with one case, and at Harold Martin School, we're, we're six with two coming on, two coming off in the last few days. So you know, the major, we're at 69.8 cases per 1,000 in the Merrimack County over the seven-day average. And really felt, and there's a lot, and obviously, the decision that goes to disrupting everybody's life, the kids' life, we just heard, Rian, the teachers' life, and there isn't a universal, there there isn't a universal decision here, except you kind of just do what you, what you talk to a lot of people and try to do what you think is best. And with this kind of numbers and this kind of tipping point demarcation on our matrix, I felt it was, it was prudent to pause for a week. And there is fear. And there's no question. There's fear from a lot of people. Some families expressed fear, teachers, support staff. And I, I struggle with, teaching is such an extraordinary experience at its very best, teaching in that kind of environment. So I felt that the right thing was to do was to close for the week and get here. There's been some, there's some agreement with that decision by all constituencies, and there's some concern with that decision that I made with all constituencies as well, but I felt that was what was best. And, and I think I've made, I think Sunday, Bill and I started around noon, and I think we finished at eight, and I think I may, I think I had to recharge my phone fully twice. So it was a lot of collaboration, a lot of communication. I appreciate everybody making themselves available to me. Nurses, board members, principals on weekends. So I appreciate it all. But that's, that's really the background of where we are today. Does that help? Is that okay?
No, that's, I think that's good background. And I guess for us tonight, so right now, you know, as Steve mentioned, that, you know, we have closed, we have closed the buildings, closed school down through the end of this week. And so what I'm hoping to do here this evening with Steve's guidance is to talk about, you know, what's the path forward look like? And so right now, I think the path forward as it currently stands is that, you know, we're closing Friday. We would open on Monday. I have concerns about that. I guess just to sort of kick off the conversation, I just think with the numbers that we're seeing, you know, both nationally, here in the state, and here in Hopkinton, and what we've seen in our schools, I'm uncomfortable. I'm, I just, I'd be uncomfortable opening our schools up on Monday in a hybrid model. And so that's sort of my starting point. That's not the board's starting point, but that's my starting point. So I just, I kind of wanted to throw it there to begin the conversation. That I would, I guess my recommendation as one board member would be that we, we keep closed and think of a date in January. MLK Day is something that we've talked about as sort of a date, but find a date where we can keep consistency for our students and our parents that we're not turning things on and off again. We're, we're providing a safe environment and a safe community. And hopefully, in my view, hopefully, everybody would do the right thing. Over time, we would see cases go down and get to a point where we would feel comfortable, or at least I would feel comfortable, again, opening again. But right now, it feels like the situation we are facing is pretty chaotic and not one that I think is fair to students and not fair to our faculty and staff to, to, to go back to that environment. That's just me. So again, I want to throw that to sort of kickstart the conversation, but I'd love to see where other people are at and what their thinking is.
I can chime on in. I was listening to something today and heard a great, great quote of schools are not an island. At one point or another, the community spread is going to be an issue, and I, I really felt like that really captured what's going on right now. As I looked, you know, I try to look at the data and look at what's being presented to us. Because that's what, you know, that's in part what we have to make decisions. I've been frustrated this week to note that the Department of Health and Human Services school tracker for Hopkinton is not accurate. That gives me real concern, a real pause. I've also noticed that, you know, even if one day it says we've had 500 cases, you can look back in five days and say, oh, that number is actually 1,000 cases. And so it's frustrating not having a good handle on the number of cases that are really swirling around us. And I think we can agree that those are under-reported cases. You know, we have the governor saying today that everybody, you know, everyone needs to be concerned at this point. And then even just anecdotally, looking at the, those same numbers, last week at this time, we had 12 cases in Hopkinton. As of yesterday, we had 25 cases. And so even our own, and within our own town, those cases have doubled within a week. I understand they might go down for a week or so before the holidays, but I expect that something similar. I mean, I think we would be fooling ourselves to think that something similar would not happen again around the, the upcoming holidays. So I think for me at this point, as much as it pains me, I do think that moving to mostly remote, for me, is, is, I think, the more prudent decision. I also, though, would like to see if we can keep our, any kids that have, if possible, who need additional services or additional supports. I know that that's been fairly successful at the high school, middle high school. And Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But if possible, you know, allowing some additional supports for kids would be great. That's really kind of threading that needle. But it's the best kind of both and that I can come up with right now.
You know, you know, Jim and Andrea, I'm not going to try and take what you guys had to say, but, you know, a lot of first thing I want to say is, you know, my thoughts and prayers to anyone who has been infected by COVID. If they've received or if they've lost their job, it is a virus that's just really hurting, hurting everybody. And, you know, I've wrestled with this for the last couple of weeks, you know, on seeing the cases increasing in Hopkinton. And of course, we all know the best way a student's going to learn is going to be in person. No question about that. Steve Chamberlain and I have done boxing matches, saying, hey, Steve, is it time? He's like, nope, not yet, Norm. And I, I can see the writing on the wall where, you know, our cases continue to go up and up. And our kids aren't getting a rhythm of being in school. You know, to go into school, then be pulled back and then go to remote, and then two days later, they're going back in. These kids are, you know, being almost like a yo-yo in their education. And I firmly believe it's important that, you know, as a, as a board member, that we continue having a structure of a nice planned schedule, that our teachers have been providing excellent to all our students, and really focused on delivering our program remote. It is hard. There are some kids who just don't, don't learn on the computer, and I get that. And it's hard, it's hard to put a path forward for that individual, knowing that they're not going to learn as well as they are in the classroom environment. But I know our teachers can do it. I know that we can reach those kids. And I would definitely recommend this board, please, go remote until MLK, Martin Luther King Day. Let's get through Christmas. Let's develop a plan. I would ask Steve, if possible, if this board agreed with his leadership team to try and make a schedule each week in advance for every family. Every working parent is still working. And if we have a schedule for the week with Zoom links of where the student has to be, it would make a lot easier for all families to have it in advance because we all, we all still working. And if we know our kid needs to be on a certain time, we can all coordinate it with our own meeting. As a board member, as a parent, I believe it's the right thing right now for the safety of our teachers, the safety of our families, and safety of our students, that we go remote. And we do this until the, into the month of January, especially two weeks after Christmas, because we've looked at the cases after Thanksgiving, and it has continued to go up. And this is a huge concern for me, and I would recommend the board moving forward with that. Thank you.
Steve, can you just talk to me about the, sort of your take on the level of anxiety amongst the faculty at the schools as, you know, you're closer, obviously, to that than I am?
Yeah, it's palpable. It's real. All the nurses have expressed that to me about the stress and anxiety. Different, different for different people for different reasons, but it is a key factor about our, are they comfortable in school? Are they comfortable? You know, every single nurse has expressed to me that the anxiety about coming into school and teaching in this current environment with, and they could talk about the matrix with, you know, that just the big red, you know, the red and tipping point spread. So, you know, it is real.
Okay. Well, I agree with everyone else. I mean, for education to be successful, we need the, we need the people who are executing the education to be comfortable in doing that. And I'm not in a position where I, given the numbers, to tell any of these people that they're unreasonable. I don't think they are unreasonable. I think they're very reasonable. And, you know, I know it's different at the younger levels, but I've been watching successful, it's not ideal, but I've been watching successful remote middle school and high school taking place. And so you know, it can be done. And we'll try to make it as short as possible and keep our eye on the numbers, but I agree with everyone else. It's just too much fear that's real to tell people, oh, we're going to order you to go back into school at this point.
So I won't repeat what's been said because I agree with you guys. I will add a couple of things to it around the, you know, what do we do for those kids who need support? There's been talk about, you know, people volunteering to do that, which I, I would say is, I have grave concerns about that. I think, you know, when, when you put the word volunteer up there, there's all kinds of other pressures that come along with that, you know, pressures to do what you think is going to be best for that kid and what other people want you to do. It's not always a free choice. So I think that if we do choose to go remote in fairness to anybody who might be put in that situation where they would go into a school, that we don't do that. If it's not safe to be in the buildings, and we're trying to limit transmission, then it's not safe to be in the buildings, regardless of, you know, the circumstance. And we'll just have to work around it. Then, and then the second thing and is around extracurriculars. You know, in reviewing the memorandum of understanding this week, there, there is a clause there that, if I'm correct, says that if we are fully remote, then extracurriculars are also canceled. And I think we need to address that as well. So there's two other moving parts. And I don't think we should be picking. And I also feel like if we have a memorandum of understanding, then we need to live up to what we agreed to. So if somebody could clarify maybe a little bit about the MOA, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think it's, as Rob, as you described, if you, if the board is saying that there's no one in school, a teacher can't, you know, teach from there. a, a teacher can't, you know, teach from their classroom, a teacher who believes that the best service and the best delivery of service can be delivered safely. And I, I'm not disputing that. I mean, but if, if that's the, the, my interpretation this week was I was not, I was moving to remote with allowing volunteer, and volunteer because people have different situations and different thresholds and different services and different and, and allowing a professional judgment. And, and if I miss that because of undue pressure, I'd certainly listen. So, but yes, if, if the building is closed to what you just described, then I believe the MOU would say closed sports. If the, if the, if the school is open for targeted services and voluntary pieces, then I would think that, that is possible that we could still run extracurriculars under those same conditions. But I'm not trying to split hairs and I'm not trying to do it, it, it completely, you know, serve at the pleasure of the board and get it. But that's what I was trying to do. And understanding that if we, there's certain decisions that we make today, make decisions possibly for the next eight weeks. That's all. But I completely respect what you just said and certainly understand that perspective.
I guess one of my questions would be, is there a scenario where teachers can continue to teach remote from their classroom where they've now set up shop and they've got all of their tools and wizardry there to do that. But there aren't any students there. You know, so functionally, the buildings are, are closed to, to students. Teachers can continue to teach there if they're comfortable doing that. And if they, they want to go elsewhere, but which, which to me would be the same as saying the buildings are closed.
So we've got a, I've got a couple of issues I, I wrote down. So I just kinda wanna maybe take one at a time, just so we can kinda make sure we're, make sure we're progressing in a way that, you know, we're all comfortable with. And if not, we can kinda discuss it thorough, more thoroughly. So the, the, the first question, I, I didn't hear anybody, I heard everybody say that we feel like going remote. At this point, whether or not we close the schools to the finer point, I think that Rob and Steve were just discussing. But in terms of like delivering education in our three buildings, it, it, I didn't hear any, anybody say anything differently, that, that going remote is probably the best choice at this moment. The question will be, how long do we do that for? I also didn't hear anybody offer any other dates other than, you know, around Martin Luther King holiday. And so I, I don't know, that's on a magic date, but I heard several of us say that. So I, so I just sort of wanna test that to see if, if we're all sort of thinking along the same lines. And Steve, is any reaction to sort of that? From your, from your point of view.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think that time would be great. You know, I think that kind of, you know, moving to that date and that kind of stability, I think would be a good thing.
Okay. So I'm not getting any alternate opinions on that. So it sounds like we're all generally okay with that. So then it's the question, I think, oh, I'm sorry, Rob.
Yeah, I, I just wanna toss this. I mean, I, I kinda think that Martin Luther King is a, is a good day. It gives it two full weeks of school. But we also, you know, there was some discussion at our last meeting that 10 days is now the recommended quarantine. So if we're thinking of from after the holiday, moving forward, we, we could say that it might be possible if, if conditions are good, that the week prior might be possible. That would still give us a 10 day actual time period. I'm not real confident myself that people are gonna do the right thing. And I, I think the extra time is probably a good thing, but I did wanna just put that out there that there's that 10 day scenario, which would bring us to the, you know, the 11th or the 12th. Instead of the 19th. I don't know. What do you think, Steve?
You know, I appreciate the 10 day. You know, we meet quite often as a board and, you know, we could at least say through the 11th for sure and then see where we are. And I think we meet on the sixth or seventh that week. I, I did ask the nurses and other people, and a couple of other people I've talked to about how long it's going to take to get out of red. You know, of the tipping point. And they felt it was going to be a while. They, they weren't sure we could change that from 68.9 down to below 25 in, in, in three, in three or so weeks. And that was the discussions that I had about how long until we get to not the tipping point spread.
Any other thoughts on sort of the, the timeline?
I, I mean, I guess that like the, the only other thing that was brought up, and I don't know if we want to tackle this, but the idea of extending the break. So instead of having our kids go back remote, extending it and then extending the school year. I don't know if we can, if we can do that.
Steve, is there any, is there any stipulation in the CVA around, you know, end of school or anything to that? Anything that would, that would, you know, sort of be a contractual?
It'd have to be done by June 30. I'm pretty sure of that, the June 30 deadline. You know, I think, I think there is the authority, you know, I mean, people have, we closed for a week once because of power outages. If you remember the Mother's Day storm, I don't know if you remember that. So, I mean, you can close for a week. It is kind, you know, it, it it sort of is that piece. I don't, I think the contract says we cannot extend the school year past June 30.
What's your reaction to that, Steve, as an idea?
I, I completely understand the rationale. December, you know, just trying to make this happen and get feedback and see where parents are December 10th. But maybe there's not that much difference between remote, you know, that week or vacation, you know, not in school that week. And maybe that supervisory work impact may be even easier. I think it's worth getting some feedback done. Some schools have combined, you know, February and April to trying to look for a two week break again to allow for some quarantining and for some space in the spring. You know what I mean? That, that those two weeks together gives you some extra time. And it's an interesting question. I think there's some merit and there's some academic merit to it. I mean, when I talked about snow days, you know, if you have a snow day now, you hope it's a better day in the spring. And so really what you're doing is five snow days or a number of snow days to extend it. And I think there's some academic merit and some optimism. I, I think there's some optimism for June.
Yeah, I, I just feel like, you know, if, if our hope is to get back into school, either hybrid or, you know, dare I be super optimistic and say full by the end of the year, you know, it seems what, what a great way to sort of extend the year a little bit more. It covers that gap between school ending and, and camp beginning. I don't know. I, I think that it, I like it. You know, I, I don't know if we need to do the full two weeks. If we would do one week, I just, you know, we, we hear timing again. How teachers would like us to be in school safely, how parents would like us to be in school safely. Maybe this is, you know, a creative and different idea.
And I'm open to it. I guess my only, so just maybe I'll put, I'll, I'll maybe put a thunderclap on the sunshine optimism. And just, you know, so last year when we were remote, all of us, including teachers and students, were ready to be done with remote come spring. And if we remember, we ended, we ended early because of the, well, because of, of everything that was going on. And so like if we look at trends and where we are now, and we think it's going to be, you know, a challenging winter and in a challenging spring. I, I just wonder if, if those weeks in June, people may rather be ready to move on to a sunny summer and not continuing sort of in, 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 in the, the remote environment. Cause again, we don't have crystal ball. So I, I think we can all hope that there's a vaccine and people are ready to go. And we don't, we, we don't really have confidence in that. And so, and so anyway, I'm not saying I'm closed to the idea. It's just, I, I know the reality from last year when we were in remote and, and sort of what we all felt and did. And so I don't know that will be different.
Add to that, that one, I would like to let it percolate for a week. But I don't know, in my, my years of teaching and Steve, when he was back in the classroom, mid-June and beyond is not the best, most productive time for education. The kids are, the kids are, it's just not the best.
And it's hot in those, the, some of those rooms too, which we knew from the summer when we were talking about.
Yeah, all true. And if, if things are super back to normal, then there's camps and there's traditional activities too, that people used to leave school. So yeah, it's a tough one. There's positive, it's like all these decisions, there's some real positives and some real concerns. That's where we are, right?
How soon do you need, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Norm.
How, how soon would you need to, need to have some type of date, Steve, recommendation from this board? Like, can we let it percolate and kind of stay remote right now until, you know, after Christmas? And then we can set the date if we decide to do something in June and, or come back in January, just to kind of see where we are moving forward. How soon would you need to have a date from this board regarding extending the school year? Or modifying a return in January or something?
Well, my hope is tonight to, to get some definitive, you know, you know, really where are we through the 11th? Are we through the 18th? So people know that between now and, and December 23rd, what the model is and, and right after the, the new year, what the model is. And we can, if, if there was more traction to a break, you know, I know extended break, we could talk about that next week. I, I, I don't think that's a tonight thing for me. Anyway, I'd like to talk to leadership team and get some feedback and stuff.
Well, I'll put out there just as a, I think the safest thing to do would be to save the 19th. And if, and it would really be an upside if things were better. And on the 7th, we could say, okay, you've, you've got information. But I, I think for people's planning and the 19th is the way to go.
Yeah, and, and I'm comfortable with that. I, I, I just, I think putting out a date like the 11th and, and us not being able to meet it because of, you know, because of circumstances. I, I would, I'd rather look to a more, you know, pragmatic date. And the 19th is probably not that date either, but I think it's at least something with some rhyme or reason to it. And then just kinda go from there. And it gives everybody planning time and understand, you know, there's a couple of weeks in January would be doing the remote.
I, I would be curious to hear from Steve's team. I mean, I, I do like a little bit, I do like the idea of June. I kinda think it's missed time that these, these students will have more in-person instruction. I do, I, I, I do like the idea of maybe having a little bit of feedback from Steve's team on it before we give definitive answer. I, I mean, if Steve's looking for a direction tonight and that's another date, I, I do like, I do like June. I like extending the school year a little bit. Giving these students missed time, missed in class. You know, stuff that they, they're not getting at home and remote. You know, hopefully things are better then. You know, I think it's a good opportunity for many students to have an opportunity to miss, miss out on a lot of things that they're not getting right now.
I'm happy to prepare a memo for the board next week, positives, negatives, concerns. Happy to, you know, to put some comprehensive thought. We have a leadership team meeting. Pretty smart people sitting around the table. I like their thoughts. So I'm happy to bring a memo and, and provide more information about implications of end of year and heat in classrooms, implications of additional snow days. All of a sudden, what happens if we do get additional snow days? And we've dropped, you know, five or four, six snow days already. More just snow days if we're fully remote, you know, I mean, I just, I don't know. We just gotta put it all together.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, then I, I liked Rob's approach of what's aimed for the 19th. And if we can get in sooner, you know, we'll, we'll be able to let folks know. And then I think on the 19th, it should also be kind of exciting. Cause I think that we have some teams of middle high school teachers hopefully doing some synchronous teaching. So we'll get to see that, right?
Well, if, if we're fully remote, there won't be synchron, there won't be synchronous.
But if we're back in hybrid on the 19th.
Yes, that's when, that's when, yep, that's when we'll pilot it right then. You got it.
Something else to look forward to. I've been looking forward to it all year.
Move the pilot from next week to then. You got it.
So it feels like we have a pretty good consensus that we'll, we'll move to a remote through, through the 19th. For the time being, of course, we'll keep, as we meet regularly, we'll keep, we'll keep revisiting that. And then, you know, I think that, you know, the, the next sort of issue we have written down is, so what does that mean for services for those, you know, for those students who might need extra services? And so, but I heard you say, Stephen, I just wanna make sure I, I can articulate it back that if, that if we close the schools, that it's that offering those, those additional services is, is challenging. Cause we've closed the school saying it's not safe. And so bringing in those students to, to get those extra services and staff coming in for those services sort of is, is a, is, is, I don't wanna say non-starter, but that, that's a challenge. And so, but I, I, these personally, you know, that I know there are students who are gonna struggle and, and may have services that are gonna be helpful to that. Is there, I guess, is there a way to work around that? Or is it really this decision to go remote is, is kind of cuts that out of our thinking at the moment.
So executive order 64 requires that Mandy and the team consider in-person services during a remote setting and which services and how to adjust if the services or the only way to deliver those services is in person, then how do you do it? In the discussion that I had with everybody earlier in the week and Mandy, when I made the decision to move to remote this week, I felt it, I felt uncomfortable requiring anybody then to work in that environment. But I do understand that some people, and I've talked to, and, and I hope, and I, I believe that they didn't feel pressured. But if they did, I would certainly take that feedback that if, if they weren't required, but if they felt more comfortable delivering the service in person and talking with the nurses, it's KN95 masks, it's gloves and it's barriers, that we could supply them with extra protection, that we could deliver that service in school. So I, I did not look at this as the March 3rd, March 16th, 2020 order from the governor saying, no one's going in the schools. I looked at this as the only, the people in schools would be targeted for services and then volunteer for the after school. If they were comfortable and they felt they could coach in an environment six feet away and families, it's up because as we've talked a lot about at meetings, some families will, will believe the social emotional concern outweighs the concern on the other end. And now that we're fully remote, I felt there was at least a minimal impact to the population, you know, or most, almost all remote. There was limited impact to the general population. And, and that's how I didn't feel comfortable Sunday cancelling, you know, you know, saying suspending sports because of the, the next few weeks. I did however, understand that this conversation is gonna come tonight. And I was comfortable having families, teachers, and teachers make those discussions, decisions that they're comfortable with for their children, for their, for people. And would absolutely respect any decision. And when Dan and I spoke about this, I said, look, if a T, if a coach is not comfortable, then we cancel it. And it's, and Dan was comfortable with that. And I think Dan's relationship with the coaches is pretty frank. So I felt comfortable with getting on his feedback. Did I miss it? Did I put too much pressure on it and put the decision making in the wrong avenue? I yield for that feedback, but that was a decision, you know, that was a Sunday, Monday decisions, talking with lots of people. But the board could say, certainly the Hopkins School Board can say teachers only. Services, no, you know, because, and, and no, and suspend sports until certainly within the purview of this board to describe or to dictate what remote learning in this environment read. By the way, I'm, I'm with you, tipping point looks like in the Hopkins School.
Any thoughts?
I guess my thought is the, you know, we look to the, the MOA for that. And the language that's already been agreed to by both parties.
Yeah, school, if schools are closed without in-person options, I'm with you, Rob. That's the MOA. But the MOA was, you know, to be honest, that was just, that was create, and we can also reopen. And the MOA has a line that says we could reopen and we consider different language if there was appetite for that. But the MOA was written in August before all the safeguards and the proof of the fall and a, but it's also wasn't written in red. So I, I'm with you. I get it. And if the board, if this is where the board's going, absolutely, I will implement that with Chris Kelly and with Dan Meserve. And we will implement that as directed.
So the MOAs are ambiguous, right? I mean, it depends what we, we have not settled on what we mean by remote at this point, I take it.
Well, that was my interpretation, Seth, that because I was allowing targeted in-person services on a voluntary basis, I was comfortable allowing coaches on the same voluntary basis, cause I did not completely close access to the schools. But I didn't mean to split hairs. I felt that was a way that I could have people comfortable and felt professionally on both ends, where there was a coaches or the teachers professionally, that they would make a decision that was best for them. I did not consider the weight of influence or force. I did not. And maybe that was, I was an error to not consider that kind of pressure.
How many students are we talking, Steve, that would not begin support within our school? If we were to, you know, what's the impact? And, and that's, is that too much of a private thing to say?
You know, I'm not, I'm not sure. And seeing that some parents aren't comfortable having their kids in school for services too. So it's, it, it, I think it changes. It, it changes. So I'm not sure how many, but I know the teams are reviewing. But again, I am not comfortable, you know, and if there's more services than people are comfortable doing, and that's what we have to work out. And that's what Mandy does and figure out what resources we have to deliver the services safely. So I don't know exactly how many, but it's not a huge number in our schools.
I mean, I.
How do we, how are we reaching them though? I mean, I'm just curious, how are we going to reach those students? I mean, that's, that's, that's where I'm really struggling with, you know, these, these students that are at home that aren't get, need that one-on-one in person. How will we reach them? What, what would be the district's plan in order to educate them, to be able to give them that services?
So they look at each service, they look at how it can be delivered remotely or in person, and they design a plan that ensures that services is delivered in the best means possible. Mandy's right on it. She has great collaboration with other leaders. She's a leader in this work. I'm very comfortable with how she's communicating and collaborating with our staff to design, look at the service. And then can we be delivered and then work with the families and see if they're comfortable and how we make it happen. And, you know, one of the questions that Andy and I've talked about and with the nurses, when aren't we, right? And when are, if it's 68.8 now, you know, when aren't we comfortable if, if, you know, we've, if we found, and this is what we, you know, and I talked to Amy today. Even though we're in mostly remote, communicating with our nurses about positive cases and about quarantining is important because they influence my decisions about in-person or sports or the, so anybody out there, that kind of communication. Because if there, the more there is in the community, the school community, certainly that makes it harder to have any in-person and extracurricular, absolutely. That's why we'd like great communication with our nurses, even if we're remote to say the nurses, this is what's going on. And it just would help us because there are connections to all this. And I'm, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm not trying, I'm trying to, you know, provide a way that we can deliver some services. And but it is, we've talked about this the entire journey. If the risk is too much right now, between now, we want to suspend sports and for the next week and a half, not, you know, you know, really look for alternative ways to deliver those services. I absolutely respect that perspective. I truly do.
So, I mean, I, for myself, I mean, I, I, I think the approach that Steve that you laid out, I, I, I think there are going to be students that are going to be, that have services that that will probably be better delivered in person. And if, if both the parents, the student and the, the staff feel like it's, that they can deliver that safely and it's appropriate and all parties agree to that. Like I, I, I think I'm, I'm comfortable with that as long as, you know, everybody's in agreement and everybody is safe and can abide by, you know, by the safety protocols that are in place. I, I don't, I don't want to shut the door to that because I, I do think it's important. And then I, I think sports is probably a separate conversation that we should, that I think we might want to have separately than sort of, you know, student educational services. And how we deliver those versus, versus sort of sports. And so I, in my brain, those are two different things. And so I, I come trying to separate those, at least for myself.
I'm sorry, go, go for it, Rob.
So if, if I'm back sitting in my teaching chair and somebody says, you know, we really think that this student needs certain services that are best delivered in person. And, you know, would you be willing to do that? And if I'm not comfortable doing that, it's going to be really hard for me to say that. There'd be a lot of pressure to, to make that happen. And I think you're sort of setting up folks for a little bit of, you know, the right phrase, not good cop, bad cop, but you know what I mean? Where you end up being the bad person because you're not comfortable doing that. And I, and I don't think that's a fair situation to put people in. I think that if we're worried about individual transmission, community transmission, it is what it is. You know, we've all seen the numbers, you know, they've, they've doubled in the state in a week. They've doubled in Hopkins in a week. We're, we're not going where we need to go. So dancing around that and, and assuming that perhaps that person that you're giving services to is doing the right thing is an assumption. You know?
And I guess I, I'm sorry, Rob, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I, I think it's an all or none. I don't, I don't think it's, I don't like the idea of putting people in that situation.
Sure. And I, just so, because maybe I didn't articulate it, it wasn't clear. I mean, I guess I'm talking about like legally obligated services, like special education services that we need to provide. I'm not talking about, you know, a student needing extra help from a math teacher. Because I agree with you. I think, you know, that's, that's unfair, but I do think, you know, we have legally obligated services to provide the children. And I think some of those, all parties could agree would be better and can be done on an, on a in-person basis. And so I would only be comfortable if all the parties agreed. I understand there's pressure. I, I understand, I understand your point, but I also, I don't think it's for everybody. So.
I mean, that raises the question, just I agree with you, Jim, but I understand what Rob was just saying. I mean, Steve, how do you create a situation where we can let the teacher know it is a honest choice and we understand whichever choice you make? I mean, how, how can that be communicated in a way that you're getting? Cause I understand what Rob just said, there is a pressure.
Sure.
Beat the kid. So how do we?
I mean, the process Seth was, Mandy and I met with the HEA leadership. We, we talked about that language. Mandy met with each department and used the language it is not required. And, but it was required to evaluate your case managers on what services that you felt needed to be. And then Mandy would look at the resources we had to meet those services. And that was, that was the language. We not required voluntary was the language. It's the only way that Mandy and I were both comfortable in the environment when I, you know, made the decision Sunday, Monday, or whenever the decisions were made. But I completely, as you said, Seth, I understand Rob's perspective. I do. And if that's the way this board wants to go, I get that too. I truly do. So.
No, I have a question, Steve. What, so at the middle high school, what happened this week? Were their kids getting additional supports, not like above and beyond legally mandated ones this week?
No, the only, and I, in this week was trying to plan and organize and determine which services were in. I don't believe there were any, I honestly can't speak, but I don't believe there were kids in the buildings. If they were, they were, that means they met the threshold and they already started. And I think at Harold, we were trying, Harold Martin, we're trying to start on Tuesday, if that sounds familiar. And, and then at Maple Street, we were trying to start that as well. And that, it just takes some time to meet with the departments and figure it out and how to do it. So I, but I don't believe there are any kids at the secondary level this week.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess for me personally, I just, I, I've come down on the line of, I, I really feel like, I understand Rob's point, but I really feel like the kids who, who have these, especially legally required services, you know, it's not a walk in the park. And I know that we all know that, but what you just said, Steve, the fact that you and Mandy go and you meet with the HEA representatives, you know, I, I feel more comfortable in that I, I do think that folks would speak up. And I get that there's going to be pressure, but I also think that there's going to be pressure that folks are putting on themselves, you know, because teachers want to help and they want to help provide these services. And so even, even if it was some magical word that made no pressure come from Steve or the administration, I still think that there would be an internal pressure. But I, I really think that as much as we can allow kids to be in the building to receive some supports, I think that the risk versus the benefits, it just swings in the other way for me. I think that the, the risk of kids being out and not being able to receive services in person outweighs the potential for an increased risk of, of contracting COVID. Which at this point, we also have not seen that the school is necessarily a, a spreading event and we would, I would assume keep the same standards. If we have a case, then no, then nobody is in the building. That's where, that's where I fall on this.
With some trepidation, I'm going to share this, this bit of dialogue that I had with Commissioner Ada Blute in his office. Frank and I know each other from Ski World and had an opportunity to meet with him a couple of years ago. And, you know, we got talking about various regulations and things. And he said, Rob, look, you know, you need to understand that a lot of the things that I have concerns about are not concerns that necessarily apply to Hopkins. They apply to other districts where people are really struggling to deliver the goods, so to speak. You know, so I wonder when the governor passes such a, an executive order. Is he, has he looked at the way special education services have been delivered in Hopkins? Or is he concerned about districts that for a whole variety of reasons might be struggling to do that? You know, an apple is not an apple in terms of school districts across the state and what we do. So, you know, I, I really, well, I'm just going to leave it there for now, but I, I think you are essentially creating a double standard amongst your teachers saying, okay, if you, if you're doing a certain thing, then you, you're going to be remote because it's, we don't think you should be in school because of transmission rates. But if you're doing something else, then, you know, we have a, a law that's going to ask you to come in and do those things, you know? I don't think the governor has given us excellent guidance throughout this whole thing. And most recently, I think he's given us little to no guidance. So.
And Rob, just to be clear, the executive order requires consideration. You have to acknowledge and consider. It doesn't require that it is delivered in person. It's requires that you consider case by case and determine if it can, that's, that's, that's the law. So if the, if the Hopkins School Board says no services in school from now until whatever, we, we will consider it. You know what I mean? And then go. So, I mean, that's where we're at. And I'm not trying to, you know, I, I want to be transparent in, in that.
I'm glad you made that clarification, Steve. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
I, I just wanted to clarify too, are we, when we are talking about remote, are we, I, are we talking about our teachers teaching from the schools or are teachers teaching from home? Or have we not determined that?
So this week I made it, I, I made it voluntary. For all components of your voluntary to come in the building, your voluntary to work with kids, your voluntary to work after school, I made it work. So what the, and I did that because we're at the tipping point and I did that because of the number of cases and I did that to, to, so I relied on that piece. So that was the direction this week after, I think Monday I messed it up, to be honest with you, but I think we got it straightened from Tuesday through Friday.
How do people feel about, about that, as Steve just laid it out?
You know, I, I feel like it's a tie right now between student services going in person or being fully remote. Is that kind of where I'm feeling the board, you know, that I'm, I'm trying to figure out, trying to, I personally would like to ask Steve and Mandy to look at continuing having in-person for our students, for the students who need the services. Jim, I firmly think that there's dialogue between a parent and a teacher and, and the, in the district on how we can service that and come to an agreement. I want to be able to, I'd like to be able to allow that dialogue. Take a temperature check on that, see what we can do in order to provide those services. I don't know how many students this impact for capacity for the district. I know that's probably something that's private, but I don't want to go and eliminate everything. I think that, that we need to try and have that, that point for those kids to have some type of, who really, really, really need it. And there's a lot of kids that, that probably do. I don't want to use the MOA as a way of, you know, like you say, if we're not in, there's no sports. And that's not what I'm looking for. I'm taking each situation as it is. And I, and I, you know, we're going remote for the students, for the ones that need special services. I would like to see them to have an opportunity to receive that. I trust Steve that he'll be able to coordinate that with Mandy. And, and I think he'll have a little bit of alleviated pressure for not having all these other kids in the district to be able to service those kids.
I'm going to, I'm going to jump in again. So let, let's be clear that special ed services are still being delivered when it's remote. And that in some instances, those services and what they look like change. If you have kids in a group of four and five, because you are now remote, that those groupings may change to it's one-on-one, it's one-on-two, it might be one-on-three. But they are still continuing. So it's not like they've stopped and it's, and in some instances, they perhaps are even better because of the change in groupings and because of the attention that you can give to each individual student. And Norm, in terms of the MOA, the MOA is, is a binding agreement. You know, we can't take it on a, on an individual basis. It, it is what it is. You know, so.
I know, but you're, you're using, I understand it's an agreement, you know, and you're, and you're saying that if there's no one in school, then boom, everything, everything shuts down. I understand that. And that's the way it is. You know, sports is eliminated if we haven't, if we're not using our facilities at all. I get it. I'm just slowing it down based on Jim's discussion that we're talking about each individual situation as a board in order to come up with the best solution for the district and for our students. So each situation is unique. I, I, you know, I understand the agreement. I'm just slowing it down a little bit before I make a decision that eliminates three things and all, whatever it is.
I mean, I, I'm comfortable with, with providing the option for legally mandated services if, if all parties are in agreement to have an in-person option. I'm not suggesting that all legally mandated services be done in person. I mean, I, I don't think anybody's saying that. But I think if the, the provider, the teacher, the parents and the student feel like it can be done and it's the best for the child, I, I, I personally don't want to shut the door for how long we may be in remote to provide that. So that, that's sort of what I'm, I'm at least proposing that. And I understand that not everybody's on the same page. And so it'd be good, I think, to figure out where we are so we can move on to the next debatable item on our list. So I, I guess maybe it's, I mean, we're not really taking a vote. This is really guidance for Steve and how we want to proceed. So this is almost like a straw vote, but I guess if people are comfortable with like the, the general guidelines of what I just sort of laid out, if you could just raise your hand, that might be the best way to do it. And so it seems like we have not unanimous, but at least a consensus to move on. So Rob, do you want to say something? I think you did. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just think the key word that Steve said is consideration.
That's right.
So I'd be willing to move forward with this, with the superintendent, following the law in that it's a consideration. But I do think that, you know, well, we've already had the conversation. That's the key word, consideration.
So then the next one for us to, I think, to talk about, it's not so much the services, but it's, it's the, the sports programs and how we want to proceed. And then we, we had quite a lengthy conversation about, about pretty much basketball and hockey. I think we're the, you know, the focus of our conversations last week. And so I, I just sort of want to throw out this, you know, does this conversation, you know, and where we are, does it change the, the guidance that we provided last week? Again, well, it could be all sports, I guess. So does it change the guidance for all sports? Does it change the guidance for the indoor sports that we talked about last week? Where are, where are everybody's heads here on this one? Cause again, those sports are either starting to move forward or they, they soon will be.
I asked about the impacts, I mean, of Steve. So if we said today, we're not going to be doing sports until the minimum after the new year, how does that affect our ability to actually have a season? I mean, are we really making, I mean, I know the games we're going to start at some point, if you don't have a team, it's hard to imagine you're going to have a season.
But I think tryouts were scheduled. I mean, I can bring Dan up. I don't know exactly. You know, I, exactly what would happen. I think Dan is on, if you want to hear from Dan on the impact of.
I mean, I guess I want to know if I decide that today, have I essentially pulled the plug and that doesn't decide it, but it's an important piece of data.
Yeah, I remember in our last conversations, we had talked about, you know, whether or not, you know, we can come back on the seventh and sort of start making, you know, seeing where things were on the seventh and how to move forward. And I think Dan did tell us that would be too late because it, you know, because the season started.
But if we cancel the part between now and the seventh, it don't really have constituted teams, what is the impact of that?
That was my concern. My concern, if we, if we, if we don't get the next week and a half in to start formulating the teams, then that might make the decision that right now we're, we're sports again, which is fine if that's where the board's going. But I, that was my concern that we would be, that, that decision we made today instead of, you know, where we were after.
Can we pull Dan over?
He's got his hand up over there, Steve.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. I didn't, thank you. I was looking below.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks.
Sorry about that. I didn't. Sorry about that. I didn't.
Hi, Dan. Sorry about the delay. I didn't see you at the top of it.
That's okay. Thank you. So to answer your question, yeah, if we wait until January 7th, it would be extremely difficult. We have middle school sports. We had tryouts this week. Tonight, about an hour and a half ago, the middle school boys team finished tryouts and I am preparing to. Post who made the team later on tonight or tomorrow morning now. Next week, starting on Monday, we start with high school tryouts for basketballs. The other sports are not going to be tryout sports, but they will all start on Monday as well.
And so if there were no sport, let's just assume for argument's sake, there's no, there's nothing between now and after Christmas vacation. Does that result in? Even if things were better and we said you can resume, is that too late to have a season?
Yes.
Cricket guys, there's cricket here.
I'm about to ask a question. So I'm just separating the sports for a moment for the. Ice hockey team. Do we have any coaches from Hopkinton on the ice hockey team or is it the John Stark?
We have one assistant coach is going to help out. He's going to be a volunteer assistant, but it looks like we have one from Hopkinton who will be doing that.
Okay, do you have a sense? Of whether or not people would be comfortable? Saying that they were not comfortable? It does that weird negative sentence make sense to you? If folks did not feel safe, would they tell you?
I think they would. I think they have told us already. We have some players who have not tried out for middle school basketball. Who played last year and just decided not to. And, you know, as I said a week ago, I completely understand that every family has to make that decision. You know, the other things I talked about last week is that there are a lot of other people who are just looking for a place to play. And if we don't offer it, they're gonna find somewhere else. They are. You know, I would actually argue that if we are remote. It's actually more beneficial to have sports because there isn't those kids coming back into the school and, you know, potentially infecting other other people because they're not doing it. And yet they're still in our community and we're running things. Just a couple of things that I'm thinking, you know, what other just quick questions that you mentioned hockey and last week I said John Stark has 14. They actually have nine players who are playing John Stark hockey. So if we make the decision to cancel sports. Not only is the hockey group out all their money for forensic ice for December, January. But it means that John Stark is not able to field a hockey team this year either. And those kids are out of luck.
And what about coaches? I mean, what's your like your your relationship with the coaches? Would they be? You know, kind of wrapping back to this power dynamic that Rob had brought up in regards to teachers. I'm just wondering if that holds for coaches as well.
I think so. I think I have a pretty good relationship with my coaches on a daily basis. I've either been texting or calling them all and saying, hey, this is where we are. Steve has been great about updating me on where we are with cases. I talked to Amy Cook. Just about every day to see where we are. And I really that's the coaches. And I say, look, if you have any issues, if you're at all concerned. I will pull the plug. I'll cancel this practice, whatever. Coaches have been, we're fine with it.
You know, I feel it. I'm pulling the plug on on students in person. And, you know, to me, it is very hard to tell. A parent or a community member to say, I'm going to allow your child to play sports, but your child's not going to get the in-person experience over sports. And I struggle with that, Dan. I really, I really do. You know, through this whole process, you know. You know, this board, you know, it's not living in fear. You know, I think this board is honestly. Been very patient, listening to the community, look, looking at the cases, experiencing everything that is to deal with with COVID and. You know me personally that I love sports and you know that I love this town, but. It is my responsibility, I feel as a board member, that I got to control community spread. You know, on the sweatboard, you know, they had the discussion about a mass ordinance. And it wasn't about, you know, they wanted to find people. They wanted to, you know, control this spread. And I firmly believe that as a board, we are doing our best right now. With saying, okay, we're taking a step back with this community and we're going remote. Because we are having problems of a spread that's six feet. In person with our students. And now we're about to go into a season potentially where, you know, I know there's a great plan. I know Dan, I trust you. I've always believed in you. But I'm struggling with going ahead where I've. Pulled back our students and given the go ahead for sports when these kids now are not getting getting the support in a classroom. I've always been a board member about academics over sports. I am a big sports guy, but right now I'm leaning towards the no. And that's probably. A lot of people in the community probably going, what are you doing? But. I want our kids to have an education and I do want them to play sports. But right now I'm looking at the spread and it's getting a lot of control and that's where I'm leaning right now.
So Norm, last week, as I recall, you guys talked about having the athletes go remote so they wouldn't interact with the kids. Isn't this the exact opposite? We have everybody else now remote. And so wouldn't it by that same rationale that said we should we should keep the athletes away? Now we're doing the opposite. We're saying we're keeping everybody else away. And if these kids have the opportunity to play sports at Hopkinton to have some some. Tie to their school. And I gave you the reasons and I think Andrea was right on last week about, you know, the concerns about. The mental health of these kids. And I got to tell you, one other thing that really came to fruition this last week. Is when kids started realizing there was a sports season, man, I gotta get my grades up. And I watched those kids in, you know, Chris Kelly would talk about the failure list. And the number of kids who buckled down and got the grades up because they want to do sports because we have leverage. And if we don't have sports, we lose that leverage. It's just another reason why we should be doing this.
So to be fair. No, I'm sorry, Norm.
No, you go first, Jim.
I was gonna say, to be fair, we did talk about that, but the board didn't make any decisions on on the remote piece. I and I guess I I'm in my head, I, you know, to me, this is all all these discussions are risk management discussions. And so. Like I don't see all sports having the same level of risk. Again, I think Nordic Alpine, those are outdoor, lower risk activities. My concern is more of the indoor higher risk activities. And so. So that's where all my focus is. So I I'm not personally thinking that we just we we don't have winter sports. Because I think that's sort of a sledgehammer approach to something that doesn't need a sledgehammer. And I think, you know, that we do know that we have two sports that are higher risk and we're in a high risk situation at the moment. And so I. I appreciate that we can do a lot of things that help mitigate some of those risks and. You know, when we have when we have community spread in the cases that we have. I just I just I continue to really struggle with how we how we put those two sports on in this atmosphere that we're in. And that's just one board member. It's in no way I and I. Totally appreciate the mental health aspect. I totally appreciate. The good that sports do like this. I I don't dismiss any of that. It's really just I just look at the circumstance we're in and just. How do I, as a decision maker? Not look at all the look at all the evidence that's going on in the community around us and then allow for. Indoor activities that we know are at a higher risk. And I understand it's a choice and I understand the kids will go elsewhere. I understand that we may not have people in school and they may still go out to restaurants and do those activities I can't control. As a board member, it's not my job to control all the other activities people do. I hope they wouldn't do it and I would advise them. For the sake of community spread, they may not want to go and engage in high risk activities. All I all we can do is sort of control the 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 things that we do have have some control over and. And I just have a real struggle with indoor sports in where we're at. So.
So I mean, this conversation has changed a little bit. If we're talking about rationale for getting rid of sports is we're trying to keep the kids out of the school. Hockey is not in our school. They're at a rank that is outside of the school. So now are we just picking and choosing and saying, well, it's the indoor sports and we're going to hit basketball and we're going to hit hockey. But we're not going to hit the other ones. You know, I guess I'm looking for it. Rob talked about consistently. So there should be some consistency there.
Yeah, and I think I'm not trying to hit sports. I'm trying to, I believe, part of our our responsibility is to limit risk and community spread. And so. I'm trying to think through what are those levers that I have as a board member? To limit community spread and it seems rational that a way to limit community spread is to not have indoor sports. Occur in our school buildings and with our student athletes. And I would also, the last thing I'll just say is, you know, the the situation that we find ourselves in is continually evolved day to day, week to week. And so the conversation we had two weeks ago. The number of cases that we have both in our schools and our communities has radically changed. And so I'm just as I think I've tried to, as we've been going through this process over the last. Eight months, I've been trying to. Just lost my train of thought. I apologize. I've been trying to figure out, you know, what what are those levers? When is when is too much too much? And I just think right now, looking at. The trajectory of cases, looking at the trajectory of where we are, it just feels like that risk management decision has flipped. And I have trouble with the indoor sports and I've this isn't new. I think I've stated this over even over fall sports, but. As we ended last meeting, you know, a month ago, we had 100 cases. A month before that, there were 50 cases in the state and today we're looking at over 1,000 cases. So it's it's a different world. It's a different set of circumstances.
I understand completely. It was one week ago. It wasn't two weeks. It was one week ago. We had this discussion. And I asked you at that time and I said, look, you know, we all see the cases and I see them too. And I share many of the concerns that all the concerns that you guys do. But we asked that, you know, you let us make the decisions on a weekly, a daily and hourly basis. Let Steve, like Chris, may make those decisions. And I don't know if that's changed. That's what we're asking. Is for us to be the ones making those decisions cognizant of all of these cases. And you're right, the cases are going up and I will be the first one to admit it doesn't look great. But I don't think we should pull the plug right now. If I could just say one thing, Steve, Chris Kelly has asked to be pushed up. He's had his hand raised and I don't know if he could be part of this too, but he had.
Sure, happy to bring Chris up. I don't see his hand up. Chris, pop your hand up, will you?
So Dan, can I ask you a question just on your last statement? So when do you think, when do you think it would be right to pull the plug? If not now with the number of cases in the trajectory, when when do you think it would be?
Well, I really think talking to Amy Cook is one of the one of the key parts and saying, you know, where are we with the school? And are we at the point where we've got kids that are spreading it to one another in the school? I don't think we are at that point. As I told you a week ago, we have no documented cases in New Hampshire of kids who are. Who are from one team to another one that has happened inter-scholastically. I think those are big parts.
Chris is up now. Hi, Chris.
Hi, Dan. I mean, hi, Steve. I talked to you guys so much. You're all one in the same, it seems like. I would agree with what Dan, or I want to support what Dan was saying in regards to kids going elsewhere. I believe in one of the presentations that Mr. McGrath shared with you, he had a slide in there in regards to no wasted reps in AAU basketball program and they're already. Advertising for rec league for schools that will not have approved sports for the winter. So it is happening when I'm involved with the New Hampshire comments, as you've heard me talk about, we are. Having a board meeting next week to actually talk about suspending. Our winter workouts, but we're just one organization and there are many organizations across the across the state that will continue to have their indoor softball winter workout. So. They are still practicing whether or not they they play a winter sport. There are other sports that are happening. Indoor lacrosse, indoor field hockey. So those those athletes, you know, I don't know how we work to protect everything outside of allowing our kids to still. Practice by themselves with their own teams. In our own facilities that we know our custodial staff can clean, that we know our coaches have agreed to follow the guidelines that Dan has put together. And continue to monitor this. This is why I kind of tried to broker that that. Deal, if you will, last board meeting to let us work through the next month. And see how things unfold. To at least allow our teams to prepare for a season if we move forward with a season. Now, we've required masks of our athletes. I can I can tell you just watching my daughter and my own team play when we move to full masks during games. We've been playing with that now for three weeks and they're still not used to playing with masks. So anything we can do to help prepare them. To play with masks, I think doing that in practice is another way that we can work to condition our athletes. And we also know that a preseason is also. Important to help prevent injuries. So anything we can do there to work strength and conditioning to make sure that on the side of an athlete, they are mentally and physically prepared to play. This is just one thing that we can do. There are no scrimmages. There's no that we're not working out with other schools. The only area that that would happen, I think, is an obvious place and that's with the hockey team because we have John Stark and hopping and kids together. But as I mentioned today in my morning announcements, they know what time they have to be there for their health screenings. To make sure that we are doing everything we can. That is not anything out of the normal. I mean, we're just taking everything that we ask our students to do every day that they come into school is complete a health screen. They're going to do it for their athletes as well. So. Dan's correct. It's happening with AAU programs, USA softball programs and other programs. That are continuing to run their their own indoor sports. And I and, you know, high school athletes, this is the prime time of their life and they crave this competition. There's a reason why they play, whether they have college aspirations or they're just competitive kids. They're going to find a way. They're going to find a way and. You know, I would just ask that that we allow it to happen for, you know, through January, like we had talked about and. And come back and reassess. Amy is not shy to contact me and I know she's not shy to contact Dan. We speak every day that we see one another. So. There's a lot of communication that's going back and forth. I can tell you that it's a good portion of my day. Every day that we're talking about where are we with kids, with staff? And, you know, what's our best way to proceed?
I mean, I'm struggling a bit and I've already sort of articulated my my case, but I guess. I guess I'm struggling because we're saying that, you know, we're shutting down in-person education. We're saying that we're this board is seeing the cases rise. We see the risk. We see the trajectory. So we, if we continue to allow, you know, and the the teams to practice and train and condition. We come back on the seventh, I think nobody on this board has, I think, real strong feelings that 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 trajectory is going to lessen, that we're going to have less cases in our community. And then we're going to be back at the same conversation. And I'm not getting a sense that anybody's opinions are going to change, that we should we should stop doing the season, even if cases are going up. And so I guess I'm left with what what what, in my view, I'm just wondering what the circumstances are that we would change our mind. You know, a week before the season starts, any of us to where we ought to be going. And so I I stay with the. Indoor sports are different than outdoor sports at this point in time. And the risk management calculation would be that we should continue with outdoor sports. But because of the higher risks, we shouldn't do indoor sports. And I understand that there's options. There's options for people to do everything right now. I would suggest that I would caution people from doing those, but we can't stop them from doing it. And you're right, kids are gonna, kids and families will make choices, but. What what are those choices that the Hopkinton School District are going to be offering that we feel are safe? Have have a lower risk and I just I can't make a case for how our indoor sports. Meet those meet those thresholds. But that's just me, that, you know, I'm one board member.
Andrew, do you want to go or you want me to?
I can jump in. I mean, I guess I guess my perspective is that. Well, first of all, I personally, I separate hockey and basketball. I know we like to talk about like go outside and ski. But I do think that there's an equity piece that is often overlooked. Skiing costs money, even if there's some free skis. You still have to buy the outdoor gear. You have to get enough winter gear. You have to get to and from wherever you're going, whereas basketball is. It can be more accessible for folks. So it's just another piece. You know, I know that our previous conversations were, will kids end up bringing it back to the school? Well, that's not going to happen now because we're going to be remote for a while. And looking, you know, when I look at hockey, I know another concern was, are we keeping our teachers and our coaches safe? And that's why I asked, you know, what what the relationship is with coaches, how they're feeling and, you know, how many coaches do we have on the hockey team? I I'm going to trust, you know, Dan, that that the assistant coach will say. I, I'm going to trust, you know, Dan, that, that the assistant coach will say yes or no, you know, they're comfortable or they're not comfortable. You know, and, and again, for basketball, you know, we're looking at what, like 40 odd students? Is that, am I, yeah. You know, who are in a gym, 11 people at most at a time with one to two, I guess, two coaches who can stay away for, for an hour versus eight to 10 children sitting in a classroom for six hours. So I, I guess I, I see differences. Um, you know, I, I think that for my, my risk, um, benefit calculations are just different. I, I think that, if parents and students and coaches choose to move forward with sports, especially considering that we are in a full remote situation. I, I would not vote that down right now. I, I think I would support it. I would support the, those, those two sports, looking at them separately, moving forward. But you know, like, like you said, Jim, I understand that I'm, I am just one person on this board, but I guess, you know, again, I'm looking at that, the mental health aspect. And I'm looking at, you know, a principal and a superintendent and athletic director who, you know, they have made some, some good points and I think have done, done the research, um, to a level that I'm, I'm comfortable with. You know, just like I'm listening to the teacher saying that they feel right now, because we've received emails that remote right now is the thing to do. And I'm trusting that. You know, I, I think it goes both ways. So that's my rambly take on it.
I'll say I'm conflicted about this and I've never hated to have to make the decision like this. This is just the worst. So let me just say that from the, from the start. I feel like the, there's risk in this. There is risk in this and there's no way around it. We are going to continue to, to respond to norm. We are going to continue to provide education. It's not the way we want to be providing, but we're going to continue to do that. If we make the up, alter the decision now to not do sports, we are, we are not going to do it. Um, that is, will be canceled. And I, I do worry about that. I, I think I agree with Andrea, that the emotional lift is significant. Not to use my own family as the way to decide, but I see it in my own house. The days that there's an open gym, the mood is lifted. It's just a fact. And I, so I assume that's reverberating through all of the other households. And I, um, I struggle with the fact we're taking every, everything away from these children. And it, it, it just distresses me no end. And at least at the secondary level, I am confident we're teaching them. I really am. And I'm not, I'm not going to vote for this because I think it's not without risk. So I respect Jim's calculation of risk. I think he is right. But I guess, since it is a volunteer activity with, that has reverberating positive effects for these students, and if we can give them something that is, that is optional, I am willing to do it with trepidation. I mean, I guess that's where I am.
And, and Steve, if, if, if the decision is not to do extracurriculars, this would include robotics, I'm assuming, correct?
Yeah, I'm, that's my assumption as well, right? We, we'd cancel that. We'd postpone that as well.
I just want to, I just bring that up just so we're clear. I know we're talking a lot about sports, but we do have Charlene Betts, who has been leading the charge with robotics and, uh, you know, working to test robots right now and, and getting ready for bit, uh, further build season. So we would need to let them know as well.
If I could chime in just for a second, I understand we make our own decisions. I, I know that. Of the 10 schools in our cohort, the area we were talking about playing Concord, Hillsborough, Kearsarge, Stark, Pembroke, and now us are, are all remote. And yet all those other schools are still playing sports.
Rob, I think you wanted to jump in.
Yeah, sometimes it's a bad idea to wait till last, I guess, but, um, so, you know, I've got a lot of notes written down here and I think that, uh, first off, this chair being a school board chair is very different, um, from other chairs I've sat in. And you know, I think about what Norm said and thinking not just about individuals, but thinking about the community at large, um, and community transmission. That, you know, we are essentially putting, we're giving people the opportunity to spread the disease. And then I think way back to when we had our discussions with Primex. And there's no real standard of care. And how does that all fall? And you know, how our decisions may come back that way. And that's just a side piece. I hear what Dan's saying about the consistency with the, you know, indoor sports versus outdoor sports. It is clearly a lot safer to be a Nordic skier and Alpine skier than to play basketball or hockey. There's no doubt about that. Although I'm sure some will disagree. I think about, you know, another conversation I had during the summer with, when we were thinking about what school would look like and systems that were more preventative instead of reactive. Um, and I think our system, as much as there are protocols in place that would prevent the spread perhaps, uh, it's still reactive, you know, if there are cases, if it has spread, then we will act. With what we're dealing with, I'm not sure that's the best scenario in the universe. Uh, in, in the bottom line for me, when I get down to the whole piece of it is, you know, we've all done athletic endeavors and being within feet or inches of somebody when my heart rate is 170 is a very different situation than other situations when we've broken that six foot plane. And, and I just think it's a bad idea. I think it's, it's, it's increasing risk. Beyond what seems to make sense to me. Uh, so I, I'm definitely more with Jim and Norm on this. And yeah, it's a, it's a lousy decision, Seth. I couldn't agree with you more, but you know, the other thing that sort of bothers me is that we were quicker to get to remote and continue educating, but take away the in-person and we're struggling more with this. This doesn't seem quite right. So and whether, and whether we, you know, to be fair, because I did talk a lot about consistency, Dan is, you know, whether we split and say it's Nordic and Alpine, or whether we be consistent and say it's all sports, all extracurriculars, because I'm, I'm fine with that. It's a, it's a hardship that I think is in place. The pandemic is roaring forward. It's not going someplace else. And I think we need to do what's best to slow it down. And if more people had done that all the way along, maybe we wouldn't be making this decision right now.
It, it, it's a hard decision. I know a lot of, a lot of seniors. You know, this is their last year playing, playing sports, you know, or you have the juniors that don't necessarily have the potential to afford college that are looking for a scholarship. You know, that weighs on me too. I mean, there's some people, we have some gifted athletes that need, that need sports in order to get in, to get into college, because their family don't have the resources. But you know, Chris, I, 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 I don't want to put you on the spot. I guess where I'm struggling with is how do you tell a parent whose kid does not play sports? That sports is more important than it is a classroom, a classroom presence. You have a principal over there. And my son doesn't play sports. I'd rather have him class. And I'm not weighing my decision based on my own child. My point is, is that how do you tell a community member that their child who struggles with learning, who remotely, and you're shutting it down for the safety of that individual, that sports is the president's over, over educate, over, um, learning in person?
Well, I don't think, I don't think we've said that. I think what Steve said earlier was that we're going to be working with our director of student services. She's begun the conversations. We've implemented a successful facilitated remote program where we had hired. We did have some students who decided that it wasn't for them. And we will, Rebecca and I will continue to work with Mandy to look at which students would potentially come in. But it all depends on, you know, where the board decides on the voluntary piece as well. And if, if we're going to allow our special education staff to volunteer their time to come into the building to work with students with special services or students who are struggling, uh, in the remote. Then we'll, we'll work on that plan. Um, you know, that's, that's all that I think the administration really has been doing since the, you know, since, since March is continuing to rebuild school and schedules to allow students to attend school. I, I'm not, I'm not saying that it's more important to play sports over students attending school. But they're all, school is encompassing many different parts and going to classes is absolutely essential. You heard me say that when I put forward a schedule and when I came to the board, with the current schedule that we're in, you know, that everything that's continued to drive me is how do we work towards ensuring student learning, raising, you know, raising the bar, closing the gap, all of this, all of the school district goals. So, you know, I, that hasn't left my, my philosophy of how I approach things, who I work with and how I work with them. So I'm not saying that one is more important than the other. I think I've advocated for special education students, teachers, and I'm advocating for athletes here. I, I, I don't know that I'm doing.
And I, I understand. I understand, but the question will come to me as a board member. You know, one, one way or the other, you have to understand, you know, we're, we're going remote now. And I have, I have, you know, there's people who, kids don't play sports. It's okay, that, that's, I'm, I'm talking though for the other 80% of kids that don't play sports that won't be having in-person. You know, I want to ask Steve a question. Steve, you said we had.
Respond to that, Norm. You know, when we went to the facilitated remote program, there were, there were a few students and families that contacted either myself or, or school counseling department or Rebecca, whose, whose child did not make that list and made a strong case for why they felt their students should be involved with a facilitated remote program. We listened to those and we made some exceptions with those. So, I, I mean, I think my record is, has been, I have been open to it. I'm not trying to shut anything down or saying that one, one group of students is, is, is more important than another. I just want to make that clear.
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not being combative with you. You know, I, I'm trying, I'm trying to get, and I, so I have a question for you, Steve. Uh, in the new cases that, that occurred, and this is where I've, I've, I've really struggled. You have, you said eight students over at the high school remote were positive cases when they were not attending school, correct?
Yes.
Okay. What are, what are our kids doing? While they're not in school? That's, that's making the spread. I mean, it's.
Well, some of them are getting it from their parents. You know, some are getting it from their parents. Some of, some are getting it from, you know, I mean, so yeah, a lot of this is, you know, parents go to work and some parents work in hospitals, some parents work in schools, some parents work in places, Norman, that's, you know, that's where they get it. So, you know, so, so yeah, I'm, I mean, that's, you know, I don't, I don't know what they, I don't know. I know what my child.
So if I, I know, I know your child, I, I, yeah, sorry.
If I could, I guess, um, we, we could go, we can keep going all night, but I know we have other items. And so I guess I try to do what we did the last time and just try to get a, a sense from where the board is. Cause I think that will help us sort of move along, um, with our conversations. There's obviously strong feelings on all sides. And so this isn't a right or wrong question. Um, this is really, um, you know, given everything that we know today, you know, what, as Andrea said, sort of what is our risk tolerance here? And we all have different levels of it. So again, there's no right or wrong here. It is just where we are. So I guess I would, I would just start and, um, and maybe start with, with, you know, how does board members feel? I may have put it in, in more of a terms of a proposal. So, uh, who would be comfortable, um, with continuing with, uh, with all sports, um, sort of as we've been, as we've been going, um, and as we talked about last week and gave direction. Who's comfortable continuing on with that plan? All right. So a majority believe that, um, we have to make some changes. And so then I would throw to proposal. Uh, which board members are comfortable with sort of the outdoor sports, um, you know, that we offer in, in winter, which would be the, the two skiing sports. I believe those are the only two. So who would be comfortable, um, with those? Okay. So it looks like that's all of us. And then I guess who would be comfortable with moving forward with, with the two indoor sports that we currently have, um, which are basketball and hockey? Okay. So a majority of us are uncomfortable there. And so, um, so if my read of sort of that, that straw vote would be that, um, if we, if we're going to be moving forward with winter sports, starting now that it's, it's, the consensus of the board, not the unanimous vote of the board, the consensus of the board that outdoor activities, can, can move forward, but indoor sports, um, would be, um, deemed too risky at this point to, to continue forward with the season.
Did, did you want to see about, I, I don't know if there's any difference, but playing basketball versus playing ice hockey? I don't, I don't know. I mean, that might not, that might be a move.
No, I think that's, that's fine. So I'm, um, so I guess to Andrea's point, who would be comfortable continuing with the ice hockey, um, program? So I think, yeah. So my read on, I guess, the same question on basketball, but my assumption is going to be the same. So I guess at this point for board members, is there any other, um, just knowing, I guess, where we all are and sort of our positions, anybody have anything else they want to add at this point? Or suggest at this point? Okay. Hearing none. Um, I, I, I just, you know, for Dan or Chris, um, is there anything, I, I understand disappointment. I, I get all, I just wondered, is there anything else that you all want to add? To this conversation at the moment, um, or any, you know, chief concerns?
I, I guess I'm just confused. I mean, la- last week you guys did the same thing. It was a straw poll. It, it was, I understand it was not binding. It was a straw poll and it passed that we were going to continue on with this until January and then look again. Now you've taken another straw poll where it is not happening. So I, I guess I'm just confused. These straw poles, if they're, are they binding? Are they not binding? You, you know, we've gone these different weeks. We've just gone back and forth.
Yeah. So what I'm trying to do is get a consensus of the board because the circumstances change. Um, I, I do think, um, it's going to be, what I'll ask for, and I'm not sure how to word it, but I think we would probably be best to have a motion, uh, from the board. Once we work through all what going remote, um, means for the district at the moment that we, um, you know, we sort of have these votes as sort of benchmarks along the way. And so I, I hope, my hope is that when that motion comes, everybody will sort of have an understanding of what we're talking about, since we've done a lot of discussion and have taken these votes. But, um, again, that, that's generally where we are. And Dan, I, I, I know you understand that. You know, circumstances have changed, um, both in the closing of all of our, our in-person learning at all of our schools across the district over the last week. So it's, it's not, it, it's in some ways, um, not apples to apples where we were last week to this week. So and, and I know it's frustrating. I think, I know it's frustrating for parents. And so I know it's frustrating for you. And actually it's frustrating for all of us. Um, so it's, it's not an excuse. I think that's just where we're at.
I think we have our marching orders.
All right. Um, well, thank you.
I'm Dan and Chris, I'll let you, uh, head back to attendees because it's kind of, we got a little while to go.
Um, and so the next, um, I, I guess the next on my mind, just to bring up, um, is sort of all extracurricular activities. So, um, we've sort, we are sort of using a scalpel in some ways and not the sledgehammer. Um, and so we've, you know, by our, by our straw votes, we said that we, we think some extracurricular activities such as, such as Nordic and Alpine can continue and others don't. And so I guess, thinking about things like robotics and I, I know Steve, there's probably a, 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 there's probably a slate of these activities that occur, um, to some degree or another in person. I, I don't know them off the top of my head and I, I don't know that you do. And I, I just curious how, what's a good approach to how we want to discuss those other things or, or, um, just sort of stop them all, all now. Unless they're out, unless they're outdoor activities.
There's some argument that an indoor activity should be treated any differently than what we just did.
Yeah, maybe that's. And I'm generally comfortable with that. And I was, um, that might be a way to do it is, is, you know, how the board feels, it's just sort of, from not having indoor activities, you know, extracurricular activities happen. Um, if, if they can happen outdoors, then that's deemed a lower risk and probably safer. I don't know how people feel about that.
I mean, I would vote to allow them, but for the same reason that votes will allow basketball. So.
So, um, but we're, we're going to only permit extracurricular activities which are outside at this point.
Or virtual, what you have.
Virtual.
I mean, you do a lot of them that are virtual.
Yep. Thank you, Seth. No, I appreciate that. I'm sorry. Yep. Virtual or outside in person, but in person, um, will be outside. Is that, I just want to make sure.
Yeah. And that's what I'm hearing. And so I guess, um, it's hard to read body language because I think we're all weary and disappointed. Um, and so, um, I, I guess I would just ask for a show of hands. So, you know, do, and I think the question is, do we want to like, pretty much no indoor extracurricular, extracurricular activities, but those that can be done virtually or outdoors would, would be able to continue. That's sort of the, so those who agree with that, just raise a hand so we can kind of get a sense. Okay. And so at this point, I guess. Steve, from your, from your vantage point, are there other things that you need the board to weigh in on? In terms of the. In terms of what, you know, what going remote means at this point?
No, I think we've got it. I, you know, the, no, no, I think we've got the direction and certainly if there are things that come up. You know, we can certainly talk about it next week. I'm sure we'd like a week off of this kind of discussion. But we are meeting next week. So, but I think I've got the, the targeted services, the extracurriculars. I think we're, I think we're in good shape to, to operate and learn in a pandemic.
And then Steve, I guess. Do you feel like you need a motion from the board? Right now to sort of cement all these decisions? Do you feel you have an understanding of, of where the consensus of the board is? You know, I don't know how to put that into a motion.
I, I, I feel that I understand the board's direction to the superintendent to implement extracurricular. Activities and targeted support services in the Hopington School District while we're in this remote learning status.
Okay.
I believe I understand the, the direction of the board.
Before we leave this topic, and we have several topics to go. Just wonder if any, any board member has any sort of things they want to. To either acknowledge, to say, or, or questions for Steve or for any of us before we sort of move on to the next topic.
Um, I have one comment if that's all right.
No, that's great, Juliet. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that. It's the right decision to not move forward with indoor sports, just because even though we're remote. It's true that if somebody came down with a case, even if the team, if a team came down with a case, it wouldn't spread through the school. But it's like you guys were saying, there are parents and like my parents, for example, are both doctors. If I were to play basketball and get COVID, I could very well inadvertently be spreading it to like, I don't know, twenty sick people. I know that sounds a bit ridiculous, but you get my point. It's just, I feel like we're in such a high risk situation where things spread so easily. I, I think. It's a matter of wanting to play sports, which is something fun or endangering people's lives. And I just think when it gets to that point, it becomes a little iffy. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Good, Juliet. Again, before we move on to the next one, which is revenue and, and fairly hefty and take some focus. I would, I would ask for a five minute break.
I had one quick question, you know, I understand, you know, where we are with the season. Could we allow for, allow for them to, you know, if there's no snow, snow outside to just, you know, play outside, you know, not play. A game, but like, you know, do some team exercises outside if they're running, you know, like run and do what they want. I mean, still have some type of team chemistry together. Is there something that we could, even though the potentially, you know, obviously they're not going to season. But is there a way that we can try and build some type of, you know, look at some type of team environment that they can do? I know it's cold, but still having that type of environment for them as a team that they can carry through during this, you know, outdoors. Maybe there's something they can do.
I think that's a good suggestion and nothing would bar them from where the, you know, where the board was from doing those activities outdoors. So that's an option that I think Dan and his team could look at.
Thank you for, I understand the break. I'm with you. The next part of the agenda, though, is the audit and the financial, and that's Dave McKenzie and Mike Campo. Very few minutes. If you wouldn't mind doing the break after the invited guests.
That'd be great.
Then it's, then it's just us. It's our in-home group, if that's all right.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Sure.
So you want to, want to promote them for?
Sure.
Better term.
Mike and Dave, if you could raise your hands, I would love to promote you. Dave McKenzie is right on it. And so is Mike. You got, these guys are. Zoom professionals. As we're doing that. And I'll certainly. Offer Michelle too. So just a little bit about where we are. So this, at this meeting, which is the second, the budget process. It's a financial reauthorization meeting. We present the budget, the audit. And we have to have the audit done, going way back to, there was one time in our time where the audit wasn't completed by school district meeting. And that was an interesting meeting, if Michelle Clark remembers, which I'm sure she'll never forget. So thank you, Mike. Thank you, Dave, for coming. We, the audit has been received. That's a. Very busy time and stressful time in the summer for all our financial related people. Michelle's history is an auditor going way back, so she prepares the books and does some things, but I'm going to leave it at that. Michelle, do you want to talk about Dave and Mike, or we can just get them right going? And Mike, thank you for hanging in there longer than you anticipated, I think. And David, it's always great to see you.
Yeah, you did great. They're great individuals that help us. So I, I just leave it to maybe first Mike. Because I know he has a shorter window and make sure the board has any questions that they might have answered. So, thank you.
Well, Mike, you're muted, you're muted. And just thank you for your support of the district.
There we go. I'll just jump right in. Mike Campo, Plazigan Sanderson, I'm a partner with the firm. Who was in charge of the audit this year. If you have your audits in front of you, I'm going to quickly run you through it and then. I will turn it over to the next person in line here. So I'm going to start on page twenty-two. This is a great schedule because it breakdown, it breaks down your general funds activity for the year. A budget to actual comparison of how the school district performed. One thing you'll notice is that you've got an original final budget. Essentially, when you look at that, the original budget is how it was presented to the voters. And, and then Department of Revenue. From there, you as board members, whether it's the acceptance of gifts, grants, donations, or just reallocation of appropriations from one. Function to another, the budget will get slightly modified. In total, I think you find that it's still, it's slightly higher and that's due to. I believe that's food service transfers. So. Moving on, I'm going to go to page fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five. What these do is that same schedule, it breaks it down into more detail. So you can look at the revenue and the, the expenditures. On a more detailed line than just by the function. Long and short of it, the school district ended the year with a fund balance, unassigned fund balance of just shy of eight hundred thousand. And I apologize for the jumping around, the way Gatsby requires us to present these reports, and we do jump around quite a bit. I'm going to take you back to page one, which is the independent auditor's report.
You can see this, right? Yeah, I tried it. Mike, I tried to support you.
You're doing a good job.
Appreciate it. It is tough. I do, I do jump around a little bit. I try to hit the high points because anyone who's gone through these reports know. There's a lot of information in there and Gatsby doesn't always make it easy to understand. So I try to hit the most important parts first. So here we're on the independent auditor's report. If you scroll down to the bottom of that page, the second to last section, opinions. This is really, at the end of the day, why you bring in an independent auditor is to give you an assessment of your financial statements. Are they fairly stated in all material respects? And we are glad, pleased to, to, yes, in fact, everything was, was fairly stated in all material respects. So from there, in terms of the financials, I know you've each had a chance to review it. Are there any questions specific to the financials? I know there's a few new board members here. The first time you take a look at an audit report, as I said, it, it can be a little bit. Overwhelming, to say the least. You have a lot of jargon in there that probably isn't common for day-to-day. Discussions, but I'd like to open it up. If any board members have questions related to the audit specifically, please, by all means.
Just one thing, as you're looking for the questions. The firm and Mike support us throughout the year. One of them, I think Michelle's very comfortable doing. And she's taught me is to reach out, like we often says, oh, let's call the auditors or let's call in. And Mike, just thank you. You've, you've helped us so much during the year about how to, how to handle a certain case. Because we want to make sure that we do it the right way. And, and when you go to Michelle Clark College, that's what you learn. So. But Mike, I just wanted to notice that you just don't help us at the end of the year. This relationship is throughout the entire year.
And, and I would like to just kind of jump on that point. That, that's actually something that I encourage of all my clients. I would rather talk to the Hopington School District's management twelve times throughout the year than get to audit time and find out we have something that. Could have easily been addressed before. And I will say, I, my firm does, I believe it's a hundred and eighty government audits across the state of New Hampshire. Of varying sizes from this Manchester School District to the town of Lyman. So we, we, if, if it's out there, we've done it. So with that, what I can tell you is that I work with a lot of people, some really very talented people and some really not talented people. Who, who struggle. And, and what I would like to share with everyone on this board is I don't know that the board always realizes what they have in their, their own backyard. Your, your management is, does a fantastic job. They really do. In terms of the audit, they are always prepared. We try to come up with new questions every year. We look at it from different angles. We, we insist on bringing in different people. I, I think over the past three years, Michelle, you've probably worked with close to twelve different staff members from my team. And that's on purpose because we don't want to do the same audit year in and year out. And what we find every single time we come with a question is not only does Michelle and management have an answer, but it's well supported too. It's not just a case of, oh, this has just happened because of this. They're able to provide evidence. When, when we're doing an audit, we're looking for persuasive audit evidence, and that's never an issue when it comes to the Hopington School District. You really have a very special team over at the district office and. I, I say this, not, not all that frequently. It's a very special team that not everyone has. Because there's a lot of very challenging audits that we do on an annual basis. So with that, I, any questions?
Mike, I don't have a question, but I, I will have a comment. So in the short time I've been on the board, I've heard lots of people ask questions about finances and, and the mechanics of it all. This was incredibly instructive. So, you know. I've never read an audit report before. Funny that, but it was really a good tool to understand the budget and the process and where money goes. And why it went there. Just, so it's really, really helpful for me. And I'm sure for people in the community. You may not say, hey, let me go read the audit report, but it's probably not a bad idea.
I, I would agree. And I would also say that when you look at the audit report, towards the front of the report, you find a section called management discussion and analysis. I highly encourage anybody who's reading the audit to spend time on that. Because that really brings a lot of what occurred into more common terminology. I think really Michelle does a fantastic job at it. In fact, I use hers as a, an example for many clients who are looking to either start an M D N A. Or who needs some help with how to do one. So, I mean, it really is well worth the reach. He puts a lot of time and effort into it and frankly, it shows.
Thank you. And, and Rob, I agree. When I first became superintendent, I read the audit as well. And I found it very instructive. Absolutely. I'm a hundred percent with you. And I appreciate working with Mike, working with Michelle for all these years. I've learned so much on this end and appreciate that we can pick up the call to you, Mike, and your team and get an answer proactively, not reactively at the end.
Absolutely.
And you've been a great support for us. And thank you for coming tonight. And we'll get you out of here so you can go into your next one.
I appreciate that. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks for sticking around. We really appreciate it.
Bye now.
Bye.
And up next is our, our district treasurer. And, and Dave's been doing it for quite a while. And for someone who's accessible, once I remember you came out of the camping to come in and sign a manifest, Dave, I don't know if you remember that. You actually came out of the woods to help us out and get something done. And you're always accessible. And I know the team enjoys working with you. Tonight he'll talk about the assets in his work. And then we have five just policies to reauthorize.
The one plus side of coming in to sign meant that I could go home and take a shower. So I didn't mind coming back from a camping trip. And Mike covered a lot of it. And he's, he's, he said what I've been saying for years. There, there's no question that we have a tremendous group working at the S C U office. When, when I see within. The, the financial statements that, that. Transactions were, were authorized, even though we were battling with COVID nineteen and, and doing things externally. Or via email or however we're doing it. The, the policies didn't slip. If, if they were going to slip, it would be during this period. It just, it just shows how hard, how hard the office works. We've got a great staff. We've got experience. We've got segregation and duties. We've got all the, all the right pieces in place to, to make sure that. Ultimately, my job is to make sure that the, the monies are protected or, or, or properly authorized and, and, and spent in the right direction. So. Hearing Mike say what he said, and I've been saying it for years and, and I'm in complete agreement. The clean opinion is, I'm not sure how many clean opinions you'd have if you looked at all the, the school board, the, all the financial statements. Across all the, the school districts. I, I think we'd be certainly in the upper echelon for that. And we adopt the new Gatsby procedures as they come through. We're very, very proactive that way. So I, I guess unless someone has any questions. Do I need to propose to adopt the, the financial statements or?
No, it's on the agenda already, Dave, but we have the, the, the five policies of fund balance, fixed assets, transfer of funds, bid investment. And in full transparency, this came from the audit. We've always done a couple of policies, but they reviewed and said we have these five to do. And actually, one of them says we have to do every year. I'm sorry, I missed that one, but we're catching up now and they're all set to be reauthorized tonight. They're all. We've revised them periodically based on best practice and Michelle's leadership, but I think they're in great shape to be reauthorized.
I, I agree. I, I've read through the ones that are up for, to, to, to be voted on. I mean, investment, obviously we do every year. And I think that that's critical. And it's probably one of my bigger roles as treasurer. So. And I appreciate that Michelle takes it as, as seriously as I do. Do we need to go through the, the different policies? Or?
I think we're all set. Yeah, maybe just ask if there's any questions or, or comments in any of those policies that we're set to approve tonight. Hearing none. That's, that's a good sign. Anything else, Steve or Dave?
That's it, Dave. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dave, for all that you do as well.
You're welcome. And thank you. And it's been eye opening, sitting through for, for a couple hours. It's. You, you've got quite a, you, you've got quite a job ahead of you. And I appreciate the time and the, and the passion you have for it, all of you.
Thank you. And you're welcome back anytime.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Appreciate your service very much.
Yep, you're welcome.
Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Rob, thank you for that. And Jim, thank you for that reorganization. I know it's.
It was good. So I, I think to Rob's good suggestion, I, I guess I would ask, actually not to ask. I'm going to put us in recess for five minutes. So if we could come back. But my suggestion is everybody just take themselves off video and that we come back at seven forty-five. And I'll restart our meeting. But thank you, everybody. And thanks, everybody who's hanging on. I'm still. Watching. Look at the punctuality. All right. Well, it looks like we're all back. Rob, thank you for that suggestion. I think. I think everybody probably feels a little bit better.
Thank you.
So again, just to put us back on the agenda and where we're where we are and where we're going. So we're going back up on the agenda. We're going to go to item nine under board items for board discussion. We are going to continue for the next presentation on our F Y twenty-two operating budget. So I'm going to hand it over to everybody. Switch places on my screen. I'm going to hand it over to Steve, who is now in the wrong place. I'll put you right. And Steve, you're muted right now.
See. So we're going to share the screen. Can you see the F Y budget development? Terrific. So thanks. So. We're gonna go back now to the second stage in the development of the F Y twenty-two Hopkins School Board Budget. Last week, we did the expense side. We talked about that for a while. So um, tonight. We've got some had some to do's. Michelle and I had some to do's and Donna from last week's meeting. We're going to go through those. We're going to talk about some revenue projections. We're going to talk about trusts and I'm just I'm going to talk a little bit about the warrant. And hopefully get some direction from the board for the next steps. Everybody okay? So, let's see. So from last week, one of the questions, I think it was Norm asked, how many. Projectors, the screen projector projectors were in about eight in the budget total. So it also was a question about the superintendent cuts. So here's a memo and I'll make this available. So and I call this tier zero because that's usually the starting point from where we go. So. At Harold Martin School, we cut about twenty-one hundred dollars in supplies, some books. Some miscellaneous, that's like the rotary flag we cut every year and things like that. And then some program materials, about ten thousand dollars. Maple Street, we cut some program materials, about five thousand. And staffing, there was a request for an additional person. And I asked for some restructuring to remove that, to reduce that staff member. If you remember, we have two additional support staff in the budget. The middle high school, we moved some furniture to the repair and maintenance trust. That's our mode now with with furniture is we move it to the trust and we purchase it there. Music rises for the chorus group. We we I cut, I cut some equipment and some books. High school furniture and I cut four thousand dollars worth of athletic equipment. Student services, Mandy and I look together. We made some contacts and dug deep about some tuition and some contracted service. We reduced. Technology, we moved the phone system to the repair and maintenance trust. The district-wide technology, that was a twenty-five thousand dollars to start gradually. Purchasing Chromebooks, removing that, hopefully to a technology trust. We'll talk a little about that tonight. We moved some water filling stations to Esser Grants because now we only we need filling stations. We. The old water fountains, you know, when you drink over the little fountain, we don't use that anymore. One of the things that Michelle and I have always been doing. It would be great if we could support food service with some funds because we have to transfer it essentially comes out of fund balance. But we've never been at a point where we can add a hundred thousand. That's about a teacher and a budget. So. We talk about it, but I remove it from the budget and which means we rely on the fund balance. And then if you remember during the process, at one point, it was a three percent non-union raise and then. Just based a look at in in the town and and analysis, we moved that to two. So altogether, it's revisions in the super from the principals to me was about two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Norm, does that work for you as a form that you want for the superintendent's cut? Is that okay?
That is great, Steve. Thank you so much for preparing that.
Seth, you asked just to take a look at where we are on required versus necessary. And I use those terms because there's not anything nothing that's really not necessary, but there's things that aren't required. So the New Hampshire Retirement System was a big driver. That's two hundred and fifty-two thousand. So. It's required, but in full transparency, the board has control over F T Es, right? So whatever the percentage of the salary is required. But if you reduce ten teachers, that would reduce the retirement. Or you would do reduce ten superintendents. I don't mean to pick on teachers tonight at all. If you reduce administrators, but you know what I'm saying, the F T E is the. Is the choice, but the the by law, we have to participate in the New Hampshire Retirement System. The building project is required. The board voted. We ventured into contracts. With Bonnet Page and Stone, who's given contracts. So yes, we have to go out for that bond at this point. Everybody okay? P P E required and necessary. So we have entered, as Rob alluded to, an M O A. And in the M O A, it says the district will purchase and have available for our staff a certain amount of P P E. The the amount a hundred thousand is Michelle's best guess and where we are, the amount could change, but we do have to have P P on hand to fulfill our agreement with our. Staff that we would provide P P E. Everybody okay? Instructional assistance, these are required legally mandated responsibilities through federal law. So these are required. Out of district tuition is required. Now, transportation is a little funky in that RSA one eighty-nine colon six requires. Transportation from anyone grades one through eight who live more than two miles. So if the board wanted to, it could say, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to, it is not required that we transport high school students. And it is and it's funky. It's not even required in law that you do kindergarten students. That's because kindergarten wasn't is not compulsory, right? It's still, even though we have full day, that's how they do that. Now, the question is, would that save? So the 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 way, you know, you have K through, we have one through eight kids spread throughout the town. And on that way is juniors and seniors and freshmen and sophomores. But you could increase the routes and reduce some of the number of routes, right? I mean, I think we've always tried to have the routes about an hour and ten minutes ish is the max, but you could, and some districts have tried. And but there is also in this eighty-six thousand dollar increase. Special education transportation, which is in there and some of that is required. So that's why it's a sort of a required but necessary. Everybody okay with that description?
Steve, out of that eighty-six, just curious, like an ish is fine, but how much of that is the required special ed versus the? You know, increases in.
I rely on Ms. Clark's wonderful, fast research. So she'll get that number for us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
That's why we're a good team, Michelle. Up next, third grade teacher. It is not required. I think it's necessary because of where we are in projected enrollment, but that third grade teacher is not required. The numeracy assistant isn't, there's no law that requires we have a numeracy assistant. I think it is necessary. We're data driven. We know that math is particularly difficult to deliver in a global pandemic. We've had the numeracy assistant with less compelling needs, to be honest with you. It's pretty compelling now because we had it. Every year, but this year, actually, for a while. And having a numeracy assistant allows a full-time person focused on math support in each elementary school every day. But again, it's not required. I can't look in the eye and say it is required by statute. Seth, does that help?
Yeah, so it demonstrates that a high a high percentage version, you know. Of what is what is new to the budget are required expenses.
Yes, without question. You know, I it's it's, you know, the first six hundred and fifty is right, you know, P P E. Bond and on retirement, there you go. So it's it's pretty easy to explain this increase.
Yeah, I just think that's a good way to show that our decision making is somewhat limited in some sense.
And this special adds about sixty-five thousand.
Ding ding. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The last last piece of homework that I think we had, Jim, you wanted the census. Homeschool census by grade, ten kindergartners, five fifth. And so forth. Now, what's interesting about homeschool? So and this has changed since I've been superintendent. Early in the in my career. Each year, the homeschool families had to present evidence of academic progress. And that changed. Now there's very little oversight in the homeschool or in the homeschool procedures. They have to notice a district once that you're homeschooling. So it's possible that someone who noticed on this list has moved out of Hopington. And it's also possible that someone noticed another district has moved into Hopington because you don't have to notice every time you move. Many do, though. I mean, I'm not trying to be, many do notice every year and and some and and some do notice when they move into town. But there's no requirement to notice except once. So I could notice, you know, in first grade and then seven years later, I could move out of town. I may never know what you moved out of town because there's there's not a. Every year in the past, I would have get a usually an assessment. There's companies that provide homeschool assessments and I would actually review the assessment and to see if there's demonstrated academic progress. But not anymore. It's very laissez faire now. Jim, does that help? Is that okay?
No, that's great. And I guess just a follow-up question is like. Prior to the pandemic, so the fifty fifty feels like a lot.
And I'm sure we're up about thirty. We're up about thirty.
So twenty twenty average on on normal time. So. And again, this is, I'm just. Are you anticipating if if, you know, come September, you know, things are back back to somewhat of a normalcy? And we're seeing, you know, students back in the building that 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 we would go back to that around twenty. I mean, is that your anticipation?
Very many of the notices is Steve were doing this during the pandemic, you know. They often say, we're not unhappy with you, Steve. I mean, these people are very, they're very nice because I think they, you know, so. Most of them has said that this is work where we are now for what's going on in our family and our health conditions. And I can't say all of them will be back, but I would say, yes, the majority would be back.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Thanks for putting that together, too. I appreciate it.
So that was the homework from December three. If I missed anything, and Don and I were happy to, we'd happy to provide more homework. So we're going to talk about revenue and we're going to highlight and Rob and Norm, I'm sorry, this is going to be pretty close to what you saw yesterday and Michelle too. But we're going to highlight some. Let's see. So here's the one of my favorite sheets that Michelle does. Can you guys see the numbers? Is that okay or is it pretty? So this is the revenue component and we list from revenues from local sources, state sources, federal sources, other financing. And this is down here. Soon we'll get to the estimated tax impact. And I'm just going to highlight some changes, the deltas, because when we're dealing with revenue, we're talking about delta. If the exact same revenue came, there'd be no impact on the tax rate. If you get more revenue. The tax rate goes down, you get less revenue, the tax rate goes up. So this is a big delta that we work with. So we're going to talk about the very beginning. And so the food service, if you look on the M S twenty-four, it was three sixty-five. This year, we're able to account for an increase of revenue a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, how did that happen? And I really appreciate Jim and Rob and Norman and and just that last year embracing this. We got some information very late in the tax setting process about. From from Health Trust, we got a hundred thousand dollars. And we had that hundred thousand dollars and through some clerical, just some, just how we managed, there's another fifty thousand dollars that we put in a savings account. That would be for to account for some of the revenue for for food service because we knew food service was going to change. So we saved some money that were coming out and that's going to help us this year. If we didn't do that. We would have had a hundred, another hole, a revenue hole, but because of Michelle and the board's agreement. That we actually defrayed some of our revenue hole by putting that money from Health Trust and other we found at the last. You know, at the very end of the setting project process, that we have an increase there of a hundred and fifty. And we don't anticipate having that again. So we're down, but we were able to have the hundred and fifty. Here's the big one. Everybody okay? This is the big one. This is the nine twenty-two. That is the state adequate education grant known as adequacy. And it was three point two million. And this year it's projected to be two point three million. It's a revenue hole of nine hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. That is the six hundred and forty that we anticipated. I mean, we we've been pretty honest about that. And then I would say it is average daily membership. It's connected to that. It also could be connected to all the the differentiated aid. Free reduced, you know, by a low free reduce count. Remember, Rob and Norm, we went through that. You get extra for free and reduced. The free and reduced numbers are down because it's no one has to fill out an application, right? It was free for everybody this year. So that created the the revenue hole of nine hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. The next one I want to look at for is this line three ninety-two and that's fund balance. And oh, I want to get back. I'm sorry. I want to get back here. So the board has. A lot of jurisdiction over some of these values. That number nine twenty-two is the minimum amount we're going to receive. It's ninety-five percent of the adequacy. And we won't get less than that. So that is, and 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 this is a pejorative, that's a conservative estimate. Some years we've done ninety-five. When we went down a few years ago, we went down eight hundred and eighty kids. We were doing ninety-five percent of the adequacy because we weren't sure we were going to get the enrollment growth necessary to go to a hundred percent. Some years when we started to build back up and get over a thousand kids. We felt confident that our trend in enrollment was up. We were going to get the maximum adequacy. The board has discretion of putting in this, this is an estimate, either ninety-five percent or a hundred percent. You couldn't do a hundred and twenty percent of adequacy. That wouldn't help us out, but you could do a hundred percent. And I think Michelle figured that out yesterday. The difference there is about a hundred thousand. If we went to a hundred.
Hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Hundred and twenty-four. You are the best. So there's a delta there. If we went a hundred percent adequacy, you could. Put a hundred and twenty-four thousand, you've went ninety-five, it's nine twenty-two, but you could also do half. And go ninety-seven and a half and kind of be somewhere in between. So the board can pick somewhere in that gap. And Michelle and I and and I think you guys. Um, and Michelle and I, and, and I think you guys would enjoy being in the Zoom office today when Michelle and I going back and forth. Come on, ninety five, ninety seven and a half, a hundred, how am I, and so, um, I, I think Michelle would probably stay closer to ninety five. I would probably go to ninety seven and a half. I do think the enrollment's going to be up next year. I don't think it's necessarily for a hundred percent, but I would be comfortable going to ninety seven and a half because of our trends and where we are. Number of homeschool kids and everything we just talked about. It's a board choice though. Everybody okay? So that's the adequacy. You have somewhere between ninety five and a hundred percent to fact. Now, in the past, the budget, some members of the budget committee have been pretty aggressive, pretty convicted, about a hundred percent. Just put a hundred percent and put a hundred percent in. Okay, we try to budget conservatively. We want to make sure that we meet our tax rate expectation. So here we are. Um, this is the fund balance. And then, and you know, Mike just talked about it and as Rob said, Mike Campolo, and what Rob said, the fund balance in the audit, it's an audited number. And you can see where it came from. But a few years ago, we were at five twenty six. And so this means it's also after the hundred and fifty thousand dollars of food service. Right? Because we have to have money in food service. And, um, so this year it's three ninety two. This time last year, this meeting last year, Michelle and I proposed a hundred and fifty thousand fund balance going all the way from four sixty down to a hundred and fifty, which costs, you know, three hundred thousand dollars on the tax rate, but we wanted to reset it. And we reset it because we got that six hundred and forty thousand dollars of revenue from the state. We thought it was a good time to reset. That budget failed. We looked at savings due to COVID. We presented those savings in the budget and we raised the fund balance, reduced the tax rate last year. At the second iteration of the budget to three ninety two. Everybody with me? So here, I'm comfortable if the board wants, and this is stuff you can think about, but we've got to start making decisions, making this four ninety two. That would be another hundred thousand. Why? We just got lots of grant money. That, to be honest with you, and I'm not trying to be a numbskull, the decision you make about sports saves salary. It saves, um, transportation, right? I mean, there are savings to that, that, that we won't spend, so that goes to fund balance. But that's something for the board to think about. And remember, every hundred thousand dollars you add in some of these categories is thirteen cents on the tax rate. Everybody with me? So we've got, thank you, Michelle, a hundred and fifty, which helps some. We've got the nine twenty two. You've got to figure out your comfort level and risk. Is it ninety five percent, seventy, ninety seven and a half, a hundred? What are you comfortable about fund balance? Like if you went to, and everything you do for fund balance next year, if you don't make it, you're putting, you're impacting your tax rate. So like this, this budget, FY twenty one, Michelle and I, if we will, wanted to eat three hundred thousand dollars worth of fund balance to reset it. And that was thirty nine cents on the tax rate, but we had the six forty to offset it. You with me? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead, Ziff.
So next year, if this was four ninety two and you could only have three ninety two, you would be starting with a thirteen cents increase on the tax rate before you start the budget process. And what we did, remember, for a couple of years, we froze the budget right away. One year, we put half of the kindergarten teacher in contingency. We hired a kindergarten over the summer, Michelle and I, and she caught, and I was wrong and she was right. We froze the budget in September first. Because we had to pay for staffing increases over the summer that we went half, half a contingency, half off budget. So that's what you have to worry about, is making sure you don't go too high here. And then you can't meet that or you're freezing a budget, not implementing what the voters want. Everybody okay?
Yes, Steve, can I ask on the adequacy? I totally understand it. I get your point. I'm just curious over the years, um, as you guys have, you know, budgeted that different ways or at least, you know, assessed the risk in different ways. Has, has that number ever come in, I guess, under the hundred percent?
Yeah, um, I think this year.
This year.
This year.
Yeah.
And, um, there's been at least one, if not two others in the past.
But we were, we had higher revenue in other places. There, there, some estimates come in other places that, that came, but in full honesty, I don't think we haven't met the tax rate impact estimate that Michelle and I have been doing this together for twelve years. It's been close. Some years we've beaten it. I mean, remember once we said like a four cents and we came in under, people won't believe this, but their tax rate went, school tax rate went down one year, honest.
Sort of a similar question to the one I just asked, but I guess asking it maybe a little different. Have we, have you, has it come in, I guess, less than ninety five percent, um, even in those years? I, I just wondering, like, even though there's flux, it can't. Okay, so you're guaranteed that rate.
Yes.
Ninety five percent. Okay, thank you.
But I don't, I don't even know if it ever came below that and we got, you know, the, the government. I think we're okay on that. But yes, so the statute says that they have to tell us by a certain date what the minimum is. And it can't go below that minimum now. And that, it's, it's interesting to watch other work, like, um, Michelle and I have never hedged on the GMR. If, right, until we know the GMR, but, uh, very early in my superintendency, another superintendent said, uh, we never budget the full GMR. We budget half the GMR and hope, and then they got, you know, so we don't do that either. Because everything, this is a very tight, there isn't, well, as you heard from Mike, this is a tight budget. We budget what we know and what we need. So, um, everybody okay? The adequacy, the fund balance. And the next piece here is this article ten. This is the three ninety four. This is a savings account in the Hopkins School Board last spring. Or maybe summer, it might have been summer, but anyway, spring or summer made what I think was a great decision to put the most money in history of the district away. So this four hundred could, this a hundred here and a little more adequacy really does the best we can to compensate for that six forty. You know, we couldn't get to the, you know, this is a lot more than, you know, this is, you know, two hundred and eighty thousand more because of the differentiated aid and enrollment.
Steve, how much, I, just if you can refresh my memory, because I don't remember, how much, how much did we put into the, um, article ten account last?
Two thirty six?
It's right there, yep.
Oh, it is.
I get a ding ding, right?
Well.
Ding ding.
I should have seen it was right in front of me too.
No, no, I only know because I, I do it, but.
And so we didn't use, and that was another thing we did last year, and I appreciate the board. We didn't take anything out last year. And because any, so, and, and Michelle, Michelle and I are talking about two hundred thousand dollars here. Taking two hundred, taking a hundred in fund balance, taking about me, I don't know if Michelle's with me, about fifty on the adequacy. Gets you three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to reduce that eight hundred and seventeen down about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And hope, as Rob has said, hope that there is some state budget leeway or federal government for loss of revenue. Or, and I've been told by representative that they are going, there's going to be a bill filed to make adequacy the same as last year. That would be a nine hundred thousand dollar hit for us. Now, I don't know if it's going to pass, and I'm not trying to be rose colored, but, you know, those are things that could happen along this little journey. And if Jim says it's not going to happen, I would believe him because he told me about retirement and you know a lot more than I do about that side of the aisle. Everybody okay? I'm going to go back, um, so.
Can I ask a question about, uh, article ten and you?
Yes.
There's, um, so how much did you feel comfortable if we were to, were to draw from that?
A two hundred. The reason why that gives you, I think, well, you know, we're going to try to put more in. We'll talk about the warrant in a minute. So you're going to, and at least you can divide this, you're not selling yourself down the road that you couldn't match it next year if you had to. If you go three hundred, then you're saying, I don't know if I'm going to be able to match it because everything about revenue is delta. And if you do it this year, if you don't match it, then you're raising your tax rate next year. So cutting that in half, I'm very comfortable with because at least no matter what happens, you could over two years match it and then see where you are. Does that, does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. Well, sorry. So those are the major pieces of revenue. We explained why there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the food service. We got some late money and we put it away because we had to, we knew we were going to have a hole in state revenue. We talked about adequacy. We talked about fund balance. We talked about the tax rate. Those are the major decisions the Hopkins School Board needs to make regarding the revenue portion of the budget. Everybody okay? So the next piece, and this is what Norm talked about, so we have a CIP planning document and I apologize that I haven't been able to scare, we have time to put Michelle, Jim and Andrea and I'm in the same room to go through the CIP. And we may have some time on Monday, maybe we want to do it on Monday. But, um, we, Michelle and Noah have done a great job, uh, continue work on the CIP. So the CIP is fully transparent. It's on the website, um, and it's a planning tool. So this is forecasting. This is not allegedly, this is not binding. It's not, but it is a planning tool. And right now, we have, and, and this is the town, the, the CIP definition comes from the Hopington CIP Committee. And, and I think, Jim, you actually spoke to them this year, I think, if, if the memory serves. Or maybe you presented the CIP to the budget committee. I'm sorry.
I'll take your word for it. I probably did. Yeah, I did talk to CIP somewhere. I think it was to the budget committee.
Yeah. So we have about thirty five thousand dollars in Harold Martin School planned. We have a hundred and ninety eight thousand, and that's some paving, some classroom furnishing, and we have an oven. At Maple Plan, some paving, some furnishings. Um, actually the controls I should have deleted. I'm sorry. That's, uh, we'll talk about, we moved that to another year. Skylights that came through our facility project and, and then, uh, uh, our rooftop, two rooftop units. RTU is a magic acronym. It's just rooftop unit for a hundred and five planned. Middle High School planned four hundred and seventy thousand, paving, furnishings, refrigerator, dishwasher. These two, the AC and the CU, those have to do with the R twenty two, which is the air conditioning. That if it goes, they don't, you don't replace it with R twenty two. You have to change the type of freon and type that's in there. So we're okay, but if it ever goes, it goes. We can't fix it anymore. The SAU, we're talking about doing some roofing and some siding. And the technology, we're talking about a firewall, some switches, and this is the twenty five thousand dollar device replacement. So that's planning. Will we have four hundred, you know, five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars to spend? No. So then Andrea, Jim, Michelle and I will, will move some of this out over time and, and reprioritize. But how do we fund it? We fund our, may our CIP through the building maintenance, uh, the school district repair and maintenance fund. So this is the funding mechanism. We don't fund it in the budget. We fund some things in the budget, but typically our savings account here. So, um, this year, if we finish all our planned, um, projects, we will, we'll have no less than a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars at the end of this year. Next year, on those, on their funding, we plan for three hundred thousand dollars of expenses. If we do that, we'd have thirty two thousand dollars. If we don't add any money to it, we'd have thirty two thousand dollars at the end of our work, um, next year. The big factors, big factors going forward are the R twenty two air conditioning. And we'll talk more when we have a subcommittee meeting about moving to open source controls and replacing a lot of our efficiencies, so we get every cent out of our, uh, HVAC and air conditioning. So Michelle and I are coming forward with a recommendation of two hundred thousand dollars. Last year was a hundred and forty two thousand. Um, this year it's two hundred thousand dollars. And Michelle, we're talking about this out of the budget, correct? Not out of fund balance?
Well, we've been kind of back and forth because of having, um, the grants come in.
Right.
Not the whole thing from the budget, but entertain some of it actually coming from fund balance.
Right, because we get so many grants.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we can put a hundred in the budget. We can put a hundred in fund balance because we just got that a hundred and thirty four thousand dollars. Um, you know, from the CARES and ESSA grant, so. So think about this one. So this now would be two hundred thousand dollars. Or, you know, where you want to take it, is it a budget increase or is it fund balance? Or do you want to reduce it? But we've heard loud and clear over the, especially the last few years, that maintaining the buildings is an appropriately high priority. And remember, this warrant article did pass on the very first swing through the budget and drive-through voting. If my memory serves.
So if we, and just to make sure I follow that in my own head, so if we, we stuck to the two hundred thousand dollars as the total, um, if we took a hundred from the fund balance, we would be, um, we would, we would be forty thousand dollars less. Um, ask, asking voters for forty thousand dollars less than we asked them last year to put in, although the, the total's more. But our, our ask is, is forty thousand dollars, um, in the negative. Okay.
And when we get the whole warrant, that's why, one of the things I love watching Michelle do is when we do the whole warrant, that's when we actually warrant to warrant. And that's the delta. Everybody okay? And, um, we can dig in more. Um, so now I'm starting the process of going through our trusts. This is the maintenance trust. The next one is special education trust. And Mandy and I spoke today. So we had, we had, uh, forty thousand dollars we put in right in the, if you remember, that was when we actually were meeting at the town hall. When we were, we were, uh, projecting from the town hall, remember that? And we put forty thousand dollars in. Our current funding level is a hundred and seventy. We're not recommending any additions this year. A hundred and seventy thousand dollars is a, is a good value. I think, uh, Michelle might correct me, but I think we've drawn on it twice. Um, in the, in my superintendency, so, and Mandy, we'd always like more, but we understand the budget constraints. And a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, has served us well as the self-insurance to unanticipated, uh, significant special education costs. It has served us well. So we are not recommending any warrant article on special education trust this year.
Steve, can I ask a question? My question shouldn't be an indication that I would support doing it, but it's, it's more of a, like, I guess it's a curiosity question. Are there any expense, new expenses that are coming up in this budget? Where the special education trust could fund some of those expenses because of, you know, the use of the fund was legally allowed. Again, I'm not recommending it. I'm just sort of curious.
Yeah, so our philosophy, um, has been budget what you know. And then like, I'll, I'll be honest, I pushed, I, I pushed Maple Street School, um, for reducing by a staff member. And we think we're okay and Amy's, uh, we're going to, she's going to do the very best we can, but in October, if she goes to Mandy and says, we can't do it, then we have the trust for that position. So I wouldn't, we would not want to plan an expense out of the trust. That's just too much risk. But is it possible? Yes. Could you reduce our budget by a hundred thousand and plan to take it out? That would, in my mind, defeat the purpose of the trust? Because it's there for the unanticipated need. Uh, I was pointing to it. You can't see I'm pointing, but it's the, if, if, if we took this seriously, if it's unanticipated, if it's anticipated, you put in the budget. Does that make sense?
No, it does. It, it totally makes sense, but, but, so you answered my question, so I appreciate that.
So, um, right now we're two hundred maintenance trust. Hundred percent board, just write your decision. This is Michelle and I battling it out. Toe to toe, like Norm said, boxing. Michelle and I are boxing through Zoom, battling it out. And we both agree and Mandy agrees, zero in special ed. It's a vehicle replacement. Whoa, sorry. The vehicle replacement. Um, now what we've done, and it's been a significant change, and you saw that in the presented, we went, we contracted out our fully accessible bus. And so our fleet, um, is right now, it has, actually two of our buses aren't used uh, obviously as much as they would have been because of COVID. So we are, um, we, we are looking to possibly replace the, I should say, the, we're, we're getting ready to replace our small fourteen passenger bus. Um, and we're ready to do that. We have enough funds to do that. We pushed the van out, actually, I think to twenty three. I'm sorry about that. Michelle and I battled this one. And then, and then I forgot to adjust the slide, but the most important thing here is we are not recommending any money in the vehicle replacement trust. Because we have enough money to purchase our neck, we ready to purchase the next vehicle and our vehicles are getting less miles now. So we are, uh, this year, we think we're okay because we reduced our fleet and our usage is down and we have enough to, uh, in, in reserve to replace our next in line. Everybody okay?
Yeah, and I guess my, uh, my, my question would be, so we've normally put, uh, normally put, we put
Fifteen grand.
Fifteen, twenty, yeah. And so if we skip this year, and we, and we go into the next vehicle purchase, we, we feel that we can continue on with that same sort of general level of fifteen thousand and meet the, the vehicle replacement needs. We do, okay.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I know it's not a big hit, but any little bit helps this year. So tax rate stabilization, this is what we already talked about. We got three hundred and ninety four in. We didn't use any last year and we're recommending two hundred. So tax rate stabilization, this is what we already talked about, we got three hundred ninety four in, we didn't use any last year, and we're recommending two hundred K out. Now, we are also, I put the two point five percent in blue, because we're going to talk about an article to raise that, to give, uh, five, raise it to five percent. Full of extent of the law, which is not a mon, it does not immediately have a financial impact, it just allows for more, uh, opportunity to stabilize for a longer term. But, um, we are not, everybody okay on the, on that one? So, um, Michelle and I are not bringing forward a contingency article as well. Um, to be honest, the contingency article didn't pass last year. It takes a lot of explaining, explanation, we've seen what happens when you put a lot in contingent and it rolls into the budget. Um, so we, and, and there are some different, I think, Andrew, you spoke into the different possible use of the tax rate stabilization fund too, there's been some changes there. So Michelle and I are not, uh, recommending a contingency article this year. So just to take a look at our warrant, um, article one is reports from agents. Article two will be the budget, right, and we have, uh, right now, an eight hundred thousand revenue and about a million dollar expense that we have to work on both sides. Um, article three and four will reserve for the HEA, that's our only, uh, contract that is currently in, that's in negotiations this year. The article three is the, um, if they come to agreement, is the monetary value, article four is the special meeting permission, so you don't have to go to the, um, the, the, the judge, I mean, sorry, the court. Everybody okay? Um, article six is what we've talked about, that allows the district to spend the interest on the project, about up to ten thousand dollars. Article seven would be the establishment of the Technology Expendable Trust Fund. Um, that's talking about putting twenty five thousand dollars in, and that would be from fund balance too, because that's a lot of grants, right, right, Michelle, supporting. Um, we've, we've got significant grant money, which we think helps that. And then article eight is the building repair and maintenance. And then art, the last one, article nine, is, uh, is supposed to say, oh, other business, it's supposed to say article nine, there, other business. So that's the article. So decisions about the revenue pieces, decisions about how much in the maintenance trust, decisions, do you support zero on special ed, zero on vehicle, zero on contingency. Brings us to the next step, what information, what can we do for you to help you get to the FY twenty two budget? Timeline, um, this, and I talked to both Norm and, and Rob this morning, this typically is the meeting in which you'd say, Steve. Let's take a look at, uh, the zero on the tax rate would be one point eight million, what's a dollar on the tax rate would be? Michelle doesn't like I want to do that, but it's about one point one million dollar cut, a fifty cents off, five percent on the tax rate would be a dollar fifteen, you know, whatever you guys want. Um, I'm not in love with the tiers, those who've been around me for a while, no, I'm not in love with it, but I serve at the pleasure. Last year, Rob, and to his credit, and over the summer, we did more of a menu, I think you described it, Rob, as a menu where we gave you just a list of stuff.
A la carte, Steve, a la.
A la carte, sorry, I, sorry. But that's where we are on this side, we did the expense, now we're in the revenue.
So Steve, I've got three or four things here. Um, we'll start with the, you know, where to go next, but I think before I get to where to go next, I want to, where we are now. So if I'm listening and between yesterday and today, and hearing it twice was really helpful. Um, so we've got an eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollar hole. And we can fill part of that hole through adequacy, fund balance, and article ten, right? So if I go, as a good poker player, go all in at a hundred percent, that's a hundred and twenty four K. And a hundred from fund balance and two hundred from article ten. So that decreases our hole from eight seventeen down to three ninety three. Right? Am I, am I good there?
I, I, I trust the process, and Michelle, I don't, I don't do numbers without Michelle, just.
All right, so, so let's just say my math is good, we had a hole of eight seventeen, we partially filled it with four twenty four, we're at three ninety three. We've got this bond, which is two eighty seven. So I'm thinking about tax rate now, and just the realities of what the town has agreed to. So we've got a pre-obligation of two hundred and eighty seven thousand. Um. Which is about thirty some cents on the tax rate. If we were to just say, you know, the three ninety three is what it is, and that's the increase in the budget. That's a fifty cent tax increase, if all things being equal, constant, correct?
Um, three hundred ninety three thousand is thirteen cents times that, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's about fifty cents, Michelle's right back there, but, so that, yeah, if you get the, you're talking about the revenue down to that.
So, so if we just, you know, that, that's what it was, we had to raise an additional three ninety three through taxes, we'd be at a fifty cent increase, correct?
Mike, that's just the revenue side, so the expense side is, what Steve presented on expense size last week was, was, I, I don't remember the number.
It was, it was a million dollars.
So a million, so we would be, if all things being equal, if we didn't touch the expense side, we would be a million, three ninety three.
Okay, all right.
Right, pretty, pretty close-ish.
Yeah, yeah, just.
Two grand off.
All right, now I'm going to walk back my example then, for now, because I gotta do more math. So to go to the tiers piece, I, I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I would like to see. You know, a list of things that you might reduce, that has a programmatic impact, and things that you might reduce that has administrative impact. And divide it into those categories. Um, again, with the focus being on, let's keep our schools functioning, uh, as they have been functioning, and what most of us would argue is quite well. Uh, as a way to move forward for, for that, instead of tiers where, you know, we're targeting certain amounts of money. Does that make sense?
Rob, what is just, I, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with your approach, I'm just, I'm wondering, like, what is, um, and I know we started this conversation a couple of months ago. Um, or just had the conversation a couple of months ago, just, you know, in terms of like percent increase, like, you know, kind of, in some ways, take the numbers. Um, the, the larger budget numbers out, like the dollar numbers, and think about percent increases, like where? This is probably not just for you, it's probably, it's for all of us, but you know, where, 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 what's a comfort zone? Um, either in percent increase, or it could be a, a flat dollar increase, I guess, but, because that might be helpful to, for some guidance for Steve, because he could also just give us. He had, in order to produce a list, either a tiered list, or a list like you're asking for, there would have to be. A number that we're, he, he is looking for, otherwise, the list could be as short or as long as he, he wishes to produce, and so. Like, is there, is there the sort of a, a place, even a range of a place that we're, we're trying to get to that may help with that type of exercise?
So before we go there, I think where I struggle a little bit is the, what we want to put for the other warrants. You know, because, you know, last year when we did this, but when we did the budget, you know, there was the budget, all these warrants, and it all affected the tax impact. So I, before we, you know, discuss necessarily the budget increase, you know, and the tax increase, right, increase, I'm looking at. You know, what is it that we're looking to put into these warrants as a dollar value? Because all that, you know, Jim, we talked about this before, that all has an impact on the tax rate, you know, what are we looking, um, to put into the repair maintenance account, you know, to, um, help with our schools, you know, and all that. Um, what are those other amounts that we're talking about that will have an impact on the bud, on, on the overall tax impact before we actually address the budget? That's kind of where I'm, I'm trying to, to see, because it all depends on, if we have to make changes in the budget, the outside. Um, other variable factors that go into the tax rate, does that make sense?
We're.
No, it does, but I think it was a hundred thousand, right?
Right, it's, the building repair is a hundred out of revenue, a hundred out of expense, and then we talked about twenty five thousand technology.
And then the only other one would be whatever, um, a, a, a contract that would come forward would have another cost, so those, that would be, I mean, it, it sounds like a hundred twenty five plus, plus the contract amount.
But I was under the impression we were going to create a, or did I miss that, we're going to make a, um, technology trust?
Yeah, it's a twenty five, I believe.
So twenty, so a warrant would be twenty five thousand to start?
Yeah, so it'd be technology.
Okay.
Would be twenty five thousand, then the hundred for the, the CIP account, the, the maintenance trust, and then. And then the last one is, right now, we, we don't have a number, um, for the, for the contract.
Okay, thanks, Jim, I'm just wrapping all the numbers in my head. Okay, so what, with, with those two factors, what is the impact? So thirteen cents for a hundred thousand, and then twenty five would be?
Three cents.
Uh, four, three cents, so we're looking at sixteen cents just on the warrants, minus any other agree, agreement that we have for a contract, correct?
Correct, you got that, yeah.
All right, so sixteen cents, okay, so sixteen cents, okay, that's where I just wanted to put a number down out, out there, thank you.
So the administrative piece. I mean, I don't know, I mean, we've cut, um, administrative support at Maple Street School two years ago, administrative support in the SAU office last year. Um, zeroed out the increases for, and so I don't know what's left in the admin, I don't know what's the definition of administrative stuff, Rob, that I could get you much to work on. All the four schools budgets are less than, uh, are, are down this year. Um, all, I mean, remember, high school was out, but that was because of where speech and psych was allocated. Um, so I'm just being honest with you, there's not much, that's not going to hit program, um, because there just isn't that much left.
Right.
And I'm not trying to be a numbskull, I'm really not.
I hear you, I think that, you know, when we saw the initial, how the budgets came through, people did what we asked them to do.
Right.
So that's already been done. I, I guess, and, and, you know, the, the numbers are swirling in my head a bit, but I, I keep coming back to the bond not being a driver towards cutting program. And how do we communicate that, you know, there's a Mendoza line in there to a certain degree, that, um, we, we have that increase that we have to deal with, and that's, that's present. And we're, that's really our starting point. And anything that happens after that, happens after that, you know? So if we did nothing, so I guess, may, maybe another way of saying it, um, a flat budget this year would be the increase in the bond and nothing else. That was, to me, that's what a flat budget would be, because we were pretty obligated to that. Then my, my other way of thinking, and this is really sort of messaging upfront, is we, we didn't have an increase last year. So whatever happens this year is really, you know, what, what an increase is over two years, and what's reasonable for that? So normally, you know, Jim, we might say we always want to be under four percent or under three percent. But what do we want to be under across a two-year time period?
Yeah, no, that's, that's one way of looking at it, and, um, yeah, and I don't know, I mean, it's a good question.
I mean, do we want to go through the scary process that we went through the last time and said, you know? Show me the cuts to get us to to a flat budget, I mean, I think that provoked a lot of things, um, and, and probably not a path to move forward through this, this time around. I think we need to be realistic that we've had increases, um, and perhaps they can be trimmed.
So.
Yeah, I think a flat budget look would, I mean, that would just be a, I mean, it would be a shocking number, it would be huge. Um, just because, in, in, just because, you know, we have, I think, you know, six, seven hundred thousand dollars, um, of of costs that are happening to us, you know, because of, of retirement and because of the bond. Um, plus the, the loss of revenue, and that, that's a very large number, that would be, I mean, it's a million dollars, probably a little over a million dollars, and that would all be program. Um, because there, there really isn't an alternative, um, to it, so. So I, I, I'm not sure going through the flat budget exercise, um, would be helpful, only because of, I mean, it might uncover some, some items, but it would be pretty dramatic.
So I don't want to steal Rob's thunder, because Rob has, I want, Rob to have an opportunity to talk about this, but this is important, and if I miss it, I apologize. But we should have a discussion about early retirement, you know, this does have repercussion to the, um, you know, to the budget for the, um, next year and for this year. Because it does take some money out of, um, our unreserved fund balance. Um, I will, I, I know he's doing a finance committee meeting, but it is really important that we do have this discussion now, um, to talk about how that does an impact for us, and the opportunity that would help us. So is it, would this be appropriate time to talk about this, Rob?
Right, I mean, I think it's, whether it's now or later, it's, it's going to be the same.
I think it's an important discussion to talk about, okay.
So Steve can jump in, so we talked about the early retirement, and by contract, we offer three. Um, and there's a budgeted amount of money that's set aside for that, because the tiers, it begins at fifty five and goes up to sixty four, and the numbers, you know, it begins at forty five thousand and then moves down in progressive fashion. Um, we've had five people apply. And so if we were to grant all five. It would cost us an additional, I think Michelle said, sixty thousand dollars, uh, so that would have to come out of current fund balance. But then, when you look at the projection of new hires, and those are across different, uh, steps and scales, depending upon what the person is. We would save this year, or moving into next year, approximately fifty thousand dollars. So it would be essentially a net wash, we'd be giving up something in fund balance now, but we'd be saving on the contractual side down the road, and more importantly, we'd be saving that fifty or sixty thousand dollars compounding over the coming years, which is, you know, and we've talked about slowing the growth of the budget. That's the most important part, or at least one of the most important parts of doing that, because obviously, it's seventy five percent of our costs. Um, Steve and I have talked, and Norm have talked about, you know, reaching out to, uh, teaching universities, um, to their placement offices, and just saying, you know, this is what we've got projected in terms of opening, so maybe we could do even better if we're getting people in the early stages of their career. Uh, so UMass Lowell, and Franklin Pierce, and UNH, and Plymouth, and Keene. Um, looking to let them know as early as possible, and let their students know that we would have five potential positions. Now, it doesn't necessarily mean that all five would take, and they don't need to, um, you know, officially let us know March first. But perhaps we could at least get a sense of that earlier for, for planning purposes. So that that's in the mix as well.
Yeah, if we were to do that, and this is a Michelle question, um, and, and we wanted to allocate the fund balance, as, as sort of you guys just laid out, um, you know, amongst, amongst some of the different accounts. Would we have enough left in fund balance to do, um, early buyouts for, for the additional two teachers that aren't budgeted?
Yeah, based on what's, we've known already, you know, the grants and stuff, but also things not proceeding in a way we all would like about in-person learning, which has expenses in time. We're, we're going in a, in a way that makes me comfortable that we would be fine with that, um, aside from the other things that we just talked about.
Okay.
And, you know, based on Steve and Michelle's feeling, they don't think all five will accept, maybe, um, four. Um, you know, we, we, Steve wanted us to kind of maybe wait a week before, a week before we make this offer. Um, but he would maybe put a little bit of pressure on it, maybe just to temperature check, maybe to see where they are with that, because it does help us with the budget and process, you know, if we have a feel for that.
But I appreciate, and I agree with Michelle, hundred percent, um, that we would have enough, so, um, with that. The, the, so the, the guidelines for the early retirement program are, you have to notify everybody at once. So you couldn't do three people tonight and two people next week, and then, oh, if they don't accept. So if the board's comfortable, we could add an action item tonight to award all five, the only thing, you just, just, as, as, as are your consular areas, is Michelle, know your advice, we just have to be ready to award them if all five take it.
That's right.
Do I think all five will take it? It, to be honest with you, it's been a few years in a row now that people pull it. Somebody I'm looking at right now on the screen pulled it one year, I think, that you, that you asked for it, so. The pulling of it is not unusual, and I think in the first eight years, Michelle, nobody did. It's kind of a new strategy, the, the pull of, of retirement, so.
Can I ask a question that may be dumb, but I'm not afraid to ask dumb questions, so if we had five, um, right now, and we offered them all, and, and four took it. Um, can we, I mean, can, uh, can we offer that one slot that we have available? Um, is that, is that an option, um, to offer that to somebody else, like, again, to say we have an early retirement slot, and somebody who may have been thinking about it, that may. I'm just wondering, is, is that allowed in sort of the CBA, and how, that, how this operates?
Yeah, we have opened up early retirement outside of the window. Yeah, we have opened up early retirement outside of the window. We did that. We had some staffing budgets. If you remember, Michelle, we opened it up in the spring and someone did pop it. So uh, because it's voluntary and there's really no negativity, you know, there's no uh negative to a member of the H E A when I've gone to Scott or Richard or Carl. We're not making them take it. So it's only of benefit. So you can open it. The, so yes, and so I'm sorry, that's a long answer to a, a very quick question. So yes, but if we do do, and, and I wouldn't, typically, to be honest with you, typically, we, we offer it tonight. Tonight is the meeting. We do vote on early retirement. We didn't this year just because of the five and weren't sure we were ready to do the five. And uh, Michelle and I were leaning to doing the five. Um, but, but I'm, I think we're both comfortable. If you want to add an action item toward the five, we could do that. And that would start the clock uh ability, as Rob said, to say, you know, there's some people might say yes tomorrow, you know, it's been a bad day. Um, and they might say sure and accept it tomorrow. Um, but they have until March first. In, 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 in full C B A uh honor and respect to the contract, they have until March first. And I have in, in, I, I, the association, I have approached others in the past very lightly. If you are, you know, you know, I haven't, I haven't coerced or anything, and sometimes they said, oh, Steve, absolutely. And sometimes people waited to the last day and there was no tone from me. That's their right by their contract. But if the board wanted to do that, I, I'm, I'm sure I can verify the names uh in time. These are names you don't want to mess up. I don't want to put someone into retirement that is not asked for it unless it was, you know, so.
Um, we could do it tonight, and I guess, I mean, the other option is we're going to be back here in a week, and I don't know how much time a week saves us, especially when there's a March first deadline, but anyway, I, I, I think my personal opinion is wording all five makes, makes sense. And like, if, if we need to wait a week in order to, to get the motion together to vote on it, I'm not sure that, that doesn't lose us any time, so.
I'd probably feel better waiting a week just because I want to double verify with Michelle, because if I put the wrong name in early, I've already nominated someone wrong this year for a job, if you remember. I don't need to do that tonight. And it's pretty late. It's just past my bedtime, just so you know.
Can you say to them, listen, the board's going to offer five, you know, just to let you know, you know, motion's coming next week, clock is ticking, it would help us.
There are so many people listening tonight, I'm, or watching tonight. I'm sure the word's out already.
All right, good. Accept.
So Rob, are you, Norman mentioned you guys are, are thinking about or talking about having another finance committee. Is that something you're thinking of scheduling between now and our next meeting a week from now?
Uh, we had not planned on that, but we could have a discussion about what those for lack of, for what the à la carte menu might look like.
Yeah, and I guess I'm just, I'm trying to just think through, um, you know, there's just a lot going on and, and, and I, I think we all probably have some ideas for some suggestions or places to look for reduction. So I'm trying to think of a way between now and next Thursday to sort of, to collect those and to kind of, you know, put them into some semblance of order and start making sense of them. And so we could, we could send those to Steve and Michelle as a first crack. We could send it to you and Norm as a first, as a first practice to collect them. I'm just trying to think of what's a process so that when we come back on Thursday, we, you know, we have that menu um and some à la carte stuff and, and and not just ask Steve to go and craft everything. Um, and I think he'll, he may have some ideas as well. Um, but I'm, I'm just thinking that might be one way to, to sort of tackle our next step.
Steve, you want me to save you a few emails and folks can send their suggestions to me and I'll bundle them together and?
Sure. Hundred percent.
Do we have, do we have a ballpark, Jim, where you're looking for on, on this?
It's not me, it's us. And so I'm just.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm trying to get collaboration. I mean, I'm willing to work with Rob and Steve and Michelle on this. You know, and collaborate and bring it to you guys, saying this is what the ramification is, you know, on these cuts, you know, the tax rate and really make it clear. Um, and, and Rob, you know, Rob and I are, I'm happy to task that with him and work with Steve and and bring that to the board. I just, I'm just trying to think of the approach that you'd like us to deliver to you.
Well, I guess I, I'm just thinking of a step is that if, if all of us as individuals who have been looking at the budget have places or suggestions, that if we can funnel those, you know, to Rob, that might be, that might be a first step. And then I think Rob can take those and, and again, so Steve's not getting emails from all five of us. You know, Rob can take those and go meet with Stephen and Michelle, and they could say, you know, this is, this is, Jim's suggestion is so ridiculous that we're not going to go there. And so then he could, we can come back with a list that's at least been vetted. And then we can sort of have a discussion on those items, see where we're at, look at the revenue. And I think next week, Steve, there would be, you know, some tax rate discussion. So we can sort of at least put them all together and then have one larger discussion um um as we go into sort of the next couple of weeks of a budget discussion, um rather than trying to set like, you know, five percent, that, that might be a good next step, because because I, I, I know there's so much going on and Steve and Michelle are very busy and we all are. This might be one way to at least get all our ideas in one place and then, and then we can vet them, Rob can vet them through Steve, bring back, you know, where we're at and, and kind of go from there.
Happy to do it.
Does that sound plausible?
Sounds good. I would, I would ask if people could do that, you know, uh, if by Sunday makes sense, that way I can get it to Steve and we can have a conversation, maybe on Monday.
Steve, does that work for you?
Great. Yep, absolutely fine. Um, and Rob and I, um, well, we'll have a, a side conversation too, just about some values I've been thinking too, but not, it works fine.
Okay. Anything else? I'm just looking at the agenda here. Um, anything else under the operating budget for now? It feels like we covered a lot of ground there, which is great. Thank you. Um, anything else we should, anything else anybody wants to bring up? Or Steve, did we leave, leave anything on sort of what you have here on the agenda that we didn't talk about?
No, I think we're good. Um, just start thinking, uh, so our next three dates, December seventeenth. And it's the twenty-second. I actually think I said to the twenty-third to Norm by mistake, so I think we, we could do a meeting on the twenty-second. Is that Tuesday? Does that sound right to people?
Andrea says yes.
Yeah, and so it's seventeen twenty-two, and then if January seventh is a Thursday, we really do have to get to a, a, a F Y twenty-two H S B. You know, I think we need to give Michelle some direction, but we really have to have it finalized, no later than the seventh, because we're presenting six days later.
Yep. So I, yeah, and I think we'll get a lot, my hope is that we get a lot done at the next meeting, um, especially if we, we start getting a list, and then we'll see. You know, that'd be a good test of where we are and then, you know, where people's comfort levels are in a tax rate based upon, you know, what reductions we can bring forward and talk about. And that'll give us a good, I guess, a, a good place for whether or not, I would assume we're going to need the meeting on the twenty-second. Um, and then it's just a question, you know, do, can we get done then, or do we need another meeting on the seventh to wrap it up? But I feel like the schedule, I feel like we're in pretty good shape. I say that now, but I don't want to jinx anything.
Yeah, Jim, just real quick, I think if we, if December twenty-second happens, that'd be, that'd be great, give Steve and I a little bit of opportunity with Rob to make something for the budget committee. I think that'd be, that'd be great. So, but I, hey, I understand things happen and if we have to use January, that's great, but I think the, putting our heads together, we'll be able to do something.
All right. Um, if everybody is at least set, maybe not comfortable, but all set to move on, um, I believe our last item here, um, is there a finance committee update?
Yeah, we gotta do a quick calendar, if that's okay. I'll do, I'll run through the calendar.
Thank you, Steve.
Um, and we'll just run through, Amy was all set to you, but it's, it's probably, uh, if it's all right, I, I don't think she'll mind if I just run through it quickly, and it's not an action item tonight. So, and I'll make sure, so the calendar is in support materials. Um, and I think Amy and Chris, who led the professional learning committee, did a great job. Fundamentally, we do try to align with Concord. Remember, we have about thirty students at C R T C, um, and that's a lot. And so if we don't align with Concord, it really is difficult. And it also helps with, you know, we have, everybody's got spouses who's living, you know, teachers, all that fun stuff. So just one quick notice, the calendar that was presented right now has what is affectionately known as the Massachusetts Week in February. It's the President's Day Week, which is unusual for us. New Hampshire is typically the week after President's Day, and this, the regional superintendents have noticed Concord on that. And to make sure Concord wanted to, so, um, so Concord is the driver, because everybody regionally sends people to C R T C. So, and I'll reach out to Kathleen Murphy to see, years ago, they had the Massachusetts Week for February in, and they did change it after. Actually, the state kind of likes us to do the New Hampshire Week to spread out the lines and, uh, at, um, at SCARIS. I don't think, is that, I don't think I'm being obnoxious with that, but I think that's just the reason why that's happening. So a, a couple of really neat things. Amy and Chris and the team decided that on the, on the day, the Friday before Columbus Day is Choice Day. Um, it gives teachers some opportunity. One of the strategies in professional learning is to provide as mu- as, as some choice for teachers, so they can choose to go to the uh, a professional development day or do some self-study or some observations of other schools. We really like that. Um, we are developing a calendar in support of the Hopkinton Fair, which we hope comes back strong and all that fun stuff. There is not a um national election. Um, so, so they moved um parent teacher conference, guardian teacher conference, not connected to that. There won't be a national election next November. I'm pretty sure of that. So those are the fundamentals. Um, thank you. Um, any questions, we can run it and Amy would do it, but it will be an action item next week. And if the board, the board can decide to do a different February, or we can revise that, but I'll reach out between now and the next meeting and Kathleen and see where Concord's at, if that's an oversight, or if that's a, if that's a purposeful choice, I'll bring that back. And, and, and we can make a decision, but it does impact kids, because of thirty kids, a different week is a little funky. Is that all right for a quick primer on the calendar?
Any questions for Steve?
Thanks, Amy. Sorry. I hope you're okay out there.
Steve, I just, uh, um, I think I asked this last year too. I know one year, um, we got a request late in the process by, I think, the H E A to make some adjustments. And I'm just curious and just want to make sure that, you know, that the H E A's seen this and, um.
Well, it was the Professional Learning Committee, which has H E A representation. So I, I can't speak to how much they spread it out, but this was, uh, uh, see, I can say this now, because I'm a short timer. It used to be very, sometimes it was considered top-down driven by the superintendent in the calendar. This was not that way. I was hands off this calendar. Just so everybody's out there knows, this came up from the Professional Learning Committee. So I, I was not strong-armed or a sledgehammer on this calendar.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate your explanation. All right. Um, if no one has any other questions on the calendar, uh, I think I was just making sure it wasn't skipping over more. Um, is there a finance committee update?
Um, so yeah, super quick. Uh, basically what Steve just did was the finance committee meeting. So, you know, we talked about drivers, we talked about revenue. Um, we talked about the adequacy. The one thing that we haven't discussed that we did talk about was the Bedford model for Chromebooks. You know, we had talked about, you know, is there a way to fund this so that it's a bit of a revolving fund? And Bedford does some things that, uh, you can buy it from the district. They essentially act as a distributor. You can have a Chromebook for a day, it stays in school, or you can bring your own in. And, you know, one of the caveats to what they do is that the, the school district manages a Chromebook for you. They set it up. If there's problems, they, they act as the tech crew. But one of the things that I think, you know, the key point that Steve made was that there's some legal issues around asking students to contribute to this, because it would be uh, you know, we need to provide a free and appropriate education. And that would be something that we would not be doing. So I, I think that path, if I'm reading everything correctly, is not one that's open to us, so we need to look at other avenues for funding. That, that sound right there, Steve?
No, you did great. Really, it was a great synopsis.
All right. And one person was a little bit late to the finance committee meeting, but uh, it won't happen again.
And it wasn't me. Was not me.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions for, for Rob?
No, I just encourage the committee to watch the finance committee, committee meetings. They've been really helpful for this budget process, and, and I just want to say thank you to Michelle, Steve, and you know, and Rob and this board for creating it. It's helped me understand this budget and process much clearer and we're about education and it's been really great to be able to understand it and uh making great, great, tough decisions, of course.
Well, thanks for you guys. Um, it's easy, it's easy for Andrea, Seth and I, so we don't have to, we don't have to go to the meetings. But thank you guys for, for attending them and, and doing all the work and for Steve and Michelle too. Um, I know it is a lot of work, so thank you. So uh, the next is under um personnel and Steve.
It really is a pleasure um to nominate Jean Eaton as the Harold Martin School Office Manager. I worked with Jean as assistant principal um at Hopkinton Middle and High Schools. I worked with her at the was principal, and she was in the S A U office for about six years. So um, she's almost doing the full circuit of, of schools and jobs. So it's great to bring Jean back. And uh, so that is an action item, and I do apologize, Jim, there is a, an action item on the agenda that needs to be tabled regarding the funding of hair of the sprinkler system. That's going to be on next week's agenda. Michelle and I have just some tightening up to do on that, and I didn't. I forgot to delete that from the bottom end of the agenda.
That's easy enough.
But that's it.
All right. Any questions for Steve on the, the personnel? All right. Um, and so we've done, um, I think, I'm just, I'm going back, because we, I know we skipped around a lot, but I think we covered everything on the agenda. So thank you all, and thank you for everybody who's still with us. Appreciate that. And so this brings us to the second public comment for the evening. And so, um, again, if you are attending and you wish to provide public comment, I would just ask that you uh, move your cursor to your bottom of your screen, hit the raise your hand, um, and that will alert us that you have a public comment. And I would just ask, as I did at the beginning, just, um, if you would state your name, um, and address, and then try to keep your comments to uh three minutes or less, and there's a lot of hands. And so my only other suggestion or, or request, it's not mandatory, of course, but if, um, if, if, you know, if you're repeating um comments that others have made, you're free to do so, but that, that will keep other people from commenting and it'll be a longer meeting. So I, we appreciate it. Um, so the first hand that's up is Jeremy Friedus. And so Jeremy, thanks for sticking with us.
Yes, thank you, Jim. I just wanted to ask everybody on the call tonight if they got their Amazon package today. Did everybody get their Amazon today? I say that because we'd all really riot if Amazon didn't show up. But we obfuscate our risk when we pretend that those packages showing up didn't require somebody taking some form of risk. I mean, think about it. They took a risk to bring you that, who knows what you ordered. And we order stuff online, so hey, fine, I'm guilty. But I just say, you know, to you all, as we didn't really have a, a public comment immediately following the decision to take a month and a half break from in-person learning, as if there's not enough stress in our community. Um, and didn't have our public comment session then. But don't we just pretend like there's people not working? I mean, that Amazon worker won't get paid if they don't show up to work. And, you know, the nurses, they don't get paid and they don't get an option to not show up to work. My wife's a nurse. You know, there's so many people out in the community, and I'm not really, you know, total hair on fire, like, let's all get together. But these kids are, it's a one cluster of ten students at one time, and we made an agreement at the beginning of the school year. The tacit agreement that we made was that we were going to follow the metrics. And yeah, that's not an easy process, and yeah, we can't just wave a magic wand and I'll forget about it for a month and a half. That's like, uh, using sonar in a submarine. We can't see the future. The submarine can't see what's in front of it. It uses sonar. Test, okay, we're good. Get back to school. Actually, if you go to the N H dot gov website and look at the latest stats for COVID with all the testing that's out there, and there's a lot of controversy over test. But with all the testing that's happening, you actually see a, a very sharp decrease. So I understand you're following the numbers and that's part of our tacit agreement that we made. But to say, hey, fellas, let's just take a, a month, month and a half break, whatever, I don't know, even though you guys settled on, there was so much back and forth. But a month, month and a half break isn't keeping your end of the bargain. And I just want to put a little finger in each of your chests, that you're not keeping your word, because that was the word we had. Steve, if you want to go a week at a time, I understand. Steve, if you want to go a week at a time, I understand. That's at least a little bit of an echo test, confirm, and take a step, step at a time. That's the agreement you made with this community. And I want to tell you, that's the agreement you haven't lived up to your word on. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next hand that's up is Ethan Molnar.
Yeah, hi. My name's Ethan Molnar. I'm a junior at Hopkinton and I play on the ice hockey team. Um, I think there's a few key considerations that the school board or members of the school board are disregarding in terms of having sports over the winter, at least the indoor sports. To start, I've played hockey all my life. I've yet to take a winter off where I have not played hockey. It's it's very dear to my heart. Like hockey is a part of my health, my physical health, my mental health. And basically, by not having a hockey season this year, I will find other ways to play. And so will many other kids on the hockey team, and I'm sure on the basketball team, too. These sports aren't just something that these kids do in their free time. It's a place where they can get away from everything and they can do something that they really love. And by not having a school-regulated, safe area for these kids to play, they're going to find other ways to do it. And I'm positive that these these teams, these club teams that kids will play for, will not follow the CDC guidelines or even the New Hampshire regulations. My fall split season team didn't do it. And the team I'm looking into now, in case that the high schools are are my high school hockey season falls through, I will play for a team, which I've already practiced with once or twice, that does not follow the CDC guidelines or the New Hampshire regulations. But I'm making that decision to play because I need to play hockey. It's a way for me to get away from everything that's going on right now. It's not just a sport to me. It's part of who I am. I need to play hockey. I sit on this online school every day and I'm thinking, how much more time until I can go to hockey practice? And then after hockey's over, I'm like, I got school tomorrow. And then I have school the next day and then I can go to hockey again. It's especially with the situation that's happening now. Hockey and I'm sure basketball is crucial to these kids and athletes. And by not providing a safe, school-regulated area for these kids to play, which I think is being very overlooked, these kids will find other ways to play their sports. And the school can't do anything about that. They will play their sports and it will not be in a place that follows all the guidelines or all the regulations. And the school can't control that. And a slightly different point that I would also like to make. There was a suicide prevention, virtual suicide prevention meeting that happened like two or three days ago. And there was two sessions. And I'm just thinking, what an utter disregard of students' mental health. I mean, these meetings are, it was insulting. It was, it was ridiculous. I mean, it's like, it's like the suicide nets at China's, like, Apple factories. It's ridiculous. I mean, it's just a lack of regard for students' mental health. And it it makes me angry and sad that this is the way our school is headed towards. And I want you guys to know, for those that vote on the the sports, the indoor winter sports, that by voting no, you are taking away a safe school-regulated area for these kids to do something that they love. And by doing that, they will find other places to play. And that will not be as safe. And in turn, so just to put in perspective, some of these teams, or at least the teams that I've played for, they have kids from out of town and out of state. The team that I will play on, if I cannot play for my high school team, has kids from all over the state and there's two or three kids from Massachusetts on that team. And I can't not play hockey. That is not in my wheelhouse of things that I can do. So thank you for your time. And I just really want you to take this into consideration when you guys vote on the the sports, winter sports.
Thank you, Ethan. Appreciate you sharing your feelings. Appreciate it. Next up is Tammy Clay.
Hi, this is this is Ken Clay. And I appreciate the the time this evening. I've lived in this town for 20 years. Three of my children have grown up and come through this community. And I've always looked with pride on the excellent education that they've received. I want to ask a very simple question. My understanding is that you've already taken a vote this evening on whether or not to conduct winter sports in high school. Is that true?
Yeah, so we had, I don't know, a very long discussion about our
All right. Let me ask you a question.
Okay.
Did you notify every student athlete in advance that that vote would be taken tonight? Why? Last week, I heard Steve Chamberlain kick himself because he could stand to improve communication. Tonight, you made a decision. You just heard Ethan say that it's not just about the numbers, guys. You guys are all really good about churning the numbers. We're talking about children's lives. There was an article on TV tonight about a young man that took his life earlier this week when he found out that his sports program was cut. You can't just look at the numbers. Why did you not notify every student athlete that you are going to make a decision tonight that could impact their lives? I'm asking for an answer. Why did you not do that?
Respectfully, Ken, I've tried to answer you twice and I've been cut off twice. And so I was going to wait for you to be done your public comment.
I, I, I would appreciate an answer.
All right. Well, thank you for your comment. And we we have had a discussion about remote teaching and remote education. And part of that discussion was sports, and I believe it was on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken. And the board felt that we needed to make a decision tonight. And Dan Missouri asked that we not wait because that would that may be more detrimental. And the majority of the board felt this was the appropriate move to make. And so we made a decision. That's what the board does. So appreciate your comment.
I would respectfully ask that you revisit.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next hand that's up is Dennis Molnar.
Sorry, still trying to get off mute. Can you hear me?
You sure can. Loud and clear. You made it.
Hi, Dennis Molnar, 55 Bryant Road. It's my son Ethan. He feels pretty strongly about it. I had two points. One, our caller before the meeting started asked and sort of raised the prospect of maybe extending the Christmas holidays or end of the year holidays for a few weeks to get by us a little more time to maybe get more in-person time in June. And I just wanted to maybe make a statement that I think you guys all know, but the MOA that was signed back with the the two unions back in August and January makes it pretty clear that there's only the restrictions on distancing that would allow for full in-person or more in-person than where we started are only are only changeable when two things happen. One, at the end of the school year. So not this year. And the other is when the WHO declares an end to the pandemic. And even if there are no cases in New Hampshire, no cases in the US, everybody vaccinated, the WHO may still not declare an end to the pandemic in June. So I think it's 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 important that everybody understands that while we might get back to some hybrid standard, that there's no scenario, no realistic scenario to be back to full in-person contractually. And then my other point, I guess, an African proverb, it reminds me of the African proverb about the sheep. Sheep spends its whole life fearing the wolf, only to be eaten by the shepherd. I feel like we're we're making decisions kind of on the on the wrong basis. Norm asked, how could we possibly have eight kids who didn't get COVID at school and got COVID somewhere else? What are those kids doing? The answer, Norm, is they're doing non-school-related extracurricular activities. And and we're getting 100% of the cases are coming from these non-school-related activities. Some of them are interactions with family. It's true. Some of it comes from family. But certain certainly plenty that comes from doing all the things that kids will do, whether they have a school sponsored or not. And so when we make a decision not to offer these opportunities, we're essentially we're we're driving them to other case, other situations where there is less protection and where we can't control. We're not making it one bit safer for those students. We're not making it one bit safer for the community. And I think to hide behind the fact that, you know, the school, we can't sponsor these kinds of activities because we're making, you know, because we would be acknowledging that it would be somehow unsafe is is not really being realistic. And I just, one other, one other question, I guess, is that, is that if if we don't have anybody in school and we're full remote, wouldn't that mean that every sport that's not, doesn't use the facility would be available to be played? So that would be Nordic Alpine and ice hockey. Maybe that, doesn't that change the dynamic a little bit? We're not certainly not introducing any risk to the facility, any risk to the teachers, any any risk on site. And if the the standard here is that they must be outdoor sports, does that also mean that the Nordic and Alpine teams won't be allowed in lodges? They won't be sitting in buses all day with more than the required maximum number of students. Hopefully it does. And by the same token, if that's the standard and we're okay with it, then if the basketball team wants to play outside or the hockey team can find an outdoor rink, of which there are a few in the state, would those sports be allowed to be played? And those are my questions. So thanks. Thanks, everybody, for your consideration.
Thank you, Dennis. And just on the last, that last question on, could those teams play outdoors? Norm asked something similar. And I think I think the the answer was, yeah, if there are outdoor activities, that's where we're at. So thank you. Next hand that's up is Caitlin Rollo.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you. Thanks for joining.
Perfect. Thanks. So I was just calling in to recognize the hard work of all of our educators that that's been happening. This global pandemic has been hard on all of us. And as a full-remote family since the start of the year, we've had a front-row seat and fully knowing and seeing how thoughtful, talented, and highly qualified our education staff are in our town. And I just wanted to say that we're truly blessed. It does not go unnoticed that all the adults in my child that my child interacts with every day has adapted to our current environment by working above and beyond, many times putting their own needs aside to ensure our children are still receiving a quality education in these uncertain times. We enjoy daily live instruction with curriculum tailored to what appears to be each child's needs. The kids are engaged. And as parents, we've created a little small community where we make, we all make fun, but we kid back and forth of like, oh, my goodness, did you hear what my kids say? Whether it's embarrassing or not. And it's just, it's been nice. And so anyways, I just want to say to all our teachers, specialists, instructional assistants, and all the other adults that have made this experience so positive. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin, for your comments. Appreciate it. Next hand that's up is Kristen Allen.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, um, I was just curious because I wasn't able to be on the entire school board meeting. So I was just wondering what the remote period was planned to be.
Sure, I can feel that one. So we 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 made the decision to do remote through, I think the date was January 19th, but, you know, Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday as sort of the 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 span of time that we would commit to doing a remote.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. So the next hand that is up is Catherine Madio.
Hi, this is Catherine Madio, 108 Park Ave. And I just wanted to comment on the early retirement discussion about the budget. And I just wanted to let you guys know that I think that's a great idea. Like, I know you usually do three, but go ahead and shoot for five and see what you get to stick. So and I wanted to say thank you to all of you. I think you guys are working really, really hard. And especially thank you to the Finance Committee. And, you know, I just, it's it's got to be a second full-time job for you guys. And I just want to know that you are all appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Catherine. We really appreciate that. Next hand that is up is Candy Garvin. Hi, Candy. There you go.
Oh, I'm at your service. Would you like some comedic relief? Would you like the pats on the back for doing what you're doing? I watched your body language as much as I could during all the sessions. These decisions that you've made were very difficult. You put a lot of thought. You get input on this. You don't have to agree and you're not nasty to each other. I appreciate that. The budget looks good. I, of course, would like it lower, but let's get real. A good team. You're a good team. And I thank you for that. Michelle, thanks for doing the numbers. You guys start talking about, and I go, oh, I gotta mute this now because I'm gone. It was a pleasure to be on the superintendent's search. Bittersweet, but what a learning experience. And I would say that for anybody who wanted to be on any of the committees that you serve on. Of course, not the Budget Committee, but that's me. I'm so pleased that Jean Eaton's coming back. I'm keeping it low-key. I appreciate what you do. I pat you on the back, but you've got to get up off the ground and put your seatbelts on again. Thank you. I thank the teachers and who that's where I'm going to end. It's really good. And my grandkids are both remote and have been because of their their parent decision to do what they need to do to keep their family safe. And if people make decisions that are a little questionable about making their own kids safe, their own family safe, their own community safe, they're making the decision. Thank you, though. I appreciate you. I'm muting myself.
Thank you, Candy. Appreciate the comments very much. Next hand is the McGrath family.
Yep. Hi, this is Morgan McGrath, 31 Willoughby Road. I was going to be a senior co-captain this year on the varsity girls' basketball team. And I've been fortunate enough to be on this team since freshman year with Coach Roy. And I just wanted to point out that middle school hasn't had any issues with the four weeks that they've been playing so far. And that if there's a slight chance someone isn't feeling good, players are deciding to stay home. Basketball is more than just a sport. It teaches sportsmanship, leadership, teamwork, and hard work. It's what gets me out of bed in the morning, knowing that if I have basketball later in the day or later in the week, it gets me through school. And I know a lot of people on my team, I've talked to them tonight, and they have mentioned how important it is for us to mentioned how important it is for us to have some resemblance of a season. And what's been keeping our grades up right now is knowing that we have basketball because if our grades aren't good enough, then we're not allowed to play. So it's what's keeping us, our grades up and getting us through school. And I would just like to say that I hope that you can take this day by day or even week by week, instead of just canceling the whole thing all at once.
Thank you, Morgan. Appreciate you joining us tonight and sharing your thoughts. Appreciate that. Next hand is Kelly. That's all, that's all we have. So Kelly, thanks for joining.
Hi, this is Kelly Elrick, 36 Nolan Circle. First thing I wanted to say was to thank the teachers for all the hard work that they've done since March. Adjusting to everything, making changes as we go along, which happens super frequently and to working so hard just to keep the kids engaged. And doing all that right now without a contract. So thanks to them and all the work that they're doing. Couple of things, I guess I'll go in the order of what you guys discussed them about. Like the extra week off after holiday break and moving time to June. I have a hard time with that, especially with some sports being cut, just the lack of structure and activity for the kids. You know, it gets dark at 4:30. And if we're looking for the numbers to not go up, then we're obviously looking for them to not be going out and doing other things. And so another week off of school when you don't really have stuff to do is really hard to understand because it seems like with the days off from Thanksgiving, that's kind of what caused some of the spike in the numbers. And also looking at June, it gets hot. I can't imagine by then that we'll be allowed to have fans and all that kind of stuff that we were looking at in the fall and why we pushed the start of school back because of heat and those other issues. And then as far as the sports, I'm looking more at basketball because that's what my son is interested in. And some of my points were the same as Morgan. So let me just look through and try and pick out the ones that were different since that's what you were asking us to do. So one of them was about the masks and how the middle school, there hasn't been any numbers. And that's partially due to the activities being with masks and all the protocols being followed and not, you know, choices that people are making in their free time without structure. And it's hard to understand the whole season being cut. I mean, the season kind of goes through middle or end of February. And so, you know, making a cut for everything now, I get that making the decision now decides about games. But it seems like there could be other things for the kids to kind of look forward to and not have like this crushing cut all of a sudden. Skills and drills, open gym workouts, different things that maybe, you know, at least in the middle of January, might be able to happen when we go back to hybrid. So those were my comments at this point.
Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate your comments. Amanda Gilman.
Hello, everyone. Thank you all for your very underpaid, part-time job. You're, really, you're all killing it. And to the administrators for sticking this out with us. Thank you. One, in regards to the MOA that was signed in August with the teachers' union and the Hess unions. I guess I'm very frustrated the board handcuffed us for the duration of this entire school year. I do feel that this is a very short-sighted agreement, not knowing what would happen by the end of the school year. And I would hope that there would be the possibility to re-enter into negotiation over this should vaccination become more widespread and COVID rates drop in the spring. Because we do know that our teachers do want to be in safely, but they want to be in with our students. So I would hope that prevailing winds would, would send us to sensibility or maybe we could renegotiate. Number two, I'd like to point out that what we know about COVID today is worlds beyond what we knew about COVID last spring. What we know is it is, it is, yes, highly transmissible, but it is not. It is not highly deadly, as predicted earlier. In fact, the death rate among the young and/or the healthy is very low. So that says that as a population, we need to protect our vulnerable, the elderly, the ill, and those with significant health problems. Personal responsibility to not be near those that are in these categories is at the heart of a population's responsibility. But it is not the responsibility of a school district to protect, to protect these vulnerable populations. In fact, it's the popular, it's the, the province of the school district, primary responsibility to its students. Paralyzing a generation of students trying to protect the at-risk doesn't make any sense. You are sacrificing, or we as, as a whole, as a country are sacrificing our youngest generation to try to protect our oldest generation. The hubris, honestly, of this board is a little shocking to me frankly, to think that you have the primary responsibility or the, or even the ability to control this virus. You can't stop the spread of COVID. The thought is actually ridiculous. Your primary responsibility is to your students and their needs. If parents have elderly relatives or their healthcare workers or they have related risks that make them high-risk or potential spreaders, then those parents have their own personal responsibility and their own free will to not send their students to school in person and choose remote or to not let their children play sports. But those are personal choices and the board is not and should not be the decision maker of such personal decisions, sacrificing our children at the expense of the elderly. This board cannot stop the spread of COVID, but this board can provide the social emotional learning, education and the ever-important extracurriculars to an entire generation. COVID is far more treatable now. Even our little local Concord Hospital is treating patients with the new drug Remdesivir with great success. I implore the board to remember your primary goal is that to that of the students. Shutdowns are a privilege of the elite and the wealthy. Blue collar workers can't survive shutdowns. Norm asked for a schedule to help working parents plan. And while I appreciate this idea, Norm, and it might help with planning for some, I point out that many blue collar workers have to be in-person and are not physically there to help their parents. And a schedule will do them little good. It may be under-prepared grandparents or siblings attempting to help. And what kids need is in-person learning with teachers. Similarly, I point to Andrea, I refer to Andrea's point about how Nordic and Alpine are financially unattainable for many, whereas basketball is not. And again, this selective shutdown disproportionately hinders the lower socioeconomic groups. Now, believe me, I am not advocating that you do not move forward with Nordic or outdoor sports or any sports, anything that doesn't offend, offend your appetite for risk. Rather, I hope you all understand that your decisions have repercussions far beyond your attempts to control an uncontrollable virus. The decisions you make also have significant socioeconomic impact and time will tell how your actions have served to widen the socioeconomic gap in our little town. And it's not just our little town. I'm not picking on just you because many others in this country think that arbitrary, unscientific and unproven shutdowns are the answer. But again, I point out that those believing in these shutdowns are most commonly those with the means to survive it. I hope that as we move forward, we all remember our primary responsibility to the students themselves, not to their grandparents. And please remember that shutdowns are 100% a privilege for the elite and a death sentence in one way or another, psychologically, financially, et cetera, for those without the financial means to survive it. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda, for your comments. And then I would just, to your first, to your first point, and this is brought up several times, so I just thought I would address it on the, the issue of, of the MOAs. Those are renegotiable, I guess is the right term to use. I'm not sure if it is, but I'll say it anyway. And, you know, the board, if circumstances change, the board and the associations could go back to the table to renegotiate those MOAs. So that's, that's definitely on the table if circumstances allow. So next up is Ian Tewksbury. And Ian, before you start, I would just ask if any of the, if any individuals have spoken and they haven't unraised their hand, lower your hand, I think is what the button says. If you don't mind doing that, it's just much easier for me to follow who's next in line if you lower your hands up to your speak. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you guys for the time tonight. Very quickly, I would totally understand as far as sports go, if we were the only ones looking to have sports. But as Mr. Reserve said, with all the sports districts in the, in the region, having sports as well, you know, it doesn't, in my opinion, it doesn't make sense for us not to have sports. Everybody else is doing it, so everybody else can do it safely. We're able to do fall sports. Obviously, if everybody was gonna jump off a bridge, we wouldn't do that. But you, you understand my point that we're not the only ones. We're not trying to blaze a path to do that. Also, the, the chances of the numbers increasing in our schools and in our youth by the kids playing sports outside of Hopkinton, the AAUs, the travel teams, that's a greater increase of them getting COVID than them participating in the sports in our school. It worked in the fall. Yes, it was outside. Yes, the numbers were lower, but it can work here as well. I do not have a, a horse in the race this year. My son is not able, he got hurt. He is not able to play basketball. So it's not going to affect us and our family, but there are plenty kids that it is going to be affecting. You heard from, you heard from Ethan. And if an athlete tests positive, you treat it just like the Matrix. You shut the team down, you, you go into a two-week quarantine, whatever you want to do, but we're already gonna be remote. So I ask that the three, I'm not sure if you took a straw poll or if you took an actual binding vote, but if you, if it is a binding vote, I ask the three dissenting votes to make a motion to reconsider. I believe that's the appropriate terminology at the end of this meeting, to reconsider and, and pass that vote. So thank you very much for your time. I think it's a, it's a much bigger thing and us not, us not having sports and Hopkinton not having sports is not going to keep the numbers down. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Next hand that's raised is, it's Elrick. And so I know we heard from Kelly, so I'm assuming it's a different Elrick.
Yes, Jim, it's Jeff Felrick. Thanks. 36 Nolan Circle, just like Kelly. The, the decision tonight, I think, to, to shut down basketball and hockey, I think, was made, made out of fear. And I think that has a lasting impact beyond what I think you're comprehending tonight as a board. Last week, you talked about, not just with athletics, with, with everything, with the budget. You talked about trusting your superintendent, trusting your athletic director in regards to sports, trusting your principal, your school nurse. And this week, the, the trust was, was chased away by the fear. And what I think you've done in turn is instill fear in a lot of parents and a lot of kids. I'm certainly concerned how my son is gonna react, how it's gonna change his motivation. What, what it's, how it's gonna replace, what, what's gonna be the replacement for basketball this winter? And I don't have the answer. And that's, that's scary. You talked about putting a stop to sports now because what would change between now and January that would make someone change their mind on the board? And I think what would happen is that you would see the processes play out. The process that your school team, Dan and the school team has laid out, and you'd see how the protocols are working. You'd see how other schools are doing. But tonight, I think we shut the door on all that information. We shut the door on the possibility of using that information to make good decisions. You said a lot can change in a week because obviously a lot changed from last week in your opinions and, and in the world, for sure. But a lot can change in four weeks. And I think it's presumptive to assume that what would or wouldn't change could or could not change your mind. And just assuming that my, pulling the rug out from under the athletes, I just, I, I can't agree with. And it was not, athletics was not mentioned on the agenda for tonight. In fact, there was a, a B, what may turn out to be the last open gym for basketball. And the boys' players were there and they stayed late because I imagine they wanted to play a little extra because they got to work before they were even allowed to leave the gym. So the last, the last point I wanted to bring up, and last week you were talking about points of negotiation. Fans in the stands, how many fans, whether we have fans or not. We were talking about athletes going remote as a possible negotiating point. And this week, there was no, no talk of compromise with Dan, with Chris, not talking about maybe doing some skill training or, or taking that selected squad, letting the coaches choose their players. 11 players, 11 guys, not an open gym with 30 guys. 11 people, 11 girls, 11 boys at a time, a cohort that can be contained, that can be managed, that can be tracked. And that's, that's doable. So again, I would echo Ian and say that a motion for reconsideration or just a general reconsideration by the board, I think, would be appropriate. So thank you.
No, I'm off mute. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Next person is Molly Tennevesa? Sorry if I mispronounced the last name.
Hi, yes. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, just reiterating what has been said. I'm, I'm, I'm just beyond devastated at the decision that was made for basketball. You know, I have a kid who, any teacher who's had him up to this year can attest that he has been an excellent student and works hard and is one of my few kids that I haven't had to worry about with grades. And ever since March and, and when everything changed, he has absolutely tanked. And this week was the first time I've seen him motivated, was the first time I've seen him work hard. And every one of his teachers can attest to you that he has finally shown up this week and he has finally had hope. And he, the one thing he did work for all summer was basketball. And I do not know how to tell him that it is off the table because it was the one thing that got him through this week. And I I'm just disgusted with the votes that I made to vote this board because I really don't think that you guys are taking into account the emotional impact that this is having on our homes. And it worked fine in the fall and the kids did great. And the numbers that have come into this town weren't from football. And I know for a fact now my only recourse is to go play AAU, which I understand for some people, financially might not be a burden, but AAU teams are at a minimum $400 to $600. But we will do that because that's, that's what gets my kid up. And like you said, it wasn't on the agenda. This is, feels like a, just a shock that these boys will have tried out this week and came home the happiest I've seen them in a long time, coming home from tryouts tonight, knowing that they're gonna have a solid team and a great season. And I really am dreading the discussion that I have to have with them tonight. And so I just, I hope you guys can reconsider this or at least really think about the emotional impact this will have on our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. George McGrath?
George McGrath, 31 Willoughby. Can you hear me, Jim?
Sure can. Thank you, George.
Oh, thanks for letting me on here. Yeah, so first of all, just a quick shout out to the teachers and staff. One of the side benefits of my daughter being at school at home, well, well, first of all, I get to do a woodshop project with her, so that was a lot of fun. But I also got to listen to some of the teachers that I don't get to see in action. And we, we definitely have top-notch teachers out there. I sort of wanted to listen into the rest of the, the math and the science class today. And I know one of them logged in today and, and has COVID and made every attempt to power through it. So I understand there's people listening in on this call that are directly impacted by this horrible thing going on. And I just want to make sure. And I just want to make sure I expressed a heartfelt thanks for everything you're, you're doing. Now, uh, segueing into the impact of the decision, uh, Molly, you know, his reaction just a few minutes ago, swept through our house and our socially networked, uh, daughters, it swept through there. I think Seth asked earlier about a couple of decisions. What's the impact of the decision? What's the impact? Well, you're starting to hear the impact now. People are feeling it. You know, mental health and emotional well-being, it might not be contagious. But there's moms and dads and brothers and sisters that are impacted by this. So it's not contagious, but everybody in the field, family feels it. Uh, since our meeting last week where I gave you the readout on, you know, winter basketball and the different schools, two more schools, Inner Lakes and Messineck, have decided to play this week with the change in circumstances from last week. Uh, being a factor. Jim has mentioned very consistently, things have changed. Well, despite those changes, those two school boards went ahead and Kirsar started practicing. So just keep that in mind, please. NHIAA, go to the website. It talks about sports as an extension of the classroom, an extension of the classroom. This school board is responsible for what our kids learn. And the NHIA says sports are an extension. I don't know about people on this call. But in my professional life, I use leadership, teamwork, hard work, dedication every day. Integrels and derivatives from my senior year of math class, not so much. No offense to Mr. Zipki or any of the math teachers out there. But it's an extension of the classroom. Sadly, this extension of the classroom can't go remote like our real classrooms uh, can. So we need to figure out a way to keep this teaching element as part of our student athletes. Next point, there's been a lot of talk about community transmission risk. So far, none of that community transmission has been tied to masked indoor players. Right? It's been unmasked, low airflow environments. Uh, one of the Elrics I said, I think said, uh, something about fear-based decision. That's exactly what this is. There's fact-based decision-making and fear-based. If you just go by the headlines, if you just read the news, y- your decision is easy. If you look a little deeper and say, what's really causing that? Well, maybe your decision gets a little more difficult. And again, with the school going more remote, uh, you know, the kids aren't coming into the classrooms anyways, right? Let's let individual families make a decision based on their own risk tolerance. Right? You, you mentioned an hour or two ago on this call that different people have different tolerance. Well, if they're not comfortable with the risk, they don't have to play. So I would encourage you to rethink or whatever protocol is necessary to get, because, because this is a bit of a surprise. It wasn't, if it was on the agenda, it was well hidden. Uh, this is a bit of a surprise to the community that, um, uh, you're to represent and, and, and look out for. So I'd encourage you to rethink the decision. Thanks. Thanks for listening. And again, appreciate everything everyone's doing.
Thank you, George. And, and I, it is my mistake. I, I mistakenly said that it was on the agenda. It, it wasn't on the agenda of conversation of athletics. So I apologize if, if I said that and I should have, because I should have looked at the agenda. My apologies. Next is Anne Shahadi.
Hi, Anne Shahadi, two eighty Rollins Road. Um, wanted to thank the school board for putting in lots of hours and, and still being here tonight. And I wanted to say that I, um, am fully, am fully in support of not having indoor winter sports. I think it was a really, really tough decision and I think it was the right decision. And I think that it was data-based. And I was late in logging on to this call because I was actually on a weekly COVID call from Concord Hospital. And we are definitely seeing our COVID numbers surge. Um, I know that nowadays it's very unpopular to talk about sacrifice and the common good and doing something that will benefit the larger community. And I know that the focus is on an individual and an individual decision. But we do know very simple, um, virtually free ways of preventing COVID. And we know it works. Wearing a mask, having six feet social distancing, excellent hand hygiene. Anyone can do it. We all summer long had very, very few COVID cases in Hopkinton. In the fall, I let my kids do outdoor sports. I thought it was safe. They wore masks. Indoor, in the winter, when we have twenty five active cases in Hopkinton, and if you look at the trajectory and the number of cases in Hopkinton, they're increasing exponentially. We know that basketball is a contact sport. We know that, you know, as much as we have fans, that when the kids go on the bench and they pull down their mask and they're taking water breaks and when they're, you know, socializing close together, it, it is a more high-risk situation. And I do have skin in the game because I have a son who's in middle school who adores basketball. It's the one sport that he loves and looks forward to. And it broke my heart and we told him, he went to a few open gyms and as the numbers spiked, we said, no, you cannot be on the team. And he was upset with us but understood. And it is the right decision to make and, and that, you know, I would certainly hope that we as a community, instead of, you know, blackmailing the board and saying, well, now my kid is going to go off and, and, and be unmasked and do super high-risk stuff. So now we're going to show you. I, I hope that, that, you know, your kids will survive. We had fourteen deaths today. There are a lot of people in the community, even if your kid's not going to die of COVID, there are people that are going to die of it. And we have two excellent vaccines that have ninety percent efficacy. This is not forever, guys. Within three to four months, hopefully we'll have more wide-scale rollout of the vaccine and then all of your children can play basketball after that. But for now, if everyone could just please follow the simple recommendations. And if we want our kids to be able to go back in school so that the numbers can go down. And if we're talking about all of the school kids in Hopkinton, I think the primary goal of the board should be to educate our kids and give our kids an education and allow them the best set of circumstances to be able to return to school for whatever amount of time they can be in school and learning. So I just, I know that you've had a lot of parents that have been really, really upset, but I want to applaud you for what I think is making the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Um, next, uh, is Matt Belanger.
Hey, everyone. Good evening. Uh, sorry, I'm going to do the same thing. Jim, can you hear me?
I sure can.
Excellent. Great. Uh, thank you all for all of your time. This is really incredible. Appreciate all that you do. Uh, and I commend the board, like to follow, um, what, uh, what, uh, Anne and Dr. Shahadi had just shared, right? Is that, um, I think this is the, this is the right choice, um, hard choice. I commend the board and administration for moving forward. I am obviously very sensitive to those who are impacted, the children and the families. But, but, um, we're, we're not alone in this. Obviously there are other schools, local schools, uh, schools across the country, whether that is K-12 or whether that are college, you know, colleges and universities. Uh, we have the good fortune of seeing how other schools have handled it and seeing the research that's been done there. Um, I'll start full discretion. Uh, my wife and I had decided, uh, to transition our three, uh, school-aged children from the hybrid model to fully remote. Um, and, uh, we are, we, we would be pleased with the vote, uh, that has been, uh, discussed earlier today, uh, this evening. But the board knows I've been an advocate for fully remote, uh, from the start of the year, uh, and, uh, being employed by a local university, uh, that's the direction that we have gone in despite, uh, despite students being frustrated. Our priority, as I feel is a priority of this board, is to keep students and staff safe and educated. And, uh, and I feel like the board is living up to that. Another note to thank the teachers, um, who have made these last few days truly exceptional. It is, uh, it is really great to hear Mrs. Brown teaching my son how to read through the internet. Mrs. Oberton, who goes out of her way to have individual one-on-ones with all of the children in her class, uh, especially my younger daughter. And, uh, to have Mrs. Jenkins call my oldest daughter on a Sunday evening to make sure that she is set up for success as she starts her week. Uh, we are incredibly fortunate to have such caring and dedicated, uh, teachers and staff in this community. And to be honest, as a prior educator myself, I don't think you could have paid me enough to, uh, to go into a classroom right now. And I commend you all for all that you, uh, all that you do. But just a few, um, a, a few responses to some of the things that I had heard earlier. And although I am not a medical expert, I, um, I'd be hard pressed to have anyone in the medical field share what the long-term impact of this virus is, um, and how that would, um, would, would weigh in their decision about whether schools should be open or not. The, the comment of comparing teachers to Amazon workers lacks any, any merit and empathy, um, almost comical. Uh, the exposure for a teacher is far greater than, than an individual who sits in a van by themselves. And so I apologize to the teachers that, that were compared to Amazon employees. And, uh, I, I do just want to let the board know while there are, um, apparently some in the community who are pointing their fingers at your chests. I want you to know that there are many, many more, myself included, who stand behind you and who support the work that you do and, uh, and the decision, the hard decision that, uh, that I think needs to be made tonight, which is to, uh, to close schools, um, for, for a little while here, while members in the community get under control. So thank you again for all that you do. Really, really, truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. Andrea Kane?
Hi, um, I wanted to thank you for all the variety of opinions you put forward. I know what I thought about sports, but I really appreciated that. I feel like the board represented and listened to people that, um, had written in. And I think that's really great. Um, I work at Harold Martin School in the third grade and I want to be there. I love being in person. I'm in charge of lunch because I'm the IA and the IAs are in charge of lunch in the room. There is eleven to twelve kids in the room. And we work hard to make sure that they're quiet voices and they're six feet apart and they clean their hands and the desks are clean. And they don't get out without putting their mask on and they don't laugh too loud and they don't yell too loud. And it's, it's been great, great. It's been a lot of fun to eat lunch with your kids. But the last week we were in person, cases started bubbling up. And I'm looking around going, I know the teachers in that room do everything that I'm doing. And yet they're still having cases. What am I, what can I do to make sure that these kids are safe? And all of a sudden, it became not about my safety, but about making sure the kids were safe. And it was a lot more real. It wasn't like the spring when, or the fall when cases were low. So I, I think you guys have made the right decision. I do think, you know, Fauci said no groups greater than ten for the holidays. Basketball is better than that. The vaccine is so close. And all the teachers want to be in the building. We were online all day with kids. I was online from one to two thirty straight because the kids didn't want to get off. They wanted to stay on and do their work. So they could ask questions, which was fine. It was great. I thought they'd be tired, but they were like, no, no, stay there. So it, it was great. It's not as good as in person. Of course not. But we do all want to be there. It's just really feels about safety and not about fear in an uneducated way. We're looking at the numbers just like you are. And we know how hard we were working to keep hands clean, to keep desks clean, to keep kids apart. So the, the fear was based in reality. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. David DiPiano? Piano, I apologize. David, if you're talking, we can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, there we go. Yep, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Sorry. Yeah, sixty appropriately. You probably heard me talk on other calls, uh, over the last several months about, you know, how remote learning works. Uh, and I've asked, you know, the, the more advanced notice that you can provide parents, the better. Uh, and you gave that tonight. You know, we can all sit here and debate the merits of, you know, should we do this week by week? Should we do it, you know, month by month? But you threw out a date and I think parents can plan for that now. We may not like it. Um, and we know that there's probably many in the community that, uh, this will seriously impact. But I know the board doesn't take these matters lightly and you're doing what you think is in the best interest of the school, the children, the parents, the administration and the staff. Uh, but as I sit here, I'm really curious that we're spending so much time talking about student sports. And we're not using this time to talk about how we can make remote learning work better for more of the kids, uh, as it seems like this is our new and present reality and challenge. And, and I just wanted to say that, you know, student athletes, and I have, you know, two kids, they're, they're in fifth and sixth grade. But student athletes aren't the only ones who use school and the activities at school as stress and mental relief. Those who don't play sports also are suffering being remote and not seeing their friends and not doing the things that they like to do. I think we all can sit here and look at our own children, whether they play sports or not, and see a change. We have seen change in our kids. We know that mental health is something that is important. And I think we owe it all to the kids and the families to deliver a great education. Uh, but we have to keep our kids, the families and the staff safe. There are still many cases of asymptomatic carriers of COVID, and by definition, they won't necessarily show symptoms. So we talk about taking temperatures and asking questions. Do you feel sick? Well, if they have COVID, they may not even know it. But we also know that when we talk about the quote-unquote at-risk people, we automatically start thinking about those who are seventy or eighty years old. But I guarantee you, there are students in our system who are considered at risk. They have health conditions. Their parents have health conditions. I guarantee you, we have staff who have health conditions. And we are sitting here, we're trying to deliver the best education that we can, uh, and we're still seeing communities spread. So I asked that, you know, as we sit here, we spend more of our time thinking about how we deliver education the best way that we can, given the situation that we're in. And I just wanted to kind of close on sort of a side note. Um, I have two kids who do play sports outside of the school district. And last spring, I had one child who had their spring soccer season completely canceled. Uh, and they really, the coaches, instead of just saying, your season is canceled, then we'll see you again in the fall. They used it as weekly Zoom meetings and they talked about the mental game of soccer. They talked about their favorite players, their favorite teams. And I've really, you know, sit here and implore people to think, I've, I'm always asking the board and people to think outside the box. You know, if, if we're always telling kids that, you know, these games are ninety percent mental and ten percent physical. Let's maybe say, okay, look, you can't play a sport, you know, because we're trying to protect our community. But let's not just toss them out into the water and say, oh, too bad for you. Let's maybe talk about the mental game. Let's work on plays. Let's evaluate professional sports and use these as coachable moments that we may not necessarily get during the heart of our seasons. Baseball is a mental game. We could be using that for plays and we could be using it as situational awareness. So there's a lot of things we can do during our days and during our weeks that, yes, it's not going to be the same basketball or hockey season. But there's still a lot that you can do. And I'd really implore the staff, uh, to think about the kids who are going to be affected by potentially not having games or practices for sports, as well as those who are sitting remote and, you know, they're missing their friends. I think there's a lot that we can do and I'd really implore people to really think about who this is affecting the most, and that's the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you for your comments. So next is Jennifer and Jennifer Blighgriff, excuse me. And I would just, um, this, this isn't, uh, you know, we're still trying to keep it to three minutes and I'll, I'll say is it's, it's ten o'clock. We've been meeting since five thirty. I know many of you are, are sticking with us. And so, um, I would just ask to keep that in mind as we go through comments. There's still a lot of hands raised. Um, and so I appreciate people have a lot of comments they want to give. And, uh, this is in a way to discourage you from doing it. But just looking at the clock and where we at, um, just wanted to mention it. All right, Jennifer, thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Blighgriff, seven sixteen Hopkinton Road. Um, I just wanted to call in and say that I've seen, I know the past couple of board meetings, I have complained about the Harold Martin School two-week remote period that took place in the fall. Um, and I just wanted to say that, um, I've seen a huge improvement, um, these past few days. So my kindergarten nerd and my third grader, I think things are going great. They're getting a ton of live teaching in general ed, which has been great. And their special ed services or one of theirs, one of them has some special ed services and those have been going well. Um, and then my sixth grader, they didn't have Um, and then my sixth grader, they didn't have, you know, a previous remote period this school year. But, um, he's been busy all day, doing stuff all day and engaged and happy. So, um, I, I really, I was not on the call when you guys made the decision about going to January fifteenth. Um, so, um, I'm just going to say that I think that must've been a really hard decision and, um, I guess, I, I guess, I support it. I have some question as why we couldn't just go another week, but I didn't listen to that conversation. So I'm not really sure. Um, in terms of sports, um, um, in terms of sports, I don't have a strong opinion. I don't have high schoolers, but I would encourage the board to, um, think, um, not so permanently about it and problem solve a bit and maybe come up with some type of temporary plan, maybe allowing skills and drills or something for those high school students to connect, maybe smaller groups, maybe, you know, groups that, you know, smaller than 10, something like that, making sure they're six feet away. Um, but to give those, um, basketball and hockey players something to do. Um, and then I know it's been discussed about potentially, um, extending the school year. I am curious, it sounds like that is a possibility, but I don't know, is that a possibility? Like just for the younger kids and not for high schoolers? Could that be just, because I know high schoolers have AP exams and all that stuff and they're more time limited there. So I'm wondering if there's a possibility of just extending the school year for elementary and letting them take a longer break, but not the high schoolers. So I guess that's a question I have.
Um, thank you, Jennifer. I think, uh, you know, Steve was going to discuss it more, so I'm not sure if we have an answer for you right now, but, um, we appreciate it.
Okay, yeah. Um, so I, yeah, because I could see that not working for high schoolers and I think Kelly Elrich mentioned, you know, those high schoolers need to be kept busy and doing things. Um, which makes total sense. Um, but then the younger kids, I could definitely see my elementary school age kids really benefiting from having in-person learning in June. Um, and I think that is it. So thank you guys for everything that you're doing. Um, and then I also encourage any listeners that have concerns about special ed to, you know, reach out to the special ed teachers and Mandy about in-person special ed. Because that's definitely different than sports and the governor has put, um, I know the governor has put out guidance for special ed that you can find on, on the parent information center website. Um, and the disability rights center also has information for parents on special ed.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Um, Cheyenne B.
Hi, can you hear me?
Loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Cheyenne Burke and I live on Kearsage Ave. So I guess I just wanted to talk about the remote learning date. I personally feel that remote learning until I think you said January nineteenth or something like that. Um, I personally feel like that is very drastic. I think it would make more sense to do one or two weeks at a time. And I know that some families have been doing remote from the beginning and I think that's absolutely great that they can do that. I wish I could, but I cannot. And I know that for not just myself, but other families, that this decision will, uh, greatly impact many families. I also want to talk about children's mental health for a moment because that is something that I am not hearing a lot of when we, when the board is making decisions. Um, so I just want to say that it is a proven fact that isolation affects children's mental health and development. And I will also add that my child struggles with, um, excuse me, uh, mental health. So for him to go that long without social interaction would be detrimental to him. So now I'm in a predicament where I have to find other activities so he can get his social interaction in. And that will most likely be in Concord where I feel it is, uh, less safe. I personally would prefer to keep him in Hopkinton, but as I said, for his mental health, I have to do something. I can't keep him home for that long. Um, and I'm pretty sure that other parents probably feel the way, uh, feel the same way. So, um, I guess I just want to ask the board to keep in mind the social emotional impact this is having on our kids. The board's responsibility is to our children and yes, that is to keep them safe. But I feel like we're forgetting about how it's impacting many students. So I just want to ask that you keep in mind, um, the mental health of our children as well. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for, um, thanks for sticking with us. Um, Sarah, no, everything moved on me. Sarah Gishwinder? I don't know how to say that last name. I apologize. You can, you can teach me.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Oh, there we go. Yep, we sure can.
Okay, I want to touch on IEP. I apologize I was late, so I did not hear. Um, my son has been going into school. Um, all last week before the school got shut down, he struggles severely. He has an IEP. He does so much better being in school. Remote does not work for him. Even if you guys did, he was going in Tuesday through Friday during Skinny Monday. Even if the IEP students, like, because I've heard from him that more than just IEP students were going into school. Even if the I, like, I, and I hate to like push other parents aside and say, oh, your kids can't go. I feel bad, but he has an IEP and I feel that IEP students should be able to attend. Even if maybe it's not Tuesday through Friday, like he was doing, at least a couple of days. Because this remote is not working for him. He, like today, he wanted to throw his laptop out the door because he's so frustrated. So I don't know if you can tell me what you guys discussed about IEP students, but if you could touch on that for me, that would be great.
Sure, thank you. So we did discuss, um, that what you, what you're going to want to do is reach out to, um, the support staff at, at the school, um, and Mr. Chamberlain or the building principal and have a discussion. So we did say if there were um, the children, um, who needed those services and, uh, the, the family, the student and the, uh, teachers felt that the way to deliver that is in person and that's an option, but you're going to, my advice is to, um, you know, work with the staff, um, on that. So it's not a, it's not a hard and clear.
I guess I'm confused. Is it a staff decision? Or I guess I'm confused.
Yeah, I would say the reach out to the staff and, and we're leaving with the conversation on that you weren't, that you missed was that it, we're trying to, we're trying to limit the number of students in the classroom, um, or in the schools. And so, but if there is a situation in which the family, the student and the staff are on consensus that, um, what's best is, is some sort of in-person, um, teaching that that's an option worth considering. And so again, reach out to, reach out to the, the staff and, um, get that process started.
Okay, who specifically? Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I, I don't know who specifically. Steve, do you have a recommendation?
Uh, you can start with Mr. Kelly. That'd be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you guys.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you too. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Lisa Wangsness.
Sorry, I thought.
Oh, there she is.
I thought I had it.
Uh, Lisa, you can come off mute.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Um, thanks. I just wanted to, first of all, um, just thank the board and our incredible administrators for all of the time and effort you've put in. It's just like crazy. I will echo the comments of every person who has spoken. Um, thank you so much. I want to say I, I personally am really supportive of the idea of an extended winter vacation and kind of using every last day in June we can for in-person instruction. So I, I think June is going to be better. I think it's going to be way, way better. Um, in terms of weather, in terms of, uh, vaccine, and I think that our kids kind of need every moment that they can get of in-person education and socialization. So it would be great if you would at least, uh, consider that. Um, and, and also I just really wanted to thank our teachers, um, who have just been in throughout this crisis, been like this unwavering source of support and they've been increasingly doing different differentiated instruction for the kids. I have a first grader and a third grader at Harold Martin. Um, they answer emails so fast. They are understanding when family situations come up that demand flexibility. They're working so hard and they just have superhuman patience and good humor and they're showing kids, I think they're showing the kids by example, how you get through a crisis. Um, and of course they're helping the kids get through this crisis. And, um, my son, my kids have been quarantined in quarantine for two weeks before this full week of remote learning and they really miss their friends. My son was in tears this morning and, um, just talking about how much he missed going to school. And somehow they, I got him on Zoom and ninety minutes later, he was sort of back to his old bouncy self and it's, it's not that he likes remote learning really, or that it's a real substitute for in-person learning at all and it, he suffers from isolation and being away. But, you know, Mrs. Auberton, she doesn't say hi, everybody. She calls every child by their name. Every day she calls every child by their name and she gives each of them a little time to share something and it just, it just really means everything. And so that's all. I just wanted to say thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate your comments. Um, next is Bob Medio.
On mute. Hey, everyone. Um, I think question, um, actually wanted to get away from the sports and I actually, on, on the budget, I was wondering, is it possible? You mentioned the, is it possible that more than five people could take that early retirement if it was offered? Or is that, has that been established that that's those that would be five that the most would qualify? Or could it be a sandbag event where seven could come out and actually take it?
So, um, we have in our budget, we, by, by our contract, we budget for three early retirements. Um, and then if we, and then we put out a, you know, I guess a request. I'm, I don't know what the right term is, but who's, who's interested? And so we got five people who have expressed the interest. And so in order to fund the other two, if they chose to take it, we would have to take money out of, uh, we had to pay for those. And so, uh, the way we would do that is through fund balance. Um, and so we would use fund balance, but you know, if we had additional fund balance and we felt that, um, there were more teachers who, who may be thinking about early retirement. But I asked a similar question and Steve said that, you know, if we had the money and we have the interest, then we can, we can match those two together in order to move forward. And so that, that's, that's the process. Um, hopefully that would make sense to you. It's getting late.
No, it does. So I don't know if it's because it's late or, but it makes perfect sense. The other, I guess, question I had would be, I guess, and this is probably for the board and for Steve and the, and the, and then the staff. It's the same question, but probably we'd get different answers. Is there a point of no return? That you have in your head as far as, um, full remote, meaning we go to foot, you, you, uh, we're in full remote until, I guess it's the nineteenth was the decision, January nineteenth. And I'm wondering if it's a point where, um, Steve or the board and really the staff has a feeling where this is not conducive anymore to go back and forth. We need to just stay in the mode wherein, um, if it, I guess that would have to be full remote. I guess I'm wondering if that's, if there's a point of no return somewhere after, you know, I just don't know how feasible it is to keep going back and forth and just curious on the, you know, thoughts from the administration staff and the, and the board. I, you know, and I really don't know. Uh, I don't have a preconceived notion of that. I'm just wondering.
Yeah, and I'll do my best. The answer is probably a conversation for the board to have at a longer date. I mean, I, I think what these, what the board has expressed in the past is that, you know, in-person learning was something that we strive for and, and we did, and we did it as long as we could. Um, circumstances, um, I think have brought us to where we are today. Um, and as through our discussion, I think our hope is that, um, you know, case levels will drop, the circumstances will change and then we can, we can begin to go back to, um, and some sort of in-person, um, setting. But right now, you know, obviously, uh, you don't have a crystal ball and neither do we. And so, um, so I don't know how to answer your question of what's a point of no return. I just think, um, you know, this board has been trying to do, um, in-person through a hybrid model and, and, I, I think for one board member, my hope is that we can return to that when, when circumstances allow for it.
Um, no, fair enough, Jim. I, I, uh, makes sense to me. The, the other comment I was just going to make to the board is I, I appreciate the work done on the budget presentation. I think I'm starting to understand some of it. It's making sense to me now, especially after looking at the, the finance committee and then tonight, um, it's starting to help. So I appreciate the work done with everyone and Matt, wow, it is really late. Appreciate you guys hanging in there. Thanks so much, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, Bob. Um, and, uh, kudos for watching those finance committee meetings and, um, spread the word because they are good. All right, uh, next hand is Deborah Lynch.
Um, hi, can you guys hear me?
We sure can.
Hi, it's, um, Bridget Lynch. I'm a senior at the high school. And I would like to agree with my fellow student athletes who've spoken earlier tonight about how important sports is to them and how it's more than just a sport for a lot of us. I know me and most of my friends have been looking forward to them, especially after last week when they were approved. Like just in that short period of time, I know a lot of us were more invested in our schoolwork and just excited for what was coming. It's given everything that's going on, I think it's important for like our student athletes to have a way to escape everything that's going on for like mental and physical health. I think it's really important. And another point was college recruitment. I know a lot of, um, basketball and hockey players are planning on playing in college. And I, as a senior this year, I've already committed and I know how important my sophomore and junior year was. And given everything that's been going on with COVID, the new rules are you can get committed with video. So even if there weren't scouts there, just being able to play would be very important for like their future and getting committed and being able to play in college. So I just ask that you reconsider your decision about winter sports and would like to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bridget. Appreciate your comments and sticking with us this late. Um, I would just ask, uh, because I, I'm, I'm, I'll admit I'm a little lost with all, with the hands that are up because I think many people whose hands are up are spoken once. And so I'm just going to take a second and ask those of you who may have your hands up. Um, if you haven't pressed that lower hand button, um, now's a great time to do that. Um, that will help sort of manage those hands that are left up. And, uh, let's see, there's still a few up. So I'll give you one more minute to find that lower your hand button. And if not, um, uh, I'll call on Lisa Wangsness again. Hi Lisa, you can unmute yourself.
I'm sorry, I'm having technological problems. I did not mean to continue to raise my hand.
No, that's great. I'm just checking in. So appreciate it. Have a good night. Uh, the McGrath family, who I know has spoken a couple of times, but, um, and if you wanted another comment?
Hi Jim, uh, it's Arlene McGrath, thirty Willoughby Road. Thank you, uh, for all of your hard work, the school board administrators and all the teachers. And I also want to echo, um, comments that my husband and daughter have made. We appreciate and value everything that you wanted, that you do. One point I really want to make is how proud I am of my daughter Morgan for speaking up tonight. I don't know, um, if you know Morgan at all, um, but basketball is a very important part of her life. Um, she's been playing since before she could walk. George and I have been coaching, um, o- over the years through HISA and middle school and Morgan has tagged along all the way. Um, and played bitty ball, played HISA of middle school and this is her senior year. Morgan has been a quiet, shy young woman. Basketball has pulled her out of her shell, helped her with her social anxiety, taught her to speak up. Speaking up tonight, our phones were blowing up with the people who are supporting her, the basketball teams and the hockey teams. I know Ethan Molnar talked about how important hockey is to him and his family. Basketball is is part of Morgan's DNA. It's the reason why she wakes up in the morning. You know, and people will say, you know, some people might minimize it and say the health risks, you know, are far greater, far greater to you know, support the community. Morgan's ninety-five-year-old grandfather can't wait to see her play. The biggest thing holding him on right now. When we talk about basketball, I've written letters, as you know, you've gotten letters from us. And in fact, I've had to rewrite my letter several times because my husband, George, have had mentioned they're too emotional, you know, stick with the facts. But this is emotional because it is so important to Morgan and to all of the other student athletes who won't be able to play. We've been living in a bubble because we were anticipating this, living in a bubble in general anyway, for everyone's health and safety. When basketball opened up, you know, we had a discussion, you know, we talked to Dan, we talked to the coaches and we trust everything that they have done to put in safeguards. The fans are there, fans to blow the air around, not talking about people watching the kids. And would really like you to reconsider your decision to play basketball and hockey. And when I say basketball, I say in air quotes. I don't think any of us really expect to play competitively. We see what's going on. And who knows, maybe in January, yes, there will be games, but at a minimum, playing with a mask, six feet apart in that gym with eleven players and one coach. We do not see that there is a huge risk to that group, to the school community or the community at large. It's a modified way to play basketball, but it gives the kids something to look forward to, to wake up in the morning, to go to school, do their work and then go into the gym and do the thing that they love most. It keeps them holding on. Their social and emotional well-being is dependent upon playing sports. I understand some people get it and some people don't, but I am just gonna speak on behalf of our family and the families that we play with. In an email that I sent to you, and I probably sent that to you too late, I was actually thanking you for your decision that you made last week. But there's a link about Spencer Smith, a sixteen-year-old male teen from Brunswick High School who committed suicide last Friday. And his father wanted the message to get out to people in this very trying time for their family. But he couldn't deal with not going to school, not playing football and not playing sports. He couldn't see the light at the end of the tunnel. Our kids need something. We say no to so many things. We don't have homecoming. We don't have dances. Kids can't go on college tours. You know, we're keeping them at home and we're saying no. At some point, we have to say yes to something. Morgan doesn't want to go out and play AAU hoop in another place. She wants to play in Hopkinton with her teammates. She is a Hopkinton Hawk. Our family bleeds green. And we want to stay here. We never left the school district. She had the opportunity to to play at a prep school. She said, no, I want to play in Hopkinton. I love it here. I love the school and I love my teammates. And we're asking, you know, just please reconsider your decision to play some form of modified basketball to just give the kids something that they can look forward to. I just hope you hear some of us, the more emotional side. Modified is better than nothing. And then, you know, like you said last week, we can look at it again in January. They they've been going to open gyms, they're wearing their masks, they're six feet apart. It's just a handful of kids. We're talking about eleven kids and one coach, fans blowing the air around. You know, they're washing their hands, they're doing all the right things. They're following all the protocol that our athletic director, Dan Merser, and the coaching staff has put forth. I trust everything that they have done. If I did not feel it was safe for her to play, I would not allow her to play. And kindly respectfully ask for you to reconsider some form of basketball and some form of hockey for these kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlene. Appreciate your comments. Tammy Clay?
There we go. Hi there. So I'll be quick. Seth, are you awake? There you go. As custodial grandparents of a senior who will be playing on the John Stark hockey team who has needed to live here with us for the past nine months. Remote school is hard enough. Hockey is his life and it has been since he could put skates on probably at three years old. And I'm gonna let him talk real quick. It's Tyler Scordo.
Hello, my name is Tyler Scordo and on behalf of the, on behalf of my team and other student athletes on other teams of Hopkinton and the parents that truly understand the impact on their kids, the ending or banning this season, I don't know what the plan is exactly, will do for these kids mentally and physically is truly outstanding. This year I've been put through another situation that I have truly it's been really hard. And ever since last year, I've tried to get through it. Ever since this happened, I've just wanted to put on my skates and go play for my high school hockey team. And not having this happen will affect my school and other student athletes. This sport is an escape for so many kids. And they don't really have anything else to do. For me, I have no more options. It's too late for me to go play for another team. And this is my senior year and other students' senior year. And this means so much to all of us. And pushing this year back or even canceling it will affect all of us in more ways than you can even imagine. So many of us use this sport as an escape. And there are other sports. It's been really hard for all of us. Every student in high school, every student K through twelve. It's new and it's different. Being able to build new friendships with new kids every year and being able to grow with them with skill is very special and it's something that will affect you for life. You only get four years of high school sports and I'm not ready for only three. A senior stepping off the ice or court at the end of the season. It for us seniors, we did not think that last year would be our last year stepping off the ice, wearing our team colors and being with those teammates. We knew that this other seniors would go, but I didn't expect that. Losing in the semifinals to Berlin after a really hard-fought game. I did not think saluting the fans after the game, raising my stick would be the last time I'd ever do that. So for my team and other student athletes of Hopkinton, they will be greatly affected by this decision. I ask you to please reconsider your vote and what this will do to us physically and mentally throughout the duration. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much for sharing. I really appreciate it and understand how hard it is. Thank you. Deborah Lynch?
Hi, I know it's late and I will try to make this as fast as I possibly can. I sent all of you a very lengthy email about hockey and so I won't repeat all that I said. It still stands. Nothing as far as the safety procedures and policies for hockey has changed in the past week. I'm calling as a with a dual role tonight. I'm the parent of Bridget, who you heard from earlier. And I'm also the president of the John Stark Hopkinton Hockey Booster Club. Last week, you approved hockey and I have to say it was the best week in our house. Bridget was the happiest she's been since school started. She was so excited about hockey. She just the tempo in our house changed. So to make this decision tonight has undone everything. She worked really hard to get caught up in all her classes, to get her grades up. Anything she had to do. She was even doing extra chores around the house so that she could get to get on that ice. I don't understand what has changed in the past week, that the board has made such a drastic one-eighty. As a president of John Stark Hopkinton Hockey, we had a meeting since your last board meeting when you approved hockey. We have agreed to ice time through the first week of January. We have committed ourselves to paying three thousand, three hundred dollars for ice time based on your decision last week. That's a huge burden for these families. I don't know if you're aware of how Hopkinton is paid, how hockey is paid for, but the parents fund hockey. We pay for hockey. In addition to the sixty dollars we paid the school district, we also pay tuition for our kids to pay hockey, to play hockey for ice time. Our ice time has tripled because of the change from NEC to Trittown. Our tuition is gonna go up. Parents are willing to pay that and the board has committed to paying for that ice time. If you stick with this decision tonight, we can't undo that. If we get Trittown to let us back out and then you change your minds next week, it won't do any good. Our hockey season will be over. Whatever decision you make tonight when we log off will be the decision for the hockey team. Perhaps basketball can change their minds next week and put their team together, but hockey cannot because Trittown will certainly have teams behind us that want to take our ice time. And they will book it and we will lose and we will not be able to get any more ice on. And our board will be out a significant amount of money. I'm not really worried about the money. I'm worried about you changing your minds again next week and then we can't get the ice time. That's really what I'm concerned about. That would be devastating to our kids. So I don't understand what has changed in the last week. I'm curious how many confirmed sports-related transmissions of the virus we have had. I understand we have a lot of community transmission, but hockey is safe. Hockey is has been under a microscope since the fall. The governor has had a commission studying hockey. They have made us jump through more hoops. Our kids have had to get tested before they can step on the ice. My kid's been dressing in the parking lot because they're not allowed to even put their gear on in the building. They have to put all their gear on and walk in like the Michelin man, holding their skates and put their skates on in the building. The kid, not a single kid has complained about this, not one. They do it, they laugh, they have a good time in the parking lot looking like goobers, putting their their sports equipment on like five-year-olds next to the car and it's they they are making the best of it. The juniors and seniors looking at college, I know previous callers said it's not the end of the world. It's just one season. I I'm happy for you that your kids are in elementary school or middle school and this isn't the end of the world for them. But for these high schoolers, some of these kids, it is the end of the world. If they don't get seen by college scouts, if they don't have that opportunity, kids like Scordo that just spoke before me. If they don't have the opportunity to get seen by college scouts, it is the end of the world for them. They will not play in college. I reflected back. I'm a teacher, so I get I get the risks. I'm in class. We are still in school every day, face-to-face with kids. We have lots of people out. I understand the risks. It is not lost on me what we are risking. And last week, Mr. NATO asked the board and the parents to think about would we be willing to go full remote? And there wasn't a moment's hesitation. My kid is absolutely willing to go full remote till the end of the season. If that's what it takes for her to be able to step on that ice and be with her team for her senior year. I thought about what you offered in September. You offered two options for school. You offered a hybrid option for those who felt like school was safe enough for kids to be in the building. And you offered a full remote for those parents who felt like school was not safe enough. Why are the sports parents and the student athletes not being given that same choice? Why are you making our choice for us? By taking away sports, you've made the decision for every single family. If you still offer sports, everybody gets to make a choice. If people don't feel it's safe, they can opt their kids out and I totally respect and support that decision for families. But if people do feel it's safe, they can opt in and their kid can play. It's really the fairest way to do it, to offer people what they want and what they need and what they feel is safe. Our kids are suffering. I I listened to a lot of meetings and I hear Mr. Chamberlain say over and over again that our motto is above all care. Please care. Please care for our kids and their mental health. Please give every family what they've decided, what is safe for their own children. Do not make a decision for my child on what I feel is safe for her. If you offer sports and people don't feel as safe, they won't send their kids and you've already made the option to make school full remote. So there's no risk to transmission within the school building. And Mr. NATO, I totally think that was a good plan. If people want to play sports, they need to choose to go full remote. I don't want to make the choice for other families by sending my kid to school and exposing other kids, children, other people's children to the possibility of a virus. I am absolutely willing to make my kid go full remote until the end of the season or even whatever, ten days beyond the last game or whatever you come up with. But don't make that choice for my child. The mental health of these kids is so much more important. It's it's just vital right now. Please, above all, just care for our kids and I will let you go.
Thank you, Deborah. Appreciate your comments. So that is the end of no other hands up. So I'm going to close public comment. Thank you all for your remarks and for for sticking with us so late. We appreciate your comments. Before we move into action items, is there any other anything else from the board? Any other items the board wishes to bring up?
I mean, I I'm sorry to bring something up, but I guess just to reflect back, you know, we just listened to probably like an hour, at least a good hour of comments and I and I just and I did not know if if there have been any changes or if anyone would like to reconsider anything that they've decided. I'm just gonna put it right out there. Since we didn't get to listen to comments before our previous discussion on sports specifically.
I'll go. You know, last week I I was putting forward the idea of if we're gonna do sports, we are, those kids need to be full remote. And I don't think it was very well received by pretty much anybody. But to me, that was something that would provide the opportunity and keep the school population safe, the teaching population safe and to a lesser degree, the community safe. So it becomes a choice there. When I listened to Arlene McGrath talk about When I listened to Arlene McGrath talk about basketball being played in a modified way, at least in the short term, six feet, you know, when when we agreed to open gym, I I was comfortable with that because I was comfortable with what Steve had put forward as skills and drills. You know, we're gonna get together, we're gonna play some some unique basketball, but we're gonna be playing basketball in that safer. So, you know, God, this 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 job is terrible.
We didn't tell you that earlier, did we?
Yeah, nobody told me that. You know, I'm hearing what people are saying. I'm hearing kids' needs. I'm thinking about consistency, inconsistency. But I guess just to be to be straightforward. If the board were to say if this is gonna go forward and we were to reconsider it, then athletes have to be remote through their season and you know. You know, somebody last week said something about, you know, puddings that that puts sports above education. Steve will might chuckle at this. We all could use a little chuckle right now, but you know, the Hopkins in high school come 1:00 or 1:30, 2:00 on any given day, whole bunch of kids, you know, 165 kids march out the door to go to a game. We put sports above education all the time. As a Nordic ski coach, you know, we would leave some meets, we go at leave at 11:30 in the morning. I and I was coaching golf, three afternoons a week, you'd you'd miss the same class every single week. So we do that with frequency. So, you know. It's 10:43, but I Andrea, I appreciate you bringing it back up. Yeah, that's what I have to say at this point. And so I'd be I'd be curious to hear from Seth, who's been pretty quiet and hear from anybody else who wants to chime in.
And I just want to reframe real quick, Rob, that perhaps we don't put sports above education, but that we integrate sports as another aspect of our education for many students.
Absolutely. No. No argument from me on that one, that's for sure.
I mean, my view continues to be the same that there is some risk in this, but I think the risk is diminished by the decision that we're going to have a remote school for the sort of near at least near to middle term at this point. And so we almost have them in a bubble to some degree. And so it 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 strikes me, I'm not diminishing that there is risk, but I don't, I think we've taken other steps that that mitigate the risk and I don't, I don't really accept the idea that we have elevated the athletes over the students. I mean, we we are offering a full school program. And we are having it be remote because we, that's not choice. You have to go to school and so, but this is choice. And it's choice and it's relatively a bubble and that doesn't mean that there isn't risk, but I was, you know, a lot of the things that we heard, I expected to hear because as I said earlier, we've taken a lot away from these kids at all different ways and all different things. And so I am struggling to bend over backwards in those places where I feel like it's choice and we can limit the risk that we do as much as we can. And so that's, you know, how I've resolved this in my own mind.
And I think last week when we were talking about this, we we weren't necessarily talking about the remote and to me, you know, when Jim said earlier, what's gonna be different in January? Well, for me, if if we were to say sports move forward, but the caveat is you stay remote, that's what would be different in January. And I and I think that's a I mean, I still I still don't like the idea that, you know, there's there's the risk of transmission, but
I mean, I mean, I guess we're not offering much in school to begin with. So we're talking about, as I understand it, if we were in our model fully as we recently articulated for the secondary school, that that's two days every three weeks, right, Steve? So it's it's a, I mean, it's a small amount of time in the in the best circumstances that anybody's gonna be in class. So, you know, and and whether we get back to that or not before the end of the sports season, I don't know, but at a minimum, that's what kids would be giving up, which doesn't strike me as strikes me as a reasonable decision that they might make.
So I mean, I'll, I mean, I appreciate all the comments and I mean, this this is hard on the student athletes. It's hard on the parents. It's hard on the school board. It's hard on the superintendent. It's hard on all the teachers. Like, I get it and I'm not diminishing any of that. But, I mean, we have, we have a pandemic that is raging a bit out of control, if not fully out of control. We have not only students at risk, but we have, we have coaches at risk. We have other people at risk. We have families at risk. And so like looking at where we are right now, I I I understand and appreciate and I feel horrible. I'm sorry. I'm sad. I'm angry. I'm frustrated. And I I I don't like I nothing. I I I still stand by that indoor sports right now is a pretty risky proposition, whether or not we are in full remote or not. It's it's a risky proposition and as as a board member, I I I still am where I am. I think if if there was a reconsideration plan that someone wanted to bring forward, I would, I would, I could look at that and maybe change my mind, but it's 10:48. And right now, I'm I'm not really willing to to do a reconsideration on on what we have already said we would do. We meet again in seven days and we can come back in seven days with some alternate plans that we could look at and then discuss as a board, but right now I'm not. I I I think we made the right decision and I still stick with it. And so
Does Norm have something he wants to?
No, I mean, I'm just listening to, you know, I don't know if Rob's making a recommendation. I mean, I I, you know, I I've, I appreciate all the comments and it's it's the hardest decision in my, you know, it it really is. My heart, my, I I I, you all have said some powerful things tonight and, you know, Jim, you know, I'm gonna side with Jim on this, you know, there is there, you know, we might be the minority or this minority of this. We're in a public health crisis and, you know, I understand everyone's argument, you know, no one, whatever decision we make, people will disagree with and and my heart goes out to every single player, every single parent. I am very concerned about public, I mean, about mental health is a very serious concern. But this thing is 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 getting out of control, you know, and, you know, where I stood when I talked about this tonight with with everyone is we're taking a step back of going back to school. And 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 I understand that parents have the choice to do what they want with their own child, but, you know, some of us, we 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 look at things differently and I'm concerned about what's happening right now in our community with the spread. You know, Rob, you you know, there's three of you guys, you know, if in the majority, but as of right now, I'm I am a no. You know, I I'm comfortable with the decision I made. I do appreciate the comments. I I I'm proud of our students for talking tonight. I think it was great for them to do that, but, um, you know, wrap it up, I'll say, you know, I am concerned about the students who it is their last year, the students who want to get into college via, you know, a scholarship. It's it's hard. It's really hard. And that's where I am. And and I'm sorry, I I really am, but I have to stand by my vote with my heart and and that's what I did tonight.
I only wanted to bring it, bring it back up again as well because I think that, you know, specifically related to hockey and the costs that have already been involved. I I'm sensitive to the fact of that if we change our minds in seven days, I understand we're meeting in seven days. But, you know, I think, I think the decision will be final. This decision will be final at that point. I don't know. You know, which is fine. I it just why it's 11 o'clock and we're talking about it. Sorry.
If I recall Dan's comments from the last couple of weeks is that, you know, next week may be too late for for what's going on and how we decide. And I, you know, I kind of wish that way back to 6 o'clock tonight. That caveat, you know, I said two weeks ago that the thing that moved the dime for me in terms of saying yes to any of this was the possibility of kids taking their education remotely and I still feel strongly about that. I do not like and I agree with Jim. We're in the, we're in the middle of a hot pandemic here. With the school being remote, with kids being, you know, as Seth said, they're two times a week. But if the board or consensus of the board were to say the the discretion that we're, discretion is the poor word. Sorry, it's 11 o'clock at night. The decision is that these kids are gonna take their education remotely, then then I would want to reconsider. I would want to reconsider that. Because that does change it for me. Like, you know, there's, there's a lot of variables there that I I think are hard. But that's where I was two weeks ago. If that was on the table at the beginning of the night or the beginning of the week, then you know, but, you know, let's also be clear. I I think that, you know, I had the opportunity to talk to some of some medical folks, let's just put it that way. And and they think playing basketball in a mask in less than six feet is a bad idea. And and I I trust in that and I don't think we've heard that message clearly enough as a as a board. So, but you know, when when Arlene talks about modified, which is also something we didn't hear about. We heard we're gonna play basketball, which means scrimmaging, which means games and all the rest of it. Again, I shake my head and say no, but to give the kids an opportunity to be together and and play a modified game six feet apart. 12 people in the gym, I'd I'd be open to reconsidering. I don't know how we get there, Jim, or if, you know, that's my place to do that or I feel like I'm kind of the swing boat here. I feel like this is very uncomfortable, but.
Would would that be true? Just what I'm hearing is your proposal, I think your proposal, let me just repeat it back to you so like I can, I can understand would be that if if you do student app, if you're, if you do sports, you have to be fully remote for the entire season. And I guess my question would be, is that true for any indoor activity that that the school district may put? Is it only for basketball players and for hockey players?
I think at 10:54 right now, I would like to just keep it on the the sports question because I don't think I've got enough bandwidth in my head to deal with the others. And I think that's the most pressing question before us at the moment. So you know, this is, I'm back in, I don't like buying a timeshare. I'd like to sleep on something like this, but I'm not sure we're afforded that opportunity either. Steve, do you have any guidance, words of wisdom here?
Anything is better than nothing for the passion that the kids have shown tonight and the families. I don't know if you can suspend and meet tomorrow. Can you can you suspend this meeting and meet tomorrow? Because there's there's certain times that are up and I, it's 11 o'clock at night and and there's a lot going on. We did a 3 o'clock meeting. I mean, I know that's not right. I don't know. It's like sometimes the town meetings or something you can post, right? You can suspend and not post or something. I don't know.
I I would be in favor of doing that. If people were willing to come together, you know, tomorrow afternoon or at some point tomorrow. Give us all an opportunity to think a little, a little bit more about it. So we're we're comfortable where we're at. I guess me, right?
It's a serious decision. It's very late and it is time sensitive. By what we've done and I I thought there is a way that you cannot adjourn but suspend and come back without posting, but maybe that's I'm whackadoodle. It's 11 o'clock for me today.
Well, can we, can we, if if Rob, you feeling you need time, can we just schedule something? I was gonna say Monday, but Monday's gonna be, Monday might be a challenge to do. I guess I guess if if we're gonna do it, I my suggestion would be that we we not, we we just end the meeting and then post and come back. That feels
We met Saturday morning on March 13th. Once that's where you all started this little journey.
How much time do we have to give to post, Steve?
24 hours. I can post tomorrow. We can get it posted by not, you know, by 9 o'clock.
Why don't we do that if we can do that? Because I have to talk to you all about the superintendent search, which you don't want to do at 11 o'clock at night, but that's time sensitive as well.
I do. No, just kidding. So do do we, do we want to just post the meeting for Saturday morning and then?
Saturday, 9:00 AM?
Yeah, and then we can have the those two conversations.
I would very much appreciate that.
Okay. I don't know how my Saturday morning looks, but my my basic assumption is I'm gonna be at home, so that.
Steve's up at 6:00 AM and so am I. Let's.
I'm supposed to, I'm supposed to be somewhere at 10, but I could probably do it from the car. If you need me.
Yeah, we can talk, Steve, and just figure out what what works is we don't want to keep you from
Yeah, I've got an appointment at 10.
Okay. All right. So it sounds like we are going to come back Saturday morning at 9 o'clock. We'll we'll say 9.
I'll post it tomorrow.
Work with Steve, yeah, to make sure that works. And I I guess the the two items on the agenda are going to be, will be sports and then Seth, I assume your update would be a non-public?
Yeah, I mean, some of it's logistics and I mean, it's but but I, but it's gonna interwove with who the people are, so I think it should be non-public.
Okay. So I think that works. Is everybody comfortable with that? All right. And I guess what would be helpful when we come back and I'm looking at you, Rob, but it doesn't just have to be you. You know, if 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 there's, you know, if you've thought through a proposal that you want to bring forward, that may just help with some of the it may help with the the conversation to kind of focus us a bit. So that would be my request that if you, if you come back with at least something that we could react to rather than trying to do it on the fly, that might be that might be more meaningful and easier to kind of wrap our heads around.
I will. I will do that.
All right, cool. Thank you. Anything else? Andrea, anything else? All right. So let me go to the to the action items. And so I would ask if there is a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the FY20 audit as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Perfect. Any discussion? I just want to give a big shout out to Michelle. Ton of work. This is my third year that I've heard the auditors come in and and pretty much say that you're the best and so you're the best. So thank you for all that you do.
No, I have a great team.
Process.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, I can't do that. No, I can't do that. I can't do that. Mr. Mr. Gupel.
Norm Gupel at 10:59 PM is a yes.
Andrew?
Andrew Folsom, yes.
Rob?
Rob NATO, yes.
And Seth?
Seth A. Framia.
Jim O'Brien is yes. That motion passes. Is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to accept the superintendent's recommendation to reauthorize the following financial-related policies as presented? There's a fund balance, fixed assets, transfer, bid and investment.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Norm?
Norm Gupel's a yes.
Andrea?
Andrew Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Framia, yes.
Rob?
Rob NATO, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. Is there a, oh, so that motion passed 5-0. Is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to accept the superintendent's nomination of Gene Eden, Office Manager? Harold Martin School pending final approval of the superintendent. Start date to be determined by the superintendent.
So moved. Welcome back, Gene.
Yay.
Is that a second? Okay.
Yeah, I also said second, but yes.
Any discussion? All right, Seth?
Seth A. Framia.
Rob?
Rob NATO, yes.
Andrew?
Andrew Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. We are going to table the next item. I do not, I'm not even gonna entertain a motion to go into non-public session this evening. And so if there's any item that we need to do, we can do that on Saturday. So with that, I I just want to thank all the individuals who who stuck with us through this long meeting. And I thank everybody who spoke, including the students who provided some very just really good testimony and thoughts to us. I just want to thank everybody for sharing that. If that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
Jim and Andrew will cancel our meeting tomorrow. Is that all right? Jim and Andrew will cancel our meeting tomorrow. Is that all right? Our 7:30 will cancel.
That sounds great to me.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Yeah. Thanks all. We'll see you.
Thank you, everybody.